To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Speaking times will be determined by the total number of public comment cards and callers in the queue at the start of each public comment period. For one to 20 total speakers, each speaker will receive up to three minutes. For 21 to 39 total speakers, each speaker will receive up to two minutes. And for 40-plus total speakers, each speaker will receive up to one minute. No additional comment cards or calls will be accepted once the public comment period begins.
Good evening, everybody. It's amazing to see so many wonderful, bright and shining faces to match our bright and shiny weather today. It's real hot out there, but hope you're all staying cool. Welcome to City Council and welcome to a joint meeting of the Burbank City Council, the Successor Agency, Housing Authority, and Parking Authority on this lovely Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. Please join me for a moment of reflection. Now, this moment is intended to begin our meeting with a positive and collective support for our beloved community. The City Council welcomes everyone joining us this evening, and we encourage you to take a moment to reflect on our community and the work we will be doing tonight. Although each of us has our own unique reasons for being here, we're united in our passion for our wonderful city. As we pause, let us consider our individual contributions and what they mean to those around us. Let us find solace in knowing that by working together with a shared spirit of community and partnership, we will always act responsibly for the betterment of Burbank. Thank you, everyone. And now, we have a very special pledge of allegiance for you all tonight. Leading the pledge of allegiance tonight is Scout Troop 219. Please welcome me and joining them to the podium.
Madam Mayor, City Council members, Troop 219 would like to remind our community of the upcoming Memorial Day service this Monday, Monday, 11:00 a.m. at McCambridge Park. We would also like to invite and encourage all Scouts and loved ones to participate in the Ceremony of the Rose during this event. Thank you for this opportunity. Those in uniform, please right-hand salute. Those non-uniform, please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much for leading us in the flag salute and for reminding us to celebrate Memorial Day. All right. Madam City Clerk, how are you doing this afternoon?
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
All right. Would you please conduct the roll?
Councilmember Anthony.
Always a good day when the Scouts are here. Present.
Councilmember Razadi.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tagahashi.
Present and ready to rock and roll.
And Mayor Perez.
I'm here.
Noting the scheduled absence of Councilmember Mullins. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Now, tonight, there will be six periods of public comment. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during our general public comment period and must submit the yellow cards or call before the general public comment period begins. Right here to our City Clerk, like you see many folks doing here. The first public comment period is for general public comment on any matter concerning city business, and if you're here in person and wish to speak, make sure you submit that yellow comment card. If you would like to participate in the general comment over the phone, you can call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until the general public comment period begins, at which time no more additional calls will be taken. If you would like to participate in the public comment for the public hearing over the phone, please call anytime between now and the beginning of the public hearing to that same number, Indicate your interest in calling for the public hearing, and you will be placed in a queue until that public comment period begins, at which time no additional calls will be taken. We will have the additional public comment periods available following each report to council this evening, and we have two amazing, lovely interpreters right here. If you could both raise your hands, available in Spanish and Armenian if anybody needs a translator. If they are not approached by the beginning of the general public comment period, I will let them both go home. So please, if you need translation services, see both of them between now and the start of public comments. Now, we have five announcements this evening.
Following our announcements for May 20th, 2025, remember and honor those who serve this Memorial Day. Join the Parks and Recreation Department on Monday, May 26th, at 11:00 a.m. at the McCambridge Park War Memorial, corner of San Fernando Road and Amherst Drive. The ceremony will feature a pre-ceremony concert featuring the Burbank Band at 10:15 a.m., followed by the Ceremony of the Rose and a Condor Squadron flyover sponsored by Kusumano Real Estate Group. Visit burbankca.gov/veterans for more information. The City Clerk's Office is currently accepting applications for a total of 26 upcoming vacancies on the following boards, commissions, and committees. Burbank Cultural Arts Commission, Infrastructure Oversight Board, Park Recreation and Community Services Board, Planning Commission, Police Commission, Sustainable Burbank Commission, and Transportation Commission. The deadline to submit an application is Friday, May 30th, at 5:00 p.m. If interested, apply online at burbankca.gov/bccapplication. For more information, please contact the Burbank City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email cityclerks@burbankca.gov. Get ready, Burbank. It's time for the Parks and Recreation Department's Galaxy Night. Join us on Saturday, May 31st, at 7:30 p.m. for a day of fun, friends, and soccer action. Grab your tickets now at burbankparks.com. The Downtown Burbank Arts Festival is back. The festival will be held Saturday, May 31st, and Sunday, June 1st, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. along San Fernando Boulevard from Magnolia to Angelino Avenue. The event is free and open to the public. The Arts Festival will feature more than 170 local artisans, live music, and chalk artists creating exciting paintings throughout the weekend. Don't miss this popular Burbank event. For more information, visit dtnbur.com. Burbank Public Library's Summer Reading Program returns from June 1st through July 31st. All ages are welcome to participate. Read a book or magazine, listen to an audiobook, read aloud to a child or as a family, all types of reading counts. Track your daily reading and collect prizes throughout the summer. Mark your calendar to attend the Summer Reading Kickoff Party on May 31st from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. at Buena Vista Branch Library, featuring live music from the Jazz Cartel. Enjoy a summer of reading with Burbank Public Library. For more information about the Summer Reading Program, visit burbanklibrary.org/summerreading. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
Alrighty. It is now time for our amazing council proclamations and presentations, and our first proclamation this evening is a proclamation declaring May 2025 as National Water Safety Month in the city of Burbank. Our first presentation is, oh, sorry, reading it again. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Kasim Tabat, Aquatic Supervisor, and Mr. John McGinley, Recreation Manager, to join me at the podium, and feel free to bring along somebody else. Welcome, everybody. So I'm going to go ahead and read you this proclamation, and then I'll pass it off to you all if you'd like to say a few words about Water Safety Month. So, Water Safety Month, whereas safety is a vital concern for residents of all ages in the city of Burbank, as the city is home to numerous residential pools, recreational water facilities, and nearby natural bodies of water, and whereas the city of Burbank is proud of the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department's aquatic facilities, programs, and the valuable contribution each provides towards a safe, healthy place to recreate, place to learn, grow, swim, build self-esteem, confidence, and a sense of self-worth, all of which contribute to the quality of life in the city of Burbank. And whereas by observing National Water Safety Month, the city of Burbank aims to raise awareness about the importance of safe water practices to prevent accidents and save lives. Now therefore I, Nikki Perez, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Water Safety Month in the city of Burbank, and encourage everyone to extend their appreciation and support for all of those working at our swimming pools and keeping us all safe. Give them a hand. If you'd like to say a few words.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, for the proclamation. I feel like this is perfect timing. We have our Public Works crew here, so I want to give them a huge shout-out. They keep our pool going, so I see Kenny, Jason, Louis, you guys, we couldn't do it without you, so thank you, guys. And just real quick, I'd also like to extend my gratitude to Marissa Garcia, our Parks and Recs Directors, who is always there to help us in getting through our exciting summer that we have coming up. But I know Kasim got introduced, but I want to introduce everybody here. We also have Cameron here. Cameron is our Senior Recreation Leader. Then we have, Christian is one of our senior guards, and we also have Tara, one of our senior guards. So pretty much these four are in charge, not just of Ferdugo Aquatic Facility, but we will be opening McCambridge Pool the day after Memorial Day. These guys keep our pools safe. We have about 75,000 visits per year, and during the summer, we average about 500 visits a day, so it's an extremely busy pool, safe pool, and we want to continue doing that, so we have monthly safety trainings that these guys hold. But all in all, yes, we hope to see you guys out at the pools this summer, so thank you, guys.
All right. Our next presentation this evening is the presentation of a proclamation declaring May 18th through 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week in the city of Burbank. I would like to invite Mr. Ken Berkman, Public Works Director, to join me at the podium. All right, and it's my honor to present you with this proclamation for National Public Works Week. I swear we didn't coordinate, but that was a great segue there. All right. Whereas public works services provide in our community are a vital part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is important to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as the operation and maintenance of wastewater systems, streets, building, traffic signals, vehicles, and equipment, solid waste collection and disposal, pollution prevention, parking management, graffiti abatement, the planning design, and construction of capital improvement projects, and, so much more, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the Public Works Department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore I, Nikki Perez, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th as National Public Works Week in the city of Burbank, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which Public Works employees make every day to our health, our safety, our comfort, and our quality of life. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be here again. You know, the American Public Works Association is our national organization. Every year, they create posters, kind of a marketing, and to say who we are and what we're about. This year's theme is People, Purpose, and Presence. Taking that a little bit out of order, the purpose, I mean, the proclamation really captures it. There's so many things that Public Works does every day, whether we know it or not, I like to say. Our presence, from the time you're waking up to the time you go to bed and everything in between with your travels, it really makes a big difference in not so objectively saying we're the most important department in people's daily lives. But the purpose, the cool thing for us, including like our first responders' roles like in the windstorms, it's in the city of Burbank, it's the people. It's the people that we see that really make the difference, and it's just an amazing team. I'm so proud to be their director, and we really appreciate the proclamation and the community's support, so thank you very much.
Do you want to bring up your team?
Anybody who feels like coming up, come on up. Perfect.
I didn't have to tell Mr. Mullenar twice.
I'll let them introduce themselves, please.
Hi, I'm Kenny Armenta, Facility Works, Public Works Maintenance Manager.
Dean Pearson, Construction Superintendent.
Damian Skinner, Assistant Public Works Director.
Artin Magridnudchen, Principal Civil Engineer.
Steve Walker, Assistant Public Works Director of Wastewater.
John Mullenar, Assistant Public Works Director of Restreets and Waste Management.
Jackie Batena, Administrative Officer.
Lee Fan Shu, Chief Assistant Public Works Director, City Engineer.
Anna Hartunian, Associate Civil Engineer.
Thank you.
Now you all know who to call for exactly each issue. Alrighty. Our third presentation this evening is a presentation of a proclamation declaring May 22nd, 2025, as Harvey Milk Day in the city of Burbank. I'd like to welcome Mr. Mike Chapman and Mr. Brian Snodgrass to join me here at the podium. All right. Now, this one, you're all going to have to bear with me. I'm giving you the warning in advance, it's a longer one, so I will run out of breath. We are almost there, but my lungs are still crushed. All right. Whereas May 22nd, 2025, has been designated as Harvey Milk Day, which honors and celebrates the life and legacy of Harvey Milk, a hero for not just his community, but for every Californian fighting for freedom and equality. And whereas Harvey Milk was one of the first openly LGBTQ+ elected officials in the United States, he inspired members of the LGBTQ+ community and served as an example to those who thought they would never have the opportunity to serve in public office. And whereas Harvey Milk was not only an advocate for the LGBTQ community, but for all minorities, he worked with labor and civil rights activists who were struggling for justice. He believed in safe, strong neighborhoods, and supported public education, affordable childcare, and equal rights for all. And whereas Harvey Milk said, "Hope will never be silent." The members of our LGBTQ+ community, who still face discrimination and violence, rooted in hate, deserve hope and cannot abide our silence. We must continue his fearless advocacy as we work together to continue to make Burbank a more peaceful and inclusive city for all of the members of our community. Now therefore I, Nikki Perez, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby proclaim May 22nd, 2025, as Harvey Milk Day, in recognition of Harvey Milk's life as an example of triumph, of nonviolent social change, the fight for equal rights for minorities, and the personal price of political courage. Thank you. I got through most, sleep in one breath. But it is my absolute honor to present this to both of you and to one of my favorite icons of the LGBTQ community.
Mike, your first.
Perfect. It was a very nice proclamation. And thank you, Mayor Perez, and members of the City Council. On behalf of the Burbank Human Relations Council and the gay and lesbian members of the Burbank community, we thank you for this proclamation. We realize that the proclamations are made at the option of the mayor and the council. Our citizens take great pride in the fact that our local government recognizes all the diverse groups that make up our community. Harvey Milk Day is significant date because it comes just in time for the kickoff for the June National Pride Month. Harvey Milk is primarily remembered for his activism in gay issues and equal rights. He also showed it was possible for minority members to make a positive impact on the entire community. This proclamation speaks highly of our Burbank community and of our Burbank leadership. It represents the weaving together of the different threads in our community into a strong social fabric. We truly appreciate this. Thank you. I really do. And now, Mr. Brian Snodgrass is the new Executive Director of Conundrum Theater Company.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. We currently live in a world where arts funding is currently being decimated because certain people are afraid of arts, culture, and the freedom of expression. The importance of diversity, equity, and inclusion are being challenged as we speak. So in order to honor Harvey Milk, I think it's best to use his words, so I put together a combination of some of his speeches from the 1970s. Some of the words are a little dated, but here you go. My name is Harvey Milk, and I'm here to recruit you. I want to recruit you for the fight to preserve our democracy. I think perhaps that too many of our elected and appointed leaders forget that their duty is to lead. I'll never forget the looks on the faces of those who have lost hope, whether it be young gays, or seniors, or blacks looking for that almost impossible-to-find job, or Latins trying to explain their problems and aspirations in a tongue that's foreign to them. I'll never forget that people are more important than buildings, and neighborhoods are more important than freeways. On the Statue of Liberty, it says, "Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to be free." In the Declaration of Independence, it is written, "All men are created equal, and they are endowed with certain inalienable rights." That's what America is. So for Mr. Briggs and Mrs. Bryant and all the bigots out there, no matter how hard you try, you cannot erase those words from the Declaration of Independence. No matter how hard you try, you cannot chip those words from off the base of the Statue of Liberty. Without hope, not only the gays, but the blacks, the seniors, the poor, the handicapped, the us's, give up. If you help me get elected this election, no, it's not my election, it's yours, it all means that a green light is lit, a green light that says to all who feel lost and disenfranchised that you can now go forward. It means hope, and we, no, you, and you, and you, and yes, you, got to give them hope.
And that's why I can't think of anybody better to present this proclamation to who embodies the work of Harvey Milk. If you don't know who Harvey Milk is, I really do encourage you to look him up because he is one of California's greatest leaders and somebody who very much inspired me in my run for office, so thank you for being here today. Thank you for making sure this happened, and thank you to all of BHRC for continuing to make sure that we represent these moments in our California history. Thank you. All right. Mr. City Manager, anything to report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have one item I'd like to report. If I could call back up our Public Works Director, Ken Berkman, to provide an update on the city's new capital improvement project webpage.
Yeah, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. Good to see you again so quickly. Really happy to find, to bring to the community a really exciting webpage that we've created to highlight all the capital improvement program and the projects that we are doing. Stick around till kind of much later, and there'll be lots more on that to come. So, this is our homepage, and we open up here, we look at the top right, and we see the departments, and we can hit that dropdown logo to get to Public Works, and when we hit Public Works, that's Public Works page, and you'll see the icon with the kind of a barricade, lower right, second from the right, and it's our capital improvement program. And here's our new page itself, and you can see it has projects in construction and projects that are in planning and design, and then our completed projects. We put projects in construction first over there because it's typically what people most likely want to know, hey, what's going on out there? So when we click on that, CIP projects in construction, we have an updated date to the right there, and each of these projects that are in construction is just kind of half or a third about what's going on. The links for the project itself, the scope of work, what it is, our estimated completion date, and then we also have a link to the project manager, so you can click that and email the PM to ask any questions you might have. When you click on the link itself for a project, there'll be pictures, CIP photos, as you see in alphabetical order. This is some of the projects that were going on. And for example, if we hit the Starfighter aircraft link, we see pictures of what's going on, a little brief description. And if we go to our CIP projects in planning and design subsection, again, a small sample of what's going on with the project name and the scope, and also again, a project manager to the right that you can click the link and email for any additional information or questions. And then our completed CIP projects, keep a running list, and again, those links for the projects on the left, you can click those, and it'll take you back to that picture page in alphabetical order. So that, we are excited to provide to the community.
If I could add, that will be updated monthly, so you'll have pretty much, it'll be pretty much real-time as far as what's the latest for each of those projects.
Thank you, Mr. Berkman, and on National Public Works Week, nonetheless.
How about that? Perfect timing.
Perfect timing. Thank you so much. Oh, I think we have a question, actually. Quick question.
Sure, question. Thank you. This is so exciting.
This is so exciting. As a previous member of the Infrastructure Oversight Board, we had early discussions about how we can bring this information to the community and to see it come to fruition now. And I appreciate how much work was put into this because I know how much you had to like put everything in and get everything in order in order to make this happen. So thank you. But real quickly, for the community who may not know, what is a capital improvement? Because I think sometimes when you see CIP, I took, actually, to be honest, when I first was on the commissions, it took me a bit to figure out what that was. So just briefly, what is a capital improvement?
Yeah, so capital improvements, that list in the proclamation that the mayor read earlier, every piece of that infrastructure from our streets, our sidewalks, traffic signals, you name it, that's a capital asset of the city. We have a large program to design, construct, operate, and maintain all that infrastructure. So basically, that is what we do in Public Works in cooperation with all of our departments annually, and certainly look forward to speaking more to it later tonight.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Berkman. Anything else to report, Mr. City Manager?
That's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're excited about it. All right. Mr. City Attorney, will you please report on closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, and for the benefit of the public, City Council met at 4:30 this afternoon to discuss one item in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 concerning labor negotiations. Council met with the city's labor negotiator, Ms. Betsy McClinton, Management Services Director, to discuss negotiations with the Burbank Management Association. The City Council took no reportable action this evening.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. And now we have a presentation of an update from the Burbank-Lendale-Pacadena Airport Authority. I'd like to welcome Mr. John Hatunaka, Executive Director, to the podium. Welcome. And this is your first time presenting to council as the executive director, so congratulations.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Takahashi, members of the City Council, thank you for having me here with you this evening. I'd like to begin this evening with giving you a report on our passenger statistics that has, for the first quarter, beginning in January. As you can see, we were unfortunately impacted by the wildfire events that occurred. But we have been able to start our recovery for February and March, and so we broke even basically for the first quarter of the year. We do anticipate that April and May will be on the same trend as March. So we're looking forward to recovering to that. The next slide has our airline partners that serve the airport. There are nine of them here. They have over 30 city pairs. They provide service to the cities of New York, Chicago, and Dallas. And I want to bring up that there is one airline, Avilo Airlines, that is a subject of some controversy since they have contracted with the Department of Homeland Security for some charter services. They are a FAA-certified passenger commercial carrier. We are a federally assisted FAA airport. We do not have the ability to deny them access to the airport, and so we accommodate their operations at Burbank Airport. I think you're all interested in what we're doing here this year that has begun since December of '23, and that is the development of your replacement passenger terminal. The project began then, and we broke ground on January 2024. And in January of 2025, we topped steel. That is, I think, a remarkable speed of effort that the design builder, as well as our Jacobs Project Management Company, has undertaken to get us where we are. So to date, there's been almost 1 million work, crew hours already expended. There has been over about 520 daily workers, of skilled workers, on site. And the DBE commitments, we have, we met our goal of 18%. And the value of that is approximately $204 million. Construction, we have, to put it, to give you a size of what we've been doing, there's over 14,000 cubic yards of concrete poured for the terminal. And there's 17,000 cubic yards for the garage. To put that in perspective, that's equal to about a little over eight and a half Olympic-sized swimming pools filled with concrete. There's 4,200 tons of steel erected in the facility. That's equal to eight fully loaded 747s. That's how much steel is on the site. Right now, the work is continuing on the terminal with the roofing, the mechanical engineering plumbing, the exterior framing, and the exterior walls. The garage is going up vertically at this point. The column placements continue, and we started putting on electrical, mechanical programming. We have some pictures here of where we are. On the right, on the left, excuse me, you see the second floor being poured on the garage. That's, that we already completed the basement, the first floor, and now we're starting on the second floor. To your right, there is the framing and drywall being put in in Module A. That is the section of the building that's furthest north of the terminal. The next slide, we have the interior of the second floor and the mechanical overhead, mechanical electrical plumbing being installed. And on the next slide on the right, it's the interior hall, which the airline's called the Great Hall. That's the center of the building. That's where your ticket counter, where your TSA checkpoint will be in. Some of them call it the Great Dance Hall because the icon design reminds them of old Hollywood. So I kind of favor that Great Dance Hall nickname myself. The area in Terminal C, they're already beginning to install the fire suppression system. And if you look on the right side slide, that is looking out toward the Avion Burbank on the east from the second floor of the facility. I think we're going to have a video at this point. Before we begin the video, I just want to say that this video is updated every month. It is produced by staff here at the airport, specifically Mr. Mike Christensen, our manager of communication, who produces, directs, and edits it, and posts it every month. With that, if you could show the video, please.
We're moving really fast. As you can see, there's a lot of activity that's happening around the site. And everybody's working really hard to make it happen. With the roofing on and with this air barrier on, we're 100% dried-in, so to speak. Dried-in means if it rains, we're good to go. So we, there's a lot of sensitive material on the interior that can't be exposed to the weather. This is Concourse A, A1 to be specific. And here will be, to my right, over here is going to be a hold room. That's where you're going to be waiting to board your plane. And over here, where all the framed walls are, is where we have ramp ups and all the offices, all the background stuff. And this is all, we call it purpleboard. It's rated to be moisture resistant, so it allowed us to kind of get a head start. So now we're standing in Module B, which is just a step behind Module A. So we're moving this way with everything. We've completed all of our framing in here, for the most part. And now we're going to start building out the same way that we did for A. Over here behind me, we've got our concession spaces framed out. So these are going to be the little shops and restaurants that you can visit while you're at the new and improved Hollywood Burbank Airport. All this plastic that's draped over the west side of Module B, just like in Module A, is where our glass is going to go. So it's a big glass wall that we call a curtain wall system that will look out onto the runway as we wait to board the plane. It's going to look really good. Standing now in Module C, what we refer to as the headhouse. And this is the main hub of activity for the new airport. Right here is where the bar is going to go. Behind me here, we've erected this big scaffold, what we call a dance floor. I'll be up there on the roof, and I'll look out into the runway. And it is pretty wild to think that we've been able to do all this while in such close proximity to an active airport.
And just to put in perspective, a year ago, we were still greating the soil. And that's where we are today. So thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for your time. But if I may, I'd like to thank Commissioner Bud Overham and Commissioner Frank Quinter for joining me this evening. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Council members, do you have any comments or questions?
Just quickly for the general public, estimated opening day?
October 2026. We hope to have your new home open and ready.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I was out for a tour not that long ago, and I was very impressed with the progress in the work and just everyone just, you know, in sync, being, doing their jobs and getting it done. So, and you're orchestrating it, so.
We, our first primary to all of you is a safe and secure airport and still completing that project on time on October 2026.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now is the time for a joint general public comment. I will be calling out the speakers' names, as well as the person who is next in line, to speak. In order to keep the public comment moving in a timely fashion, we have a designated seat in the front row for speakers who are next up to come to the podium. The timer is available on the podium. This is also the last call for anyone who needs an interpreter, or those staff will be released. So is there anybody who needs Spanish or Armenian interpretation, please? There's one person. Okay, great. Okay. Folks may choose to use the first period of public comment to address an agendized report, but will not be able to speak on that item following the segment. Do you want to keep going? Okay. Please state your name for the record when you speak. And we have one request for interpretation in Spanish, but not Armenian. So the Armenian interpreter, you are welcome to enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you for being here, and we'll hear from the Spanish-speaking commentator in a minute. So now the general public period, comment period is beginning, and no additional cards for this particular comment period will be accepted. Madam City Clerk, how many public comment cards do we have for general public comment?
We have 24 cards, Vice Mayor, and we have five callers.
Okay. Okay, so, go ahead.
So two minutes.
Hi, everybody. So based on the number of speakers, we will have two minutes each for every speaker, based on our council policy. Everybody will have two minutes for our general public comment period, and we will now begin with Ms. Patricia Rivera, followed by Kristi Malouf. Welcome, Patricia. You have two minutes.
Question. Can we share our notes, or do I have to only be the person? She's representing another restaurant.
Who is your?
Los Amigos.
Oh, okay. I mean, I think, you can read her part if you'd like, but if she'd like to comment, she would also have had to complete a...
Okay, then she would just... Okay, I will go ahead and start. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Patricia Rivera, and our family owns Tequila's Burbank, and we are partners with Morrison Burbank. We also have Valeria Rojas, who's representing Los Amigos. As stakeholders, we have concerns regarding the proposed study for possible wage increases. Wage increases trigger a domino effect, impacting payroll costs, workmen's compensation, employee taxes, and employer contributions. Food costs have skyrocketed while food margins are shrinking. Utilities and operational expenses have also risen dramatically. Reducing staff due to increased costs would affect our daily operations, degrading customer service, and triggering layoffs. We pay our non-tipped employees above the minimum wage requirements. Servers, while earning minimum wage, significantly increase their income through gratuities, making their overall earnings competitive. Any wage increase would force us to raise prices, shifting the financial burden to our customers, who may be unwilling to bear the cost. Small businesses like ours lack the resources to adapt to escalating operational demands, leading to closures in the long term. These proposals make us feel disconnected from the city's understanding of small businesses. Despite these challenges, we take pride in our employee retention. Our retention rate stands at 97%. We are proud to have cultivated a positive and supportive work environment for our staff. In closing, these changes risk not only the livelihood of local businesses, business owners, but also the jobs and services that sustain our community. In conclusion, we ask the city to consider the real word, implicate, world, real world implications of wage increases for small businesses like ours.
Thank you for your comment. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I ran out of time.
Oh, great. Our next, our next speaker is Ron Backs, or sorry, Kristi Malouf, followed by Ron Backs.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Kristi Malouf, housing provider. I also live on my property. I am here again. I'm very frustrated by the rental registry I keep hearing about in previous council meetings. Please, I ask yourself this one question. How can I help a housing provider? Well, I will tell you. No rental registry, no rental caps. I guess that was two. You have the data that Vice Mayor Takahashi talks about. That would be business tax permit. It indicates I rent out four units. Why spend more money to make us pay more fees for our rental registry? Burbank water and power fees alone are skyrocketing, enough to put us out of a rental business. How long do you think a small or large housing provider will stay in Burbank? The new ordinance was very much one-sided for tenants only. We have rights. We need your help. Look at what rent control and government overreach has done to the city of Los Angeles. Burbank is a great place to live. I want to stay here. Please, no rental registry. I beg you with my heart and soul. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Ron Backs, followed by Renee Gabriel.
How do I run that? Just bring, bring up to one slide since I don't, defer to that one, if you can. There we go. I have three minutes left of material, so there's going to be some ad-libbing here. My goal tonight is to highlight the disparity between homeownership and rental ownership. The state of California provided a great example recently when the state insurance commissioner granted State Farm permission to increase owner-occupied rates 17% and non-owner-occupied rates 38%. The disparity is every day because we must use bigger contractors who have larger overheads and are insured to work on commercial residential property. We also use materials and equipment that are less mass-produced. There have been requests at this podium to know where the money goes. Hopefully, the following will shed light on it. This is a two-inch cast iron fitting. There's a defective one. What is your estimate of the cost to replace that item? In honesty, four fittings were changed because of, as for caution, because of the extent of the damage to that one that failed. You can see the whole top is missing. And a plumber believes that's the cause, the cause of that is drainage or liquid plumber. Do not include the cost to find the problem and seal the ceiling back up. Okay? I was going to go through a guessing game with you, but I have 43 seconds left. And I guess I can get this in. The odor was intermittent. Most of the time, it would have gone before, it would be gone before I could derive. Once we determined it was not coming from the, within the room, but from the walls, it became nearly insolvable problem. That is because even when exposed, the source of the odor can be extremely difficult to track down. The number of service charges I would have incurred is indeterminable at $129 per visit. As for patching the ceiling, it's on my painter's to-do list. So we can't play the guessing game, so just mentally do the honest thing, I mean, the...
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Renee Gabriel, followed by Jackie Waltman. Our next speaker is Renee Gabriel, followed by Jackie Waltman.
Hello, Mayor Perez and fellow council members. My name is Renee Gabriel, and with my wife, we have been mom-and-pop housing providers here in Burbank since 2008. Ordinance 25-4025 not only appears to be completely one-sided against housing providers, it also conflicts with state housing laws. As an example, number 18 says that I cannot interfere with a tenant's right to quiet use and enjoyment of a rental unit, but I have to allow tenant organizers on the property, if they so choose, to hold a noisy rally. So, either I don't allow the rally, and I'm in violation of the ordinance, or I'm in violation of the tenant's right to quiet use. I'm liable no matter what I do. Regarding other housing issues, the U.S. Constitution says I have property rights, but it appears that an ordinance like this is taking that away. The Constitution also says voters have the right to have their votes respected, and 63% of the voters in Burbank have said they do not want rent control, and it appears the council is not going along with what the voters have voted on. What I'm seeing is that you're following a manifesto outlined in the book, abolish rent, and it appears that this book has similar themes to Hitler's Mein Kampf and the Communist I would like to seek a common sense approach to housing that is fair to both tenants and housing providers. That's because we're in the United States under this constitution, and we're not in Russia. One of our properties has seven units. We have one water meter, one gas meter, and five electric meters. With the rising cost of utilities that I pay for, not the tenants, it makes more sense for me to give up and sell out to a large entity.
Thank you for your comment. That's your time. Our next speaker is Jackie Waltman, followed by Mike Darian.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, Councilmember Anthony. I'm here to speak about my disappointment in your refusal to represent the city of Burbank. The three of you have been pushing an agenda on rent caps and rent registries which goes against the voters of Burbank that had previously voted, not once, but twice, against this. Each of you took an oath to represent the citizens of Burbank, not just some of the citizens, all of the residents. Now it seems that because some of you have personal animosity towards your individual landlords, you want to punish all of the housing providers in the city, many of whom voted for you. You are ignoring the will of the people for your own benefit. I don't have to look to Washington to see a threat to democracy. It's right here in front of me.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Mike Darian, followed by Macees Codavarian.
It's hard to follow that one. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Mike Darian. I've been a real estate professional for 36 years and own a duplex here in Burbank. Over the years, I have had the privilege of working with thousands of homeowners, renters, and families, people who rely on thoughtful leadership and policies that reflect the needs of the entire community, the entire community. I'm here tonight to express my deep concern about the proposed rent control and rent registry measures. I also want to address a recent comment by Councilmember Constantine, who said he hopes the real estate market crashes so he can buy a home in Burbank. I saw the video. I understand the frustration, but the market crash would mean local families losing the equity they worked hard, lifetime, entire lifetime to build. It could lead to foreclosures, financial instability, and job loss. That kind of outcome doesn't just affect property values, it impacts lives. And just to be clear, I want Councilmember Constantine to own a home. Everyone deserves that opportunity, and these prices at this time are not a pleasure for me either, just to be clear, and I've said that for a long, long time. Regarding the proposed policies, we all want housing solutions, but extreme rent control can discourage maintenance and investment. A rent registry adds cost bureaucracy, especially for small local housing providers, doing their best to keep up with rising expenses. What we need are balanced, long-term solutions, increased housing supply across the income levels, support both tenants and housing providers, streamline development, and reduce barriers. You weren't elected to do what's easy, you were elected to do what's right.
That's your time. Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Macees Codavarian, followed by Mark Scroggs.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your time. My name is Macees Codavarian. I am an immigrant. I came here back in 1981, started from absolutely nothing, and made my living by providing housing for Burbank residents for the last 30 years. I have my family brought up over here, grew up over here. Unfortunately, for the last five years, we've been under extreme pressure from rules and regulations, from, out of crazy price hikes from insurance companies, to, as you know, Burbank just increased 18% for this following year coming up. My question to you is, how are we supposed to survive by 3% that you're trying to push us when everything else is going up 20% to 30%? Not to mention the crazy eviction rules that we have right now. In 30 years, I had five evictions in 30 years. Four of them last four years after the rent control kicked in in California. Just two evictions last year cost me $60,000 each. By end of the nine months fight back and forth with the tenant, judge called the tenant incompetent and mentally ill. They're left, still living in their cars, but left me with $35,000 damage. Insurance dropped me. The next insurance picked it up. You have a claim, $10,000 more. So, we're getting hit left and right, not to mention now the new rules that's passing with the retrofitting of the buildings. That's another quarter mill per building. I need you to look into it and see how are we supposed to survive under these pressures? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Mark Scroggs, followed by Laura Nguyen.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mark Scroggs. Regarding the entertainment tax incentive laws, the final touches on AB 1138 and SP 1630, including the dollar figures, are happening this week. The next week or two, they'll be voted on, and then they'll go to the governor's desk. Just tell people, these are job bills. They're not handouts to studios. People keep thinking that. Trust us, we're not Hollywood elites. Also, our dear governor slipped in his budget proposal, the performing arts equitable, cutting the performing arts equitable payroll fund. This fund supplies much-needed grants to help staff at small theaters and music venues. I'm not sure if the condunary is one of them, but it possibly is. It's $11.5 million a year, and it was just surprisingly cut. It was whatever. With the NAE, NEA being cut and the economy getting worse, this will close more venues. These small theaters are critical for growth and for the community and for the entertainment business. I've signed and worked with many people over the years who I've signed from small theaters. I still promote people doing things like this. There's also a neighborhood effect. When these places close, you know, local businesses around them close, local restaurants and coffee shops and all that sort of stuff. So, I'm encouraging everyone to call, go to the website, websites, or email the state reps and Newsom, whose office phone number is 916-445-2841, because their offices track the responses. Again, 916-445-2841. I left a message this morning saying I wish Jerry Brown was still our governor.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Laura Nguyen, followed by Eric Hock.
Hello, councilpeople. I thank you for your service to our community. Some of you know me as the owner of Burbank Music Academy. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of the grant application I submitted for a Burbank Entertainment Summit. I understand I am not one of the recommended grant applicants, and I wanted to highlight a few things for you. I want Burbank to retain the title of Burbank, of the media capital of the world. A few events that started humbly was the L.A. Auto Show. It started in an ice rink with just 99 vehicles. It is now taking up over a million square feet of the convention center. The Festival of Books started in 1996. It now brings in 160,000 people to that event. The Aftershock Festival in Sacramento started as a one-day event. It is now a four-day event that brings in $30 million to their city. Our own Arts Festival, which I have been a part of for 17 years, has grown considerably. San Fernando Road is packed with visitors on those days, and it's coming up. My goal in highlighting these is to highlight the fact that, yes, we have great community events that our grant applications serve, but we also need to think about the fact that we want to partner with our own artists in this community. We want to continue to nurture that community. We want to partner with them and nurture them as we want more artists here. We can also have a community event that is also a revenue generator. Please consider that in your future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Eric Hock with the Burbank Community Band, followed by Kathy Sezinghaus, Lisa Matzner, and Connie Sisneros.
Okay. All right. Hey, hey to the wonderful Burbank City Council, terrific city staff, and others who've taken time out of their evening to participate in tonight's meeting. My name, for the record, is Eric Hock. I'm the current president of the Board of Directors for the Burbank Community Band. I'd like to share that the Burbank Community Band will be having its final shows of the 2024-2025 season later this month, or actually later this week. The longest-running series of concerts that the band has performed began in the 1980s while we were still the Lockheed Employees Recreation Concert Band, and these are the concerts that we perform as part of, for the city, is Veterans Day, as well as this coming Monday, Memorial Day, which will be at McCambridge Park. The band will start at 10:15. We're going to be doing a number of songs on Memorial Day honoring those who have served this country, the 80th anniversary of the end of the Second World War, as well as the 250th anniversary of the founding of the U.S. Army. If you can't make it to Monday's show, we're actually going to be having another concert right here in Burbank at the Jocelyn Adult Center at 10:30 in the morning this Friday, and that's going to be also performing those patriotic pieces and honoring those who have served. And so, yeah, so that'll be at 1301 West Olive Avenue at the Jocelyn Adult Center and starting at 10:30. So, once again, these will be the Burbank Community Band's final performances for this season, Friday, May 23rd, at the Jocelyn Adult Center at 10:30, 1301 West Olive Avenue, and then Monday, Memorial Day, at McCambridge Park at the corner of San Fernando and Amherst, 10:15, right before the city's Memorial Day ceremony. Hope to see all of you, all of you, at one or both of these shows, and I will hand out copies of this to members of all y'all at the dais. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speakers are Kathy Sezinghaus, Lisa Matzner, Connie Sisneros. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. My name is Kathy Sezinghaus, and I am here with my fellow neighbors. We are here seeking support from the Burbank City Council, Code Enforcement Zoning Board, and the City of Burbank Police Department to help resolve our situation. This is a petition to stop illegal business activities in our neighborhood. We undersigned our residence and reside on the set in document, a specific length block on North Catalina Street and houses along Jeffries Avenue between North Fairview and Naomi. We are concerned about the illegal business activities occurring at a specific residence by a gentleman who's leasing the front house of this property. The tenant moved on the block in the summer of 2024. Neighbors immediately began noticing an influx of cars and observed him moving these cars frequently. Other times, the cars would be left in the same spot for up to six days and moved to evade ticket for street sweeping. Neighbors also began noticing people coming to his location to pick up cars at all hours of the day and night, sometimes with or without luggage. Many of them would walk around the cars, inspecting them before leaving in their chosen vehicles. Within days, those cars would return, and he or his assistant would restart the process of moving them. Within those, yes, then he would also move the cars to various places on the block until picked up by the next customer. It became apparent that this seemed to be a rental car business he was conducting. Neighbors had discussions with him, and he stated he was running illegal car rental business and had proper licenses to do so. He conducts his rentals through a nationwide online platform, stated in this document, and is similar to companies such as Airbnb and Verbo, where you can rent and handle the booking process online with the owner. Over the course of the last few months, we've observed additional cars on the block. We determined that there's 11 to 14 rotating on our block. We have pictures of it, license plates, pictures taken by neighbors in this packet, and many of us continued to speak with him, letting know the problems it's causing, impacting trash day, street sweeping, parking our own family cars, visitors, and deliveries. What he is doing is illegal.
Thank you for your comment. That's your time. Yeah, stick around. I think somebody from staff would like to speak with you.
Okay, and we have packets to hand. I don't know who would get the original.
Feel free to hand them to the city clerk, and she'll instruct you how that process works.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Brady Griffin, followed by Diana Pulver.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, especially with such a packed agenda. I really appreciate it. I also want to extend my appreciation to the staff for all those who went into putting into the agenda item tonight. My name is Brady Griffin, and I'm honored to be here to express my interest in the Civil Service Board. I am a proud 20-year Burbank resident and have dedicated most of my career to public service here in the city of Burbank. For over 18 years, I served in the City of Burbank's Management Services Department, including 15 years as a Human Resources Manager over Employment Services. On this side of the dais, I actually presented to the Civil Service Board over 100 times, including giving the Recruitment and Selection Report, as well as doing class and comp. With that, I know the civil service rules and all of the MOUs inside and out. It's part of my job to learn those when I was here. I had the privilege of working alongside many of you in closed session during labor negotiations while I acted as Assistant Management Services Director, which I was very proud to do and learned a lot from that. Additionally, I am proud of the collaborative relationships that I've built with all of the union leadership here in the city of Burbank. Last year, I left my time here at the city of Burbank to continue my public service as a Human Resources Manager for the city of Pasadena, leading their Employment Services Department, Division. I hold both a bachelor's and master's in organizational leadership from Woodbury University, and I am a proud graduate of Leadership Burbank Class of 2008. I would be honored to bring my experience, my connection to this community, and my commitment to fairness and integrity to the Civil Service Board. Thank you again for your time and consideration. I look forward to the opportunity to continue giving back to this great community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. You got a Woodbury fan in the audience. Our next speaker is Diana Pulver, followed by Lynn Lipinski.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Diana Pulver. I'm a housing provider and lifelong resident of Burbank. The housing control ordinance is being considered are misleading to both tenant and provider and will result in a hodgepodge of rules and regulations which serves no one. Housing control is best served at the state level, as evidenced by AB 1482, which is sufficient and fair for both tenant and providers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Lynn Lipinski, followed by David Donahue.
Good evening, Burbank City Council. I'm here to talk about item Q18, which is the Approval of Funding allocations for the 2025 Community Events Grant. My name is Lynn Lipinski. I'm the president of the Zonta Club of Burbank Area Foundation. I'm joined by two of my board members, Gloria Solis and Cindy Kootsie, in the audience. And I'm here to speak about the Red Sand Project, one of the community grant applications that the city staff... that the city staff has recommended for funding today at the $2,000 level. What a high-caliber group of applications you all got. When I went through them, I was amazed, and so we're really honored to be a part of that group. And I'm here to urge the council to vote yes on funding for our Red Sand Project. This is an impactful community event that we're planning, during which we're going to create an interactive art project at the You Me Credit Union parking lot of Magnolia. What we're going to do is take red sand, non-toxic, environmentally-friendly red sand. We're going to, with a bunch of community members, fill all the cracks in the pavement with red sand, and each grain of sand represents someone who lost their life due to human trafficking. We're planning a very vibrant community event. It has a somber tone, but we also want to make sure that we include inspiration and hope and ways for members of the community to take action. We're lucky to be partnering, the Zonta Club of Burbank Area is lucky to be partnering with the Burbank Noon Rotary Club, as well as Burbank Noon Kiwanis, who are joining us, in putting this event together. We're planning a day on Saturday, July 26, around noon. We'll have food, music, community, and hope. July 30 is the UN World Day Against Human Trafficking, and so your support of our project, the Red Sand Project, will strengthen the city's visible commitment to combating human trafficking, and I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is David Donahue, followed by Terry Friedman.
Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, council members, and talented staff. My name is David Donahue. I am a homeowner and business owner in this wonderful community. One of the things I think is important to reemphasize every time there's a big, sort of significant event that happens is how drastically the costs of living in the state of California are going up. Recently, State Farm was approved, if you don't know this, an emergency rate increase. This emergency rate increase is going to go into effect in July. And the astronomical cost, not just to homeowners, which is over 17% increase, who, by the way, along with condominium renters and landlords, have had 30,000 notices of nonrenewal sent out. Here's the part of some of the conversations that we've had as a balanced, equitable perspective on the, again, massive cost to people that own property. Landlord dwelling units, according to the California Insurance Department, will go up only 38% on average. Landlord dwellings insurance will go up 38%. And here is the part that fires me up. There has been no equitable perspective from this dais directed towards staff to look at the massive costs. I will be up again on another agenda item talking about Burbank Water and Power, but I do just want to bring, again, to your attention, as I have countless times, the costs that every homeowner, every housing provider, every business owner is subject to. Thank you for your time and your service to the community.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Terry Friedman, followed by Joe Pimienta.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, council members Anthony and Rizotti. Thank you for having me today, and my name is Terry Friedman. I'm a member of the Burbank community. I want to address a few things for you today. One is, as a union labor worker, I do always extend my voice in support of uplifting the working class. So with that, Burbank does not have a city-established minimum wage. It is subject to state minimum wage. It actually, and because of that, it falls below Los Angeles' city and county minimum wage, which is over $1 more per hour for our workers. And because of the ever-increasing cost of living, it is tremendously difficult to be able to survive on minimum wage alone. Minimum wage should be able to support a person's ability to live in a comfortable, safe environment and afford their basic needs, like the ever-increasing utility bills, which unfortunately do have reasons for their cost of increase. And also the increase in housing. And speaking of housing, I also want to extend my support for a rent registry. Because the majority of Burbank citizens are renters, it seems a sensible step to be able to capture data, reflect transparency, and identify issues where we may not be able to see them because they're invisible without a registry. On a somber note, one of my friends rents a single-family home. Her husband works in the film industry, so they have struggled financially due to the slowdown of production work, and she has actually cried to me, afraid that she would have to pull her sons out of Burbank schools and move to the Midwest to be able to find a place to live because her home is exempt from state rent control. And lastly, I do want to share that I did submit an application for the Sustainable Burbank Commission, and I invite you to review my application, and I'll be reaching out to you as well to share more.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Joe Pimienta, followed by Harry Temerian.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff, and everybody present in the chamber. Obviously, as you may have guessed, I'm probably going to speak about housing, but first, after hearing the proclamation on Harvey Milk, I do want to point some attention. In honor of Harvey Milk, I do want to call attention to the ongoing demonization of the trans and non-binary community that continues to happen in this country. And for all of those people who, like, whenever this conversation comes up and they respond with, "Well, I don't care what you call yourself," I do have a response, which is, "That's cute, but I think that you don't fully understand the danger that trans and non-binary people are facing at the legal and on the formal level." We are being erased from legal documentation. That is basically enacting our right to exist, and that is something that is ongoing. So whenever having this conversation, I do invite everyone to say that you do care how trans people and non-binary people refer to themselves, because that is basically emphasizing why they have a right to exist in this country, not just socially, but legally. Now, with my remaining time, obviously, I'm also going to bring attention to the urgent need for a rental registry. I, as a participant of the Burbank Tenant Union, have been advocating for things like this for over some time, and it's something that I do think that will be a positive on all sides. The last thing that I do want to say is that, you know, again, whenever having this conversation, there's always this discussion between, you know, both sides and whatnot. However, I do want to constantly keep emphasizing that the character of a community is measured by how we protect the most vulnerable, and yes, at the expense of privilege. And here's the thing, for those of you who own property, myself included, it is a privilege, especially, you know, when comparing it to the people who do not have stock into what they're paying into. Other than that, thank you for your time, and with my last remaining bits, I will also bring attention that earlier today, someone brought attention that there was an ice truck around here in Burbank, so if you see them, just, you know, pardon my French, but tell them to go fuck themselves and enjoy your evening.
Language. Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Harry Temerian, followed by Melissa Thompson.
Mr. Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, and members of the Burbank City Council. While reviewing the Burbank city calendar, I came across a housing workshop. I was surprised, though not shocked, to find yet another event focused solely on tenants' rights, titled "A Free Workshop for Burbank Tenants on Fair Housing Laws." Once again, housing providers were left entirely out of the conversation. Why does this council continue to vilify housing providers? Where are the workshops and resources for the people who actually supply the housing? This one-sided approach is frustrating. It's clear that policies like the push for rent control and a proposed rental registry are being influenced by lobbying groups such as the DSA and the BTU, even though your own citizens have told you they don't want rent control twice, and your own staff has warned that such a registry would cost millions to operate. The only justification we've heard is the city needs data, but reliable housing data is already available through third-party platforms such as CoStar and others. If the city claims it can't rely on external sources, then why is it partnering with a Housing Rights Center? Will the information they gather be accepted and used by the city? And if so, how is that any different? Between August 2024 and March of this year, the Housing Element Unit received 29 complaints. Only eight resulted in notices of violation, eight units out of 26,000 rental units in Burbank. Before building a new bureaucracy, we need to ask, where is the emergency? Unfortunately, this council seems ready to punish all housing providers for the actions of a few. Take, for example, the recently passed anti-harassment ordinance, completely one-sided. In contrast, Claremont is adopting a balanced ordinance that protects everyone, property owners against renters, renters against property owners, and renters against renters. Instead of creating bloated bureaucracies and punishing irresponsible housing providers, Burbank should be focusing its efforts on verified complaints, building policy based on facts, not fear.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Melissa Thompson, followed by Longino Barrigan. Sorry if I mispronounced that.
Okay, thanks. I asked for it. Hi, could I get the presentation pulled up? The Earth Day, oh, great, okay. I haven't done one of these before, and I'm going to go pretty quickly. Hi, my name is Melissa Thompson, representing Burbank Eco Council, and I would like to share about the Earth Day event we helped organize last month with these fabulous partners. Some of you were able to attend, and we greatly appreciate your support. Despite pouring rain and last-minute adjustments, over 40 participating organizations rallied together to provide a fun few hours of educational entertainment and environmental activities. We had tree plantings, collaborative art, games, live insects, shelter dogs, plant giveaways, and our main stage was powered by BWP's F-150 Lightning, so no generators. There were puppet shows, the hawk that helps out at our landfill, and a share fair organized by the recycle center, where all donated items were free to take, and we estimate about 70% of all that stuff was rehomed. And that is circular economy in action. We heard from many that they had an amazing time, learned a lot, and look forward to another Earth Day event next year. Kind of fly through these here. So, looking ahead, we know that there is widespread interest, there are agreements for partnership, there's community need, and we believe that our efforts will have a long-lasting and positive impact on our city. With funding from the Community Events and Program Grant, we can continue to provide Burbank with this equitable and inclusive opportunity to raise awareness about the city's services, increase environmental literacy, and build community. Burbank Eco Council, in collaboration with local businesses, nonprofits, and city agencies, have been offering Earth Day activities for BSD and the greater Burbank community for four years, and we've gotten pretty good at it. So we hope you can support us for more through the Community Events and Program Grant. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment and presentation. Councilwoman Rizotti and I were out there, rain or shine. All right. Our next speaker is Longino Barrigan, followed by Barbara Howell.
Could you please play the video? Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, staff, council members, everybody here and everyone watching online. My name is Longino Barrigan. I'm here on behalf of Esperanza Health and Wellness Center. We are a private nonprofit that is non-funded. The information that I just handed to you are the rescues that we have done since last year. So we are part of the SB 1383 Food Recovery and Food Waste Program. As you noticed, last year, we went ahead and rescued over 2 million, excuse me, we rescued 37,862 pounds that we redistributed to Burbank members. All of this poundage comes from stores and restaurants here in the city of Burbank. And if I could, let me paint you a picture. I come from a place of privilege. Every day, my children, my wife, and I have the option to choose fresh, organic strawberries, bananas, apples, et cetera. Our family chooses what we eat for dinner and have never gone to bed hungry. That is not the case for one in five Americans, and even worse in L.A. County, which Burbank is part of L.A. County. Imagine the last time you were hungry. Did you get a headache? Did you get nauseous? Or are you like me and get frustrated with my wife likes to call hangry, right? Now imagine going to the refrigerator, opening the door, and there's no food. Then you go to your wallet, and you have no money to buy food for the rest of the month. We are trying to alleviate that food insecurity all over the state of California, but especially here in Burbank, where I grew up, graduated from John Burroughs High School, Jordan, which is now Delores Huerta. So please, I'm here to urge you to give us the funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Barbara Howell, followed by A.L. Garcia.
Sorry, doing a little networking there. City Council, Mayor, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I want to thank you for the support that you show for B-TAC throughout the year. It means a lot to us. And I'm here to speak with you about our request for funding with the New City Pilot Program, and I want to thank you for thinking outside the box and creating this program. Most of you are familiar with B-TAC services. We provide groceries, sack lunches, access to laundry and shower facilities, utility assistance, and things like that. But the proposal that's before you has to do with the grocery program and specifically the Letter Carriers Stamp Out Hunger Program. Over 20 years ago, Burbank was one of the pilot locations for this program that became nationwide and is now the largest single-day food drive in the world. Prior to the pandemic, B-TAC would receive approximately 25,000 to 28,000 pounds of food through the food drive. During the pandemic, the food drive was suspended, and it returned in 2023. Although our numbers in '24 and '25 have increased, we are still seeing a lower response, which we think is that after a few years, people kind of got out of the habit of it. But also, due to financial restraints, the letter carriers were no longer able to purchase the grocery bags that they delivered to the homes. So in 2024 and '25, we worked with the letter carriers, and we purchased grocery bags, and our most recent total increased this year to almost 11,000 pounds of food, but still not half that it was in 2019. The proposal in front of you is to address the cost and the impact of the Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive. The grocery bags that we currently used this last year were not of the best quality, and so we would like to increase the quality of the bags, even switching to paper bags if one's allowed to be more in line with city priorities. We also would like to distribute them to more residents.
Thank you for your comment, Barbara.
Thank you for your help.
That's your time. Thank you. Our next speaker is A.L. Garcia, followed by Ashley Ramsey.
Good evening, Burbank, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, City Council, and staff, and members of the public. I know last time I said you wouldn't see much of me, but I wanted to make sure I could attend one last meeting before moving. I brought my mom tonight, who just flew in today from across the country to help me as I move out of my home of nearly a decade. To remind you, I'm a Burbank tenant that is moving because my rent increased this year 8.9%, which for me was unsustainable, especially considering the major construction taking place outside of my unit that not only took away 1,100 square feet of my home, including my yard and garage, but also affected my ability to work from home. With that said, I urge the city to move forward with a rental registry study, and I implore the city to enact stronger tenant protections, including universal just costs and ending rent evictions like the one that is forcing me to leave my home of, again, nearly a decade. We're talking nine years. Remember, I'm not moving because I want to. I love Burbank. I love being a part of this community. I am moving because the city approved the permits that took away 1,100 square feet of my unit that I am renting, allowing the construction that impacts my ability to work and also permitted my landlord to raise my rent 8.9%. Thank you for remembering my story. Hopefully, there will be a next time. I'm not sure if there will be. I hope to come back if I one day can, but until then, good night. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Ashley Ramsey, followed by Daniel.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Ashley Ramsey. I'm a Burbank resident. As you're getting ready to approve the city's budget for the 2025-2026 fiscal year, I want to urge you I want to urge you to consider two things. A minimum wage increase of twenty dollars an hour. Raising the minimum wage has a lot of benefits. Improves our economy, improves people's health and well-being. It boosts our economy. People can spend more, people can pay for things. And businesses see improved retention and productivity. I think, you know, we have a lot of people here that rely on their wages as hourly employees, and I think it would greatly benefit many of our residents of Burbank. The second thing is, I would ask that City Council and staff continue looking into a rental registry for the city of Burbank. It has many benefits for all, including improved housing quality, fair housing practices, and improved communication. These things will benefit our city greatly, and I humbly ask that you consider both of these items. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Our last comment card is for Daniel.
Hello, good evening, City Council, City Staff, and fellow Burbank residents. I'm so glad that members of our community keep talking about Abolish Rent. It is just a mind-blowing book. I encourage everyone, get yourself a copy, read it. Your mind will be changed. So, a couple things on the budget that's being discussed today and voted on in the near future. A rent registry will be a valuable tool for Burbank to understand its housing situation and allow yourselves the ability to make informed housing policy decisions. Housing is unaffordable. Tenants face unsustainable rent increases and unfair evictions at an alarming rate. I appreciate the work that's been done, and I look forward to continuing our work together on the issue of tenant protections and housing affordability so that we can help keep our neighbors housed. Number two, there's a feasibility study to raise Burbank's minimum wage to, I believe, twenty dollars an hour, with possibly an additional five dollars an hour for healthcare and tourism workers. I urge you all, vote yes to support this. Over a hundred twenty thousand workers, including most of this city's staff, commute daily into this city where they can't afford to live. This brings large amounts of traffic and pollution and adds danger to pedestrians, cyclists, and other drivers. It convinced the city to build wide, fast boulevards and freeways that tear through our neighborhoods at the expense of parks, more housing, and a livable, walkable community. These issues of environmental sustainability, worker salary, and affordable housing are interconnected. Although a twenty dollar an hour wage may not be sufficient to afford a dignified life in Burbank, it's a step in the right direction that will raise the standard of living for those on the lowest end of the socioeconomic spectrum who are most in need of baseline economic protections. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And we had one added to our speaker list. We have Maria, thank you, we have Maria Siznan, I can't read that, sorry. And she needs translation services.
Muy buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es María Cibrian. Y yo soy un miembro de mi sindicato SEIU 2015, de los proveedores de cuidado en el lugar. Yo soy una madre viuda y cuido de mi hija que tiene retraso mental. Yo soy la única que la cuida. La situación económica ha sido cada vez más difícil para nosotros.
Good evening, everyone. My name is María Cibrian. I am a member of SEIU 2015 Home Care Providers. I am a widowed mother, and I take care of my daughter who has mental illness, and I am the only one who takes care of her.
Okay. La condición ha sido cada vez más difícil para nosotros porque los salarios de nosotros son muy bajos y el costo de vida cada vez es más alto. Y por eso, mi comentario público es específicamente para la agenda de, para, perdón, para la agenda del punto número diecinueve. Por favor, apoyen el estudio de efectibilidad económica para un salario mínimo en toda la ciudad de veinte dólares por hora para empresas con veinticinco dólares, con veinticinco empleados o más, por tiempo completo, y un excedente de cinco dólares para los trabajadores de la salud y el turismo. Y aumentar el mínimo requerido por el estado para la licencia familiar pagada.
The economic situation has been increasingly difficult for us because of wages are low, and every time, the cost of living is more expensive. My public comment is specific in point nineteen, number nineteen. We're asking for a very specific request on agenda item number nineteen. Please support the economic feasibility study for a citywide minimum wage of twenty dollars an hour for businesses with twenty-five or more full-time employees, and a five-dollar overage for healthcare and tourism workers, and increasing the state-required minimum for paid family leave.
Que muchas gracias, buenas noches.
Thank you, good night.
Muchas gracias por su comentario. Thank you for your comment. All right, that is all my in-person public comment for general public comment. Let's go to the phones.
And Madam Mayor, two callers have dropped, so we're down to three phone callers.
Okay, thank you.
The first caller is Steve Mora.
Hi, Steve, you're on with Burbank City Council. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. On behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, I would like to express our reservations for a wage study at this time. The current economic climate is giving all businesses, large and small, a reason to pause. One thing they look for in times of, in times like this, is stability and leadership. Over twenty-one thousand Californians have lost their jobs during the first quarter of this year. The city of Los Angeles has a one billion dollar shortfall. State of California has a twelve billion dollar shortfall. It is, at this moment, it is at poor timing to authorize a one hundred thousand dollar expenditure on the wage study. State of California has done an excellent job in increasing minimum wage, and the voters rejected efforts by private groups to wrest control of the legislative process in determining wage rates. The city's money would be better spent on our Jobs Connect program or other city departments. A wage study, which could result in a potential increase in the minimum wage, sends a very unstable message, one that gives Glendale and Pasadena a competitive edge. This message would, the message we should be sending is welcome. Now, please consider us, even though we can't tell you the economic landscape will look like in a year or so. Stability attracts high-wage industries. Uncertainty causes them to consider other options. The wage study does not align with the proposed five-year economic plan. We need to stay competitive with our neighbors in Glendale and Pasadena, who conform the state guidelines as we currently do. What we need to do at this time is provide leadership and send a clear message that we in Burbank will foster economic growth by attracting businesses and industry with high-paying jobs. Karen Bass today signed an emergency executive order recognizing the loss of the film industry and wanting to make things easier to bring production back. However, she sent a mixed message. She said welcome, but the City Council last week, with their extraordinary high-wage increase for hotel and hospitality workers, says we will make it up in other ways. We have the advantage over Los Angeles, and this could jeopardize our position. Please send a message that focuses on attracting high-wage industries. A rising tide lifts all boats, not by legislating it, but by promoting economic growth.
Thank you for your comment, that's your time. Thank you for your call.
The next caller is Tracy Tab.
Hi, Tracy, you're on with Burbank City Council. You have three, two minutes, you have two minutes.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council members, council members and city staff. My name is Tracy Tab, and I'm the president of Burbank Pride. I'm here to respectfully ask for your support in the funding of Burbank Pride. Family Pride in the Park is more than a celebration. It's a safe, welcoming space for everyone in our city. It's open to all and centered on love, visibility, and community. This will be our fourth year hosting an event, and each year, we've seen tremendous engagement from the community. We've welcomed over twenty-five hundred attendees in our first year. We grew to over more than forty-five hundred in our second, and last year brought in almost four thousand people, showing sustained support and excitement from Burbank and beyond. At our event, we hear real stories from kids and parents who are deeply grateful to have a place where they feel seen, accepted, and safe being themselves. That kind of impact is priceless. When a city supports Burbank Pride, you're not just helping fund the festival, you're standing beyond residents who have long hoped for a reflective embrace by their own city, for showing that Burbank doesn't just tolerate diversity, it's pervasive. We are incredibly grateful to be considered for this community grant. We understand how many outstanding other organizations are also applying, and we respect the important work that's being done throughout our city. We simply hope you'll consider the unique value that Burbank Pride brings, especially for young people and families who don't always see themselves reflected in public events. Thank you so much for your time, your service, and your commitment to making Burbank a place where everyone can take pride in living. Thank you.
Thank you for your call.
The next caller is Jamie Keizer.
Hi, Jamie, you're on with Burbank City Council. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, and city leaders. I am Jamie Keizer, CEO of the Burbank Chamber of Commerce, and calling to address the potential minimum wage survey. While I understand the importance of examining wage equity and the pressures we face due to inflation and rising costs of living, we believe the timing and focus of the study could pose significant challenges for our already strained local business community due to the current economic climate. This is not the right time. We need to support economic growth, which allows us to bring good-paying jobs into our cities. Let's work together to provide strong leadership and not create business uncertainty. It's important to continue to paint a realistic picture of our small, independently-owned businesses, the backbone of our community. It's imperative that we do our part to keep the storefronts open for our businesses, our residents to be employed, and our local economy vibrant. The chamber's role is to advocate for the long-term sustainability of Burbank's business ecosystem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your call.
That was our last caller.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Now is the time for a brief response from our City Council, our City Manager, and/or the City Attorney. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have one follow-up. We did have, related to the potential legal car business or rental car business over at Catalina, we did have a staff, specifically the police chief, discuss that with those residents. So we will, I don't have the full update right now, but we'll get you an email update later this week, if that works. But we'll be following up.
Thank you, we appreciate that. And then thank you to the folks for coming in and sharing it with us. Mr. City Attorney? Okay. Okay. Council. Councilor Anthony?
Thank you to everyone for coming down. The presentations were great. I loved seeing all the scouts show up. That's always fun, having the kids participate in their local government, so, thank you.
Councilwoman Rosati.
Thank you. Just regarding the Catalina folks, I know we've been getting emails for several months on that, so hopefully, we can get them, you know, their neighborhood back, so.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll definitely get you a report out later this week, and we'll make that a priority.
And then, thank you for all the housing providers that have come to speak. I understand your struggle. I see your struggle every day. I hear you. I, I don't see the cost-effectiveness of the road we're going down based on current reports that we have received, but we'll discuss that at a later time and day. But I just wanted to acknowledge that I do understand your frustration.
Vice Mayor Takashi.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to everyone who came out tonight to speak. Appreciate you taking time out of your day to come here and share with us your experience, and also those who called in, and those who emailed us and met through us, with us, since last meeting. Most of the things that were brought up tonight are items on our agenda, but there's a few things. There were a number, Mr. City Attorney, there were a number of questions about previous policies that Council had decided on regarding housing. So if there's a question about conflicts or how things may apply to folks in the community, where can they go to find out more?
Well, so my office has requested two FPPC opinions, advice regarding councilmember interests, landlord interests, and renter interests. We broke them apart only because there were different issues. We received calls back from the FPPC with a couple of questions for clarification. We're expecting one of the opinions back this week, probably the other one in early June. If we don't get clarification, our plan is to bring something back as soon as we can with all of the issues, so that Council can revisit those. But it's on advice from my office and the City Manager's office that we put hold and abeyance letters on top of the two budget discussion papers, just so that we can have clarity for the community and clarity for the council members on what their obligations are. So that's why you're not discussing those papers. You didn't discuss them last time. You're not discussing them tonight. Hopefully, we can have clarity from the Fair Political Practices Commission, but we are waiting their advice so that we can provide safe harbor letters, if possible, to the council members.
Thank you.
Meaning that if you came tonight talking about the rental registry items or some of these other items, we won't be discussing that tonight, just so you all know, because we're waiting on advice from these letters.
And several folks brought up some really good, really important concerns. So if these concerns are, you know, you still have a question about them, please reach out to our Housing Enforcement Unit and our Housing Department, who will clarify. And if these, in my opinion, if something that we have passed policy-wise in the past is impacting you, please let us know. Let us know how it's impacting you and what's happening with you, so that we can get that information and either address it or figure out a way, or figure out what's going on, so that we know how it's impacting you. So I appreciate you coming up and telling us what your concerns are, and appreciate you letting us know when things are not working for you.
Madam Mayor, if I could, on that topic, the housing rights clinics that you received a report on last week that are being provided by the Housing Rights Center are open to landlords and tenants. They're not exclusive to tenants. It's our opportunity, we used some of the money that Council appropriated last year for legal assistance. In the roundtable, both Mayor and Vice Mayor heard from the community that both landlords and tenants needed greater access to legal resources. My office cannot represent or give legal advice to tenants or landlords, and the Housing Rights Center is the entity that we have been able to partner with to provide that. They have provided two workshops so far. I believe they have two more left in June. The dates are, June 2nd is the next one, from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. over at the Community Services Building. But they are not exclusive to tenants. Landlords may also come, it's first serve, but they are three-hour sessions.
Thank you for that important clarification, Mr. City Attorney. And if folks have questions about housing enforcement and would like to reach the Housing Enforcement Unit, they can reach the Housing Enforcement Unit at what number? Welcome, Mr. Pascot.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. You can reach the Housing Office at 818-238-5180, 818-238-5180.
Thank you, and that is if you are a landlord, housing provider, or a tenant.
Thank you, thank you. I was gonna ask about that, the housing workshops as well. Let's see, a couple of specific things that came up. Mr. Scrogg, thank you for continuing to update us about the entertainment industry. You mentioned a performing arts grant that's potentially being cut from the budget. I'd love to learn a little bit more, so if you can send me some information after this meeting, that'd be great. I'll reach out to you. Let's see. Just briefly, Mr. Pimienta, you mentioned about the concern about the trans and non-binary community. I just want to say that trans and binary folks are welcome here in Burbank, and if you see any evidence to the contrary, please let me know. And let's see. And then the workshops questions, that was it. Great, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All I will say is thank you to everybody who came to speak. Thank you to everybody who spoke on the budget items. Sit tight, we will address that at the end of our agenda tonight. And thank you to our applicants who came and spoke for our grants application, and also to those who applied to our boards and commissions. We appreciate you coming forward, showing your face, and sharing a little bit about you with us. Thank you for coming on down. And I will also say, thank you, Mr. Pimienta, for bringing up that very important issue. You are absolutely right, trans rights are under attack. And Harvey Milk was quite the advocate for trans rights. So thank you for bringing that up. Happy Harvey Milk Day, everybody. Let's move on. The consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item one is approval of the City Council minutes of the joint meeting of May 6, 2025, and the dark meeting of May 13, 2025. Item two is approval of the successor agency minutes of the joint meeting of May 6, 2025. of the joint meeting of May 6, 2025. Item 3 is approval of the housing authority minutes of the joint meeting of May 6, 2025. Item 4 is approval of the parking authority minutes of the joint meeting of May 6, 2025.
If I could just ask that everybody exiting do so quietly, please, so we can continue with our meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Item 5 is introduction of an ordinance to amend and restate Title IX, Chapter 1, Article IX, Section 304.1.2.1 of the Burbank Municipal Code to establish very high, high, and moderate fire hazard severity zones in the local responsibility area of the city of Burbank. Item 6 is adoption of a resolution approving the establishment of the Title, specification, salary, and conflict of interest code designation for the classification of Chief Assistant General Manager, Burbank Water and Power, and adoption of a resolution approving the citywide salary schedule. Item 7 is adoption of a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the city of Burbank and the Burbank City Employees Association from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026, and adoption of a resolution approving a citywide salary schedule. Item 8 is approval of a First Amendment to a supplemental agreement with Mariposa Tree Management Incorporated to increase the cost for tree maintenance. Item 9 is authorization for the general manager to execute the Third Amendments to the residential and the commercial-industrial-institutional water conservation funding agreements with the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. Item 10 is annual review of planned developments and development agreements. Item 11 is approval to accept $564,400 from the Los Angeles County Aging and Disabilities Department, net county cost and one-time-only funding to contracted elderly nutrition program, Older American Act Title III C-1 and Title III C-2 services, and amend the fiscal year 2024/2025 budget. Item 12 is approval of a contract between the city of Burbank and Los Angeles County Department of Public Health for the county to serve as the city's health officer and environmental health department. Item 13 is approval to appropriate $410,457 from redevelopment agency loan repayment funds and $280,073 from Measure H Homeless Solutions Grant Funds to the 211, 233, and 333 South Front Street, 10 East Verdugo Avenue, Homeless Solutions Center Project. And item 14 is approval of addendum to informed consent and waiver of potential conflict of interest in legal representation by Burke, Williams, and Sorensen LLP, and authorization for city attorney to execute. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar in entirety.
Second.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Counselor Member Anthony?
Yes.
Counselor Member Rosati?
I'm gonna abstain from item 5 and yes on everything else.
Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Yes.
And Mayor Perez? Yes. Thank you. All right. Consent calendar passes. Consent calendar passes. All right. We will now move on to the public hearing. This is the time and place for the public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution approving increases to city fees and charges for water, refuse, sewer, and electric services. If you wish to comment on this item in person, please present a salmon-colored public hearing card to the city clerk. If you wish to speak over the phone, please call now at 818-238-3335. You will be placed in a queue until the public hearing comment period begins. And before we begin, are there any disclosures related to this hearing?
No.
All right. Seeing and hearing none. Madam City Clerk, have the notices as required by law been given? Or Assistant City Clerk, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
All right. Do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, emails, and other documents?
We do.
Thank you. And has the city received any written communications on this matter, and have they been provided to all city council members?
Yes, we've received 79 correspondences total.
Thank you. And now, without further ado, will the Representative of Burbank Water and Power please introduce yourself and summarize the matter?
Good afternoon or good evening. This is Mondive Samram, the General Manager of BWP. I'm not gonna be giving the presentation, but I do wanna state a few things before I hand it to our CFO, Joe Lilio. So I just wanna start off with that we did have three town hall meetings to discuss our rate adjustments. I also wanna say that we're probably one of the few utilities in the state, if not nation, that does this. We don't have to go out and do this. We do this because I need to look constituents in the eye and be able to explain why we're doing what we're doing. In addition, every week, for the last several weeks, I've been doing Connect with the GM meetings. Our last one was between TJ Maxx and, God, it was Nordstrom's at the, what is it, the Empire Center. So we've had people, just having one person come by and ask a question is worth it to me. So in terms of how I run the utility, it's all about transparency. This is not an easy thing. I don't wanna come here and ask you for these rate adjustments. It's not because we don't need them. We need them. And I wanna explain briefly before I hand it off to our CFO why. We had the windstorms in January. A lot of people saw that. We had a lot of integrity issues with our poles, with our lines, with water. We had no water quality issues, but we could have. We also have a lot of construction that we need to do because of unfunded state mandates, so we do have to comply with that. We have to meet the renewable portfolio standard that's hundreds of millions of dollars, and we can't even find those contracts. We have to do capital projects that weren't done decades ago. We have a reservoir that's 90 years old that was not touched, that was not refurbished, that was not rebuilt. Had we done it before 2019, it would have been $12 million. We're now looking at $24 million. I'm not gonna be the general manager that kicks the can down the road to have higher rate adjustments in the future. We're doing this now because we feel like if we do it right now and we proactively get these done, our rates won't be going up, as you're seeing right now. There's a long history of not having rate increases here. It wasn't only until the last few years that we had these rate adjustments. On another note, we are trying our best to get grant funding. We got over $50 million in grant funding to redo some of the enhancements at our Magnolia Power project that allows us to increase our megawatts while reducing our emissions. In addition, we worked really closely with the state for some opt-out measures that will save us over $100 million as well. So these are included as part of the cost-of-service study. Because we did these savings, that's why we're not looking at 20, 30, 40, 50% increases. And I also wanna state, even with these adjustments, we're still one of the lowest rates in all of Southern California. We're the second lowest in electric. We're the first lowest in water. But this is not counting what's gonna happen with some of the other cities down the line that I'm privy to that I cannot share here. This also does not include tariffs. We did not include those when we did this study. That was not a reality. We are also adding some staff, but that staff is because I have staff that works 80, 90 hours a week. That is not sustainable. So I do wanna highlight that I've been meeting with people. We've talked about this. We've discussed this with the public. So this should not be a surprise, but I'm also willing to have those one-on-one conversations. We've also done op-ed articles on where our water comes from, why our costs are going up, why our rates are being adjusted, and we republish those as well. I've been getting video talks on Instagram, on Facebook, really putting it out there to come have that contact with me. And I'm gonna give my number again. It's 818-967-1997. That is my cellphone. Text me. I'm really happy to talk about this and why. It does not bring me cheer, enjoy, coming here to ask you for this. This is something we have to do to maintain our reliability. We're the top 5% in the nation out of 2,200 utilities. Our outages are one of the lowest. We have high water quality, and we also don't charge as high as the others. So I do wanna highlight, before I hand it off to Mr. Joe Lilio, and we'll all be here to answer questions as well. And then I would also like to end on, our board on April 3 approved this rate adjustment, as well as our budget, by a vote of 6-11 being abstained. The person abstained, but we had six voting in favor. So I just wanna end on that. Thank you. And I'm gonna hand it off to our CFO.
Thank you, Ms. Samram. We really appreciate that highlight at the beginning. It's always helpful. And welcome, Mr. Lilio.
So good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, honorable council members. All right, so as a publicly-owned utility, Burbank Water and Power develops our budget to ensure sufficient funding to allow our community to build, operate, and maintain water and electric systems that can provide safe services. We are the top 5% of reliability in the nation and the highest among our neighboring utilities, which is important. At Burbank Water and Power, we set rates to ensure that we are collecting no more than the cost of providing electric and water services. In fact, state law requires that this be the case and that the rates are collected equitably amongst the various types of customer classes, such that all customers are paying their fair share and certain customers are not being subsidized. So how do we approach ratemaking? The process generally has three steps, which appear on the slide. The first step is determine the cost to run the utility as a whole, also referred to as the revenue requirement. We do a five-year forecast with that. The second step is the cost-of-service study. And the third step is taking the results of the cost-of-service study to design the rates that services the customers. Okay, so focusing on the electric utility. To set the stage for the proposed rate adjustments to our electric rates, we first need to understand what is driving these adjustments. The higher costs associated with state unfunded mandates to produce renewables, green energy, under Senate Bill 100 is a key driver. Renewables are about three times higher than they used to be. State unfunded mandates to increase housing and electrification, also known as SB 35, which is putting additional pressure on the electric distribution system, creating a need to expand our resources. After the recent windstorm in January, there's increased need to replace poles and move forward with upgrades to improve our reliability, such as our 4KV to 12KV conversion. Increased costs for capital, operating costs, and transmission. The increased costs due to rebuild the Southern Transmission System, also known as STS, which allows us to continue procuring zero-carbon resources from the east and deliver them into Burbank, has risen four times since 2017 and is now approaching $3 billion. So that's a joint project that Burbank is a part of. Costs associated with repowering the Intermountain Power Project in Utah. So it's a power plant that, again, Burbank is a joint partnership with, and transitioning from coal to natural gas and retiring to coal plant. So this project was originally $1.7 billion in 2017, and now it's approaching $3 billion. This project results, however, this project does result in a 50% reduction in greenhouse gas reductions for Burbank. Historical rate evaluation practices do not keep up with pace with operational and capital needs. It's also another driving factor. Meeting required city council approved reserves to ensure physically sound utility to maintain BWP's excellent credit rating, which keeps borrowing costs low and to have reserves when emergencies occur. To further illustrate our cost drivers, here are a few examples of expenses or increases in costs that we are facing. In addition to items generally costing more, BWP is embarking on a generational investment in its electrical power distribution infrastructure. We're budgeting more than $70 million this upcoming fiscal year to invest in capital projects, which is basically a large-scale initiative to upgrade or improve our infrastructure, not just maintenance items. One of our largest capital projects on the electric side is the construction of a new substation. In simple terms, a substation is a crucial part of the electric system that transforms and regulates electricity to ensure safe and efficient delivery to homes and businesses. Our substations are the backbone of BWP's award-winning 99.997% reliability for electric services. As of today, it's expected to cost between $40 and $50 million to construct a new substation. And to put it in perspective, in 2019, our Ontario substation only costed $19 million. And depending on what happens with the federal tariffs, the cost of the substation could go up to $60 to $65 million. And to wrap up the examples, we see our general maintenance items like cabling and transformers have increased substantially as well. Cable costs have nearly doubled since 2019, while power transformer prices have increased about 75%. This is a snapshot of our electric cash reserves. So if we look at the red horizontal line, this represents our council-approved reserve policy of 105 days cash on hand. Again, this is our minimum bare-bones reserve policy. The blue shaded portion is our recommended reserve policy, and that's 160 to 200 days cash on hand. It is critical to be financial stewards of our customer-owned utility and to act with prudence when making policy and financial decisions. And just to put it in perspective, one of the key takeaways with rating agencies, so after the windstorm events, S&amp;P, Moody's, Fitch, they went out to the POUs in Southern California and did what's called rating surveillance calls. They also contacted BWP. BWP was reaffirmed in January by S&amp;P of our AA- in our electric side, while some of our neighboring utilities were downgraded, including one of our neighbors was downgraded two notches. So it's important to maintain strong reserves in order to maintain those credit ratings. And just to put it in perspective, the 2023 electric bonds that we issued for $123 million, if we were downgraded by one notch, that would add borrowing costs of an additional 1/10th to 2/10th percent, which would result in additional $2.4 to $4.8 million in additional interest costs on those bonds that we issued if we were downgraded. So to limit the impact to customers, we are changing the implementation date to January of the rate adjustments. This lessens the initial impact due to lower energy and water use during the cooler months. So BWP has traditionally implemented new rate increases to be effective in July 1. While this has been the business practice, it is not ideal timing from a customer service perspective. To increase demand coupled with rate increases has an adverse impact on many ratepayers. So as a solution, again, we're transitioning from July to January for the rate adjustment impacts. So overall, an average system-wide rate adjustment is 9.9%. Again, that's the overall average. The actual adjustments will differ between various rate classifications. This slide shows estimated bill impacts for residential customers for the next two years if the proposed rate adjustments are approved by city council tonight. So we have three examples. If we look at the one on the left, we have multifamily customers in apartments and condos whose use averages about 345 kilowatts per month. Under current rates, the bill for that amount would be $87.95 per month. With the proposed increase, the new rate would be $165, starting January 1, 2026, with an increase of $12.70. And then year two, that would go up to $118.53. So I will get into our rate assistant programs in subsequent slide, but our rate assistant programs will completely offset these rate adjustments for those individuals qualifying for the programs. And just another example, if we look at the far right, single-family home example, average use of 744 kilowatts per month. The bill is currently $201.36, and this is estimated to increase by $28.54 to $229.90 per month. One of the things that is helpful to do is to compare our bills and rates with those of our peers. This slide shows bills for average residential customers, for both BWP customers and our peer agencies. The colors on the chart reflect different components of each rate that the information was available on. So as you can see, Burbank is second from the bottom, so we are the second lowest compared to our peers and other POUs in the region, and also IOUs. In addition to lower rates than our peer agencies, Burbank is the most reliable electric utility in the region, again, at that 99.997%. So in summary, the results from the cost of service study show the need for residential customers to pay for their fair share of system needs mainly to account for usage during peak demand time. Given the estimated impacts, we have tried to gradually build the rate increases over time. So we are in year three of this rate increase, rate adjustment, so year three and four is what we're looking at. So financial assistance and ways to save. We know that our bill adjustments will impact customers. As Burbank's community-owned utility, our customers are our first priority. BWP offers a suite of money-saving programs and resources to help all customers regardless of income level. Our financial programs range from the immediate rate discount or bill credits to budget billing that evens out your bill over a 12-month period. And for our customers who rely on financial assistance, we will be making enhancements to the programs that will completely offset the rate adjustments. So these financial assistance programs listed here are the Lifeline Program, Bus Program, and the Project Share Program. Project Share is 100% funded by donations from residential and commercial ratepayers, and the Lifeline and Bus Programs are funded by the public benefit funds. So all three of these programs are sufficiently funded to make these enhancements. So moving on to water. Burbank has no local water rights, and we are 100% reliant on water from Metropolitan Water District of Southern California, also known as MWD. Since Burbank purchases 100% of our potable water from MWD, we are subject to their increases. NWD has already increased their rate by 8.5% this January 2025, and will increase the rates again by 8.5% January 26, and then 11% each January thereafter for the next two years, so January 27 and January 28. To illustrate the scope of our water infrastructure in the city, we maintain a total of 276 pipeline miles within our city, in addition to other critical components of our water delivery system. 30 of these 276 miles are over 100-year-old cast-iron pipes that will impact reliability as they continue to deteriorate. So based on current funding and staffing, we're able to replace a little over 1.1 miles a pipe per year. And in order to prevent potential breaks and water surface interruptions, we need to continue replacing these old pipelines as quickly as possible. Similar to the electric side, we're also making considerable investments in our water distribution infrastructure. We're expecting to spend nearly $70 million over the next two fiscal years on capital projects to improve our water infrastructure. All this is done to maintain our 99.99% reliability and to ensure our customers have safe, dependable water. As an example of a large capital project or in a need of replacing Reservoir 2, which is currently operating at half-capacity. So this reservoir is 90 years old, over 90 years old, and it's crucial that we replace this to maintain our reliability and also increase our storage capacity for potential natural disasters. Our reservoir is currently, has a capacity of 2.5 million gallons, but we can only fill it to 1.25 million gallons. And as I mentioned earlier, Burbank is 100% reliant on imported water. We're seeing substantial increases from our water supplier, MWD. And this is a snapshot of our water cash reserves. So the city council-approved minimum reserve policy of 120 days cash on hand is represented by the red horizontal line, and our recommended reserve policy is 200 to 300 days cash on hand is the blue shaded area. And similarly to the electric rates, we are doing everything we can to minimize impact on our community. That includes delaying the proposed 14% rate adjustment until January, when water usage is low. One way that we recover our fixed costs is through the water availability charge, which is a fixed monthly charge that depends on the size of the meter connection. So residential, most residential is 1-inch or smaller, and above that is going to be some form of commercial. Currently, BWP is collecting 20% of our fixed costs through this charge. Industry average is about 30%, so we're behind the curve right now. BWP is not collecting enough to recoup our fixed charges through the water availability charge. The proposed rate adjustments will take BWP from a 20% cost recovery of fixed rates to the 22% cost recovery. So this slide shows four illustrative single-family homes using different amounts of water and impacts of their bills. I'll just show one of them that I'll talk about. So to the far right, an average Burbank home with a lawn and more outdoor watering needs using about 16 HCF or 12,000 gallons per month would see a bill increase of $13.76 in 2026 and then $12.49 in 2027. So this slide shows the bill impact for average water use for three other customer classes, multifamily, commercial, and irrigation. We provide one of the highest quality of services at a competitive rate with no local water rights. So I think this is key. And as you can see here, that we're the lowest in the region, even with the proposed rate adjustments. And having no water rights, with some of our other agencies up there, our peers do have local water rights. Again, we're going to remain the lowest in the region. This is also a good opportunity to remind everyone to implement energy and water-saving practices at your home and businesses. We also want to help you make your home and business more efficient. You can receive free upgrades that will have an immediate impact on your water and energy bill and receive generous rebates on efficient water and electric devices. If you're interested in either financial assistant programs or looking for resources to help save money, those of the public, please feel free to scan either of the QR codes on the screen or visit our website at burbankwaterandpower.com and click on the Financial Help menu option. So I will now turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Walker, who talked about wastewater.
Good evening, Mayor Perez and council members. I'm Steve Walker, Assistant Public Works Director, Wastewater Systems. I will be presenting an overview of the proposed rate increases for fiscal year 2025-26 and fiscal year 26-27 for the Water Reclamation and Sewer Enterprise Fund, also known as the Wastewater Fund or the Sewer Fund. And as mentioned, Public Works and BWP have been working together regarding the proposed utility rate increases for the next two fiscal years. I wanted to share a photo of the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant, or BWRP as we refer to it, that the Public Works wastewater team oversees. We currently treat an average flow of about 7.5 million gallons per day and convert raw sewage into recycled water for reuse. Public Works recently completed a rigorous competitive selection process, and beginning this fiscal year, effective July 1, 2024, Infomarc is the city's new contract operator of the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant for the next 10 years. This helps ensure that Burbank residents and businesses continue to receive reliable, high-quality wastewater services at the best possible value. The rate increases are needed to provide funding for projected cost increases due to regulatory permit requirements from the State Water Resources Control Board and the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board under two permits. One for the treatment plant operations and the second for the production of recycled water. In fiscal year 25-26, Public Works will continue implementing the city's new NPDS permit for the treatment plant operations, which became effective on January 1, 2024. Additionally, contractual charges from the City of Los Angeles for the conveyance, treatment, and disposal of wastewater. This is primarily for the treatment of sludge, although it also addresses the fact that LA treats some of Burbank's flows, and Burbank also treats some of the City of LA's flows at our Burbank Water Reclamation Plant. Also, capital improvement projects for both the sewer collection system pipelines and the treatment plant, and also inflationary impacts on labor, chemicals, materials, equipment, and other costs to operate and maintain the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant and the sewer collection system. Finally, the proposed rate increases will help ensure that the city maintains the proper fund reserve balances. We're proposing a 6% increase in sewer rates for fiscal year 25-26 and a 6% increase for fiscal year 26-27. The previous rate increases by fiscal year that were approved by the council include 4% increases in fiscal year 23-24 and fiscal year 24-25, a 2% increase in fiscal year 22-23, and there were no sewer rate increases in fiscal year 2021 and 21-22 due to the pandemic. With the recommended increases, the monthly flat rate for sewer services for single-family residential properties will be $30.01 from July 1, 2025 through December 31, 2026, and this represents an increase of about $1.70 per month over the current year. In calendar year 2027, the single-family residential rate will go to $31.81, and this represents an increase of about $1.80 per month over the prior year. This chart provides a comparison of sewer rates for single-family residential properties in fiscal year 25-26 between Burbank and other cities in Southern California that have generally similar wastewater systems. As you can see, Burbank's proposed rate of $30.01 continues to be lower than most other cities in the region and significantly lower than the larger cities of Los Angeles and San Diego. And I just want to highlight a comparison with the City of Los Angeles. LA's base rate is increasing 46% in one year from July 2024 to July 2025. We've made capital improvements to the collection system and the plant to improve the sewer system reliability while keeping rates low and very competitive with other cities. And in conclusion, we recommend a 6% sewer rate increase for both fiscal year 2025-26 and fiscal year 26-27. The next speaker is John Molinar.
Welcome, Mr. Molinar.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Takahashi and Burbank City Council. I'm John Molinar, and I serve as the Assistant Public Works Director overseeing streets and waste management. Tonight, I'll be briefly presenting the proposed adjustments to our refuse rates. Despite our commitment to maintaining affordable rates, several factors are creating unavoidable financial pressure. We must maintain compliance with mandatory regulations, including organics and recycling collection mandates, universal waste collection requirements, waste reduction ordinance compliance. Our essential operational expenses also continue to rise. Staff costs have increased 7.5%. Internal service charges are up 5%. Operational supplies have seen significant price increases. We have implemented a 15% reduction in our materials and supply budget to help offset these increases. The market for necessary equipment has also seen dramatic price increases. Collection trucks that previously priced around $300,000 now exceed $600,000, and carts and bins have similarly increased in cost. We have also seen several critical, we have several critical infrastructure projects that require funding. The recycle center roof and ventilation repairs need to be done. Landfill side slope liner expansion needs to be constructed, and then we have two liner expansions after that. The total investment will be over $15 million. And lastly, state regulations require us to maintain sufficient funds for future landfill We're proposing 8% increases across the next two rate cycles to address our existing cost drivers. With this adjustment, a typical household will see just $3.13 added to their monthly bill, while we still maintain our position as one of the region's most affordable providers. These increases support the Waste Management Division's commitment to exceptional service and quality of operations. Our comprehensive services include weekly street sweeping for community cleanliness, landfill operations and management, recycling center operations, collection of trash, organics, and recyclables, education programs in illegal dumping removal, electronic waste, universal waste, and motor oil drop-off facilities, education and enforcement of state and local mandates. It is worth noting once more that we provide weekly bulky item collection services servicing over 19,000 bulky collections annually. Looking at the comparative rate data, Burbank's Waste Management Division has successfully maintained competitive rates despite industry-wide cost increases. Our team has achieved this through strategic operational efficiencies while delivering exceptional service quality to Burbank residents. That concludes my section. Thank you for your attention, and I'll turn the presentation back to Joe.
I think we're done. I think we're open for questions for the public hearing.
Okay, great. Thank you all for your presentations. We'll do public comment first, and then we'll go to council questions and comments. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the council on this public hearing item only for this one. The public hearing, public comment period is now beginning, and no additional cards or calls will be accepted. Madam City Clerk, how many public comment cards do we have for the public hearing, and how many callers do we have?
Two cards and no callers.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. The only two cards, you will each get three minutes. So first, we will start with David Donahue, and then we'll hear from Laura Nguyen. Welcome, Mr. Donahue. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Takahashi, council members and staff. To my left and to my right and behind me are probably some of the most talented staff the city has, and that is a high bar because they are all talented staff. Ms. Mondip Samra and her entire team, I have seen them work in many Burbank Water and Power board meetings advocating for the interests of this great city. You've seen me before this dais many times, talking about IRP, the Integrated Resources Plan, and all of the other programs that the state of California has forced us to do. They rightly included some of the bills, and I want you to just kind of take a moment, I want to take a moment, to drill down on those. Those are the drivers. Unfunded state mandates, incredible demands on our infrastructure, so much so, it is impossible with the current funding, the ability to get equipment to actually reach those objectives set by the state. We're fortunate that I've been doing this for many years, and our now Assembly Member Nick Schultz, at his most recent community town hall, acknowledged the fact that there are incredible driving forces affecting every community in the state of California. The one thing I want to call out on the presentation is as while the data is correct on the rates and compared to other cities, the point that I want to bring up, it is the massive amount of rates increase and the cost across those jurisdictions. It's amazing. We may be at the lowest area of it, but they're still massive. It is going up everywhere because of these mandates. The other part that I am critical of is, I believe, a necessity of the program to call attention to assistance. Assistance might sound like some sort of a safety net, but it applies to few real people. You have to qualify for it, and you are, it is really hard to be able to do that. It serves very few people. What I would ask and urge you is to really look at how this driver does, what I have said many times, affects the cost of everything, from housing providers to homeowners to businesses. We heard from the wonderful restaurant owners at Tequilas advocating to keep, you know, We heard from the wonderful restaurant owners at Tequilas advocating to keep, you know, their wages at a reasonable level. This impacts them, restaurants like Lancers, in a very significant way. Is it avoidable? Not this round. We got to do it. I support it. We have no choice. If we don't do it, it's a $144 million fine that the, and our Honorable Mayor is nodding, yes. So thank you for that. Please, if there's anything we do do to advocate to any of our elected leaders, I would urge your support in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Laura Nguyen.
Hello. My, won't take up the three minutes. I have questions because unfortunately, I could not attend any of the public meetings that you had. I own two businesses in Burbank, so I have three meters. My prices have increased a lot, but my questions are, recently, you signed a 50-year contract with the Intermountain Power Plant in Utah. It was supposed to end in 2024, and I want to know why anybody would sign a 50-year contract. In addition, we have to, as the state of California, we have to give power because our electrical solar panels generate so much power. We end up giving power away to Arizona, New Mexico, because our grid can't handle it. And I'm really confused. Do you have, is there a place where I can get those questions answered where, why you would sign a 50-year contract? That was a coal plant that is now being converted to natural gas, and apparently Burbank residents are going to help fund that conversion. So that is one question. And why is our concentration not converting the electric power to save us rates? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right. Madam City Clerk, are there any callers? Sorry if I missed that. No callers. Okay, great. All right. There being no further public comment, I now declare the public hearing, pub, the public hearing, public comment period closed. Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, so there are additional, because this is a hearing on rates, the city did receive written protests, and so I believe the city clerk has a number of those written protests.
I, I had announced it before, it's 79 total.
Okay.
She announced 79.
79 is the total.
Yes, at the beginning. And just to reiterate, as we did in the beginning, council has copies of all of those written protests. Um, all right. Would the representatives or anybody from Burbank Water and Power like to respond to the comments?
Great question. So I'm going to respond to the previous speaker. So in terms of the Intermountain Power Project, I'm just going to look everyone here. I was not here when it was signed in 2017. I actually worked for another city that we had opted out. But the reason why Burbank decided to opt in was it became a joint project. You have to get the generator with the transmission system. The transmission system is a southern transmission system over 500 miles long. It allows us to access the Eurocarb and power on the east of us. There's a lot of stuff that's being built in Utah, in Wyoming, that is the only way for us to bring it home. That is the reason we signed up for it. The reason it's 50 years is because we don't want to go through another transmission services agreement again, and transmission agreements and transmission lines usually last 50 years. The project itself is a natural gas plant that is planning to convert to hydrogen. I don't know when that will happen, but I do want to just point that out. It's 50 years because that's how they were able to draw the bonds out. The bonds are actually 30 years, but the project has a lifeline of 50 years. So I've been part of this project since Anaheim days when I worked there, and then at Pasadena, and now here, and I have the pleasure of having to go to meetings every month to highlight this project. But I will also say, we've done a lot of resolutions with LADWP, that is the operating agent, to curb costs. We have put in significant effort to say when there's any cost outer, we have to have a vote with the other two larger participants, which is also Glendale. And LA and Burbank were the three largest participants. So just in FYI, we've done a lot. So any cost increase actually has to go, and we will vote no on most occasions, though we will only vote yes if it prohibits building the STS. But we have put in a lot of provisions. Secondly, on what happens with solar, we do have excess solar in California during the hours of pretty much 10 to 2, 10 to 4. What ends up happening is, depending on your balancing authority, developers are sometimes charged if they keep it online because the grid cannot handle it. So a lot of the time, we do export it out is because we have excess. Excess means that our solar that we're producing is a lot more than the demand we have, and the value of solar goes down to close to zero during that period, and that is what happens. After hours, so during our super peak from about 4 to 8, that is when the value of electricity is high. That's also when the sun is going down, so we actually have to buy a lot of market power and other baseload resources. So I hope I addressed the question, but in addition, I really would encourage, you know, to reach out to me again. It's 818-967-1997. We'd love to discuss this over coffee. You can come over to my office. You can have lunch with me. More than happy to go over the Intermountain Power contract. And I hope I addressed the question.
Thank you, Ms. Samra. And I do encourage the speaker to have that conversation with her. Mandeep, I'm not an energy person. I didn't feel like I was until I joined APPA, but quite frankly, Mandeep makes a lot of this digestible for those of us who don't have degrees in engineering and water and power or any of those fields, and I do encourage a conversation with her. Thank you for doing that. Now, does the council have any questions of staff? All right, you both went up at the same time. Who wants to go? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to echo what the mayor just said about Ms. Samra, that she will literally sit down with you one-on-one and talk with you until you understand it completely. So if, and then I don't want to invite your time to the community, but I've seen you do it, so I know that you are willing to do it, and I hope that folks will take advantage of that. So one of the comments, and many of the comments in our emails that we received, was about getting assistance. I mean, already, there's folks that are getting assistance, but this puts more pressure on individual, you know, costs for, for folks who may be on the edge already. So can you speak a little bit more about how you're going to make sure that folks know about the assistance and really get out there to help folks not, you know, be pushed over the edge?
No, great question. We will be putting bill inserts out there. We will be doing social media. I will still be doing my coffee or chats with the GM, and every time we've had those meetings, we've actually had handouts of this as well. So we will be publicizing it tenfold, basically at once if this gets approved. In addition, I do want to highlight that we have public benefit funds that are in excess of $10 million. We're actually using that to offset concurrently. I do go up to the state quite often. We're really looking for other affordability measures, too, because we also know the middle class is hurting as well, right? Not just low income, it's middle class, too. So we're really proponents of developing some sort of bill or legislation that'll help more classes to, to be able to benefit from that, not just the low income.
Okay, great. And to follow up on that, so if folks start to go into arrears, or they start to not be able to pay their bill in full, will you reach out to them and see if you can help them better manage, better have access to, you know, people pay their bill?
Yep, and I think we're definitely going to do that at our billing paying stations when you come to BWP as well. I plan to be sitting up there once the bills are implemented and reached out, so I could also address questions when people come in. But we are, we're looking at that, and we'll definitely point out, project share is one of those that was really focused on arrears. We're kind of taking that out, was a $100 one-time bill credit. We're now looking at $250. It'll completely wipe out the impact of this increase, and we have enough budgets, a two-year budget that we did for two years. We plan to do it for as long as we need to.
Great. And this week, I received on my door, a door hanger for a home improvement program from BWP. Can you share a little bit about that, too, for the average homeowner or somebody who's renting, to just generally use less electricity so it will cost less?
Yeah, we do energy audits. So if you call and request it, we actually will have staff or a vendor in this case come in and see the potential for you to reduce electricity and water usage. So we do have that service available.
That's awesome. Great. Thank you so much. I think that's probably the biggest concern of the community, and it sounds like you are already planning for it, but it will continue to be, I think, a conversation. I wanted to point out a couple of things on the presentation, just to let you know that on Slide 17, our version didn't have any numbers on it. So when we put it up on the website, can we just ensure that the, the slides that are posted on the website, our version didn't have numbers, that the version that's on the website does when we have the minutes? And similarly, on Page 21 with the QR codes, thank you so much, by the way, both this presentation and the previous one had QR codes, which is awesome, but also, I think, to the mayor's point earlier, having a URL there as well, I think will be really helpful for folks who either don't want to or don't have the phones to use the QR code. And then lastly, a couple just last questions. One of our speakers mentioned a mini-million-dollar fine if we don't do it. So can you just tell us very plainly, what happens if we did not do this?
So, so there's a couple of things. So the renewable portfolio standard, if we do not meet that, we will have hundreds of millions of dollars in fines. We've actually been successful in working with the states to potentially do an opt-out measure, and I've been very public about not working with developers that tell you one price, come in and triple it two days later. You wouldn't buy a house for $100,000 and then move in and find out it's $500,000, right? I've been very vocal about the discord there and the lack of, you know, fairness on both sides. It used to be risks were borne by both sides of seller and the buyer. Now it's basically almost 100% on the seller. So those are points I've made very clearly at the state. We've been heard, so we do have some flexibility there, and that's because, you know, we go up there, we talk about it, and I give tangible examples. We were at one point over, looking at over 10 contracts. They've all dropped off except one. You'll see that effort next month. That was probably the last good contract we'll see in a while.
So what I'm hearing you say is that this, this rate increase, the way that it's proposed, is the best-case scenario for us.
Yes.
Yeah, anything else would be worse.
Yes.
Okay. And then lastly, there was a mention earlier in the presentation about this is not taking into accounts any potential tariffs, right? And so I'm wondering if the tariffs do impact our costs and functionality at BWP, and what happens? Do we absorb the cost? I mean, how do we move forward?
So I think temporarily, we would, but concurrently, I am going again to DC for an American Public Power Association meetup for the Policymakers Council in July. So we're there talking about these issues, and you have both red states and blue states talking about the impact this has on everyday people, right? So I, I'm hopeful that those tariffs won't come to fruition. I think we've seen a big clawback, but I will highlight on solar, the tariffs that were contemplated were 3,000% on the places that developed those, and we're, I'm not going to say one or two years away from manufacturing it in the United States. I think we're decades away. We were just slow getting there, but we are fighting the good fight. So I'm really hopeful with the partnerships and the things I've been seeing in the utility sector that those won't happen, but if they do, we do eat it for a little bit, then we would come back for a potential rate adjustment. But I will hopeful, I'm hopeful that we won't have to do that. This is already really hard to, to digest for me. This is not, this is my first year in the role to have to come here and say, hey, guess what? This is what's going on. Not something we want to do, it's a reaction to what's going on, on things that we cannot control.
Well, from your lips to God's ears on that. Thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing me to ask questions.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I'll just add, I was actually on the APPA call this morning, where we discussed some of this, and it's a concern for everybody, regardless of where you are. You could be in metropolitan Burbank, you could be in a small city in Kentucky, it does not matter where you are coming from. This is a concern across, across the, the entire United States, the tariff costs and the increase of production, the same way Ms. Samra mentioned, what's happening with our reservoir, what's happening with our capital improvements projects. That's what you're hearing across the board, doubling in costs. So everybody's concerned, and I think, I mean, I hope that comes to fruition that, when we go back in, in July to APPA, but it is a concern for all of us, and I'm really grateful that we have leadership that has managed it very well in Burbank. Who else has questions? Councilor Anthony, and then I'll go to Councilor Rosati.
I don't know what you guys are talking about. The president told me the foreign governments would pay the tariffs. We had a speaker talk a little bit about, we sell our solar during the day, and you mentioned that it's more expensive because at night, we don't have that solar anymore, so we buy it. So I wanted to ask you about battery storage, energy storage. The unfunded mandates coming from Sacramento, has the state of California pushed us and other municipalities to work on storage? And are we doing the bare minimum, or are we trying to solve this problem on our own to a greater extent?
So I will say that you will be seeing some rebate adjustments from us on June 3rd, and that does include for battery storage to supplement the solar. That is the benefit. Those extra four hours or those extra two hours in the evening and two hours in the morning really do make a difference for us in terms of buying electricity at really high prices. Back when we had, first of all, I've been here four years, we've had four heat dome events, so I can't say it's a one-in-100, it's a one-in-one. So we've had prices go up to $1,000 a megawatt hour, so it would be very helpful for us not to buy those during those shoulder-peak hours. During midday, prices don't go up that high. So we are looking to add that rebate. You will see that. In addition, we did do an APPA grant-funded ion flow battery, that's long-duration battery, that's about six hours, that we're testing it out on our ECO campus. The reason we're testing it out is let us see how it works, let us study it, and then maybe some of our customers could also deploy that as well, especially when they have solar on their campus.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilor Rosati.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. This is my third presentation. So I just wanted to say that the, just comment that the public engagement was really good. I went to some of those meetings, I've sent people to those meetings, and the feedback I got was their questions were answered, they understood it, and it's a tough subject to explain, so I think I applaud you for, for putting those on. I think PIO Donahue did a pretty good job of, of explaining what the penalties are in plain terms, so I fully understand what we need to do and why we're doing it, but I also appreciate that you're doing everything to, to continue to keep rates down when compared to other communities, so thank you.
Thank you.
Trying to give away JJ's job?
For the DWP.
For DWP.
Sign up.
Oh my gosh. Thank you so much, Mandeep. Thank you so much to the entire team. I really appreciate all of you and the work you do. I've had the opportunity to see it firsthand this year, and, and my gosh, I wish I could have the chart laminated in my office that has the rates and what we've done to maintain our status as one of the lowest costs in the region, and also as the most reliable in the region. And then I think when we have that conversation with folks in the public, it's a good point to mention, and, and we aim to stay that way. So thank you for all you've done. I also don't have any questions. Yes, my, my one question, which is the worst-case scenario.
Madam Mayor, so if I could just clarify then, for the record, since this is a rate hearing, Prop 218 applies to the rates except electric, so for water refuse and sewer fees. There are 79 written communications or protests received by the city clerk. There are 58,500 customers, 50,100 residential, 8,400 commercial. For purposes of calculating majority protest, that would require more than 29,251. So even counting online signatures on a petition which is currently running, that's less than 300, we are well below even 400 communications on this matter, so there is not a majority protest for purposes of this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, and, and that's not to say we don't hear folks who are, who are putting in their protest. I assure you, my colleagues and I have taken a look at each one of your, your comments, your protests, and I've also looked at the change.org petition floating around, and we're happy to sit down, and I'll speak for everybody, but I'm looking at the nods. We're happy to sit down and talk to you all about why we're doing this. The eight points that Ms. Samra explained at the beginning illustrate exactly why we're doing this, so please know it's not, it's not with happy faces that we do, do this moving forward. All right. I now declare this public hearing closed, and the council will now deliberate. What is the council's pleasure?
I'll move the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Rosati, second by Anthony. Let's take the vote. Councilmember Anthony?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Rosati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Yes.
And Mayor Perez?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, and thank you, BWP, for coming forward and presenting this. All right. We are now moving on to our reports to council. We have four reports to council this evening. After staff's presentation, the city council will proceed with in-person public comment only. Speakers will be allowed to speak on the item at the conclusion of the presentation as long as the speaker has not spoken on this item during the first period of general public comment. Please be sure to submit your
Please be sure to submit your public comment cards now, as no additional cards will be accepted once the comment period commences. Our first presentation, or first report to council tonight is the appointment to fill a vacancy on the landlord-tenant commission for an unexpired term. After, I welcome Madam City Clerk, Kimberly Clark, to present the report.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, members of the city council. Kimberly Clark, City Clerk, tonight I will be presenting item number 16. On April 3rd, 2025, the city clerk's office began advertising and accepting applications for one vacancy on the landlord-tenant commission for an unexpired term ending July 31st, 2026. This vacancy was created by the resignation of Commissioner Judy Smith. To obtain qualified candidates, a notice of vacancy was advertised through the following channels: the city website, city council meeting announcements, all social media platforms managed by the city clerk's office, press releases sent to the Burbank Leader and to my Burbank.com, notices posted on the city hall bulletin board, community groups and organizations, and through the Constant Contact email notification system. The deadline to submit applications to the city clerk's office was Monday, May 5th, 2025, at 5:00 PM. The city clerk's office received a total of four applications for the commission: Cameron Hunter, Constantine Metellinos, Joseph Massimini, and Maria Rodriguez. The applications are listed in the order in which they were received. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. We will now move to public comment. I have two speakers for public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes. Our first speaker is David Donahue, followed by Harry Temerian. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Tagahashi, and council members and staff. My name is David Donahue. I'm here in favor of supporting Cameron Hunter for the landlord-tenant commission. It's hard because I did get, have a conversation with him. He was saying that he was running, and I did not look at the agenda to see that Constantine, who's in the chamber today, has also put his application in. He is also extremely talented individual, but I think that the council will be well-served with both. I am, but I am always seeing my support for Mr. Hunter. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Harry Temerian.
Good evening, Steve Mayor, Vice Mayor Tagahashi, Mayor Perez. I stand before you to voice my support for Cameron Hunter to be appointed to the landlord-tenant commission. Unfortunately, Cameron could not be here. He's in Orange County right now. His brother's just had his first baby, so he's like, I gotta be there. I said, okay, no problem. So I wanted to be here, voiced my support for Cameron Hunter. I love Constantine, but...
Which one?
I, can I get my minutes back? Cameron is a, Cameron is a, Cameron is a fifth-generation Burbankian. He's a third-generation Realtor and is the president-elect of the Burbank Association of Realtors. Cameron has been a Realtor for over 14 years, representing tenants, housing providers, home sellers, and buyers. He and his father are very active in the Burbank community, mainly supporting the Burbank Parks and Rec, both as players and as coaches. Cameron is a member of the Burbank Association of Realtors Legislative Committee, a board member of the California Association of Realtors. He sits on many committees on the state level as local policy and planning, legislative, and federal task force. For the past five years, he has traveled to Sacramento to lobby for housing policies to ensure increased housing supply. He is well-versed in state and local laws affecting both housing providers and tenants, and he will add tremendous value to the landlord-tenant commission. Please consider Cameron Hunter for this position. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and thank you for the joke. If you didn't make it, I was going to. All right. Let's move on towards the vote. If we're all right with it, we will vote as the city clerk reads through the names. Does that work for everybody? Okay, let's do it.
All right. Let's see, a show of hands, vote for Cameron Hunter. Constantine Metellinos.
You get one vote. You get one vote!
Would you like to change your vote?
Okay.
Constantine Metellinos, Joseph Massimini, and Maria Rodriguez. We have a tie at the moment. I will read the two names again. Cameron Hunter and Joseph Massimini. We still have a tie.
We can deliberate for just a minute if we want.
Mr. City Manager, would it be possible to wait till Councilor Mullins is back to redo this, or?
Absolutely. If you have a stalemate, too, too, I recommend, unless there's some compelling argument here to have somebody switch their vote, it'd be easier enough just to carry it over to the next meeting.
Yeah. How do we all feel about that?
I do want to say, yes, Constantinos. Sorry, we couldn't get you on this. If we want to go to the June 3rd, can we do June 3rd?
We have the full council here able to vote, and we won't have this tie. In the meantime, I do encourage folks to reach out to council and chat with us.
Just a point of clarification, would we only bring back the two that received two votes? Is that how it's done, or does the full?
It would be the entire application package again.
So I'm going to encourage everybody who applied to reach out to council and have a conversation. And since we're talking about it, my full disclosure, that is what my vote is based on.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Individually, without sharing their conversations that they've had with any particular council member, with another council member?
Yes. Oh, yeah. Please, please, if you email all of council, and we, this is just point of order here, if you email all of council using the city council DL and you're applying for a position, and one of us responds to you, please don't reply all. Just have those individual one-on-ones with us. Thank you. Alrighty. I think that's our first tie. All right. Let's move on to the civil service board.
Good evening again, Mayor Perez and members of the city council. I will now present item number 17. On April 11th, 2025, the city clerk's office began advertising and accepting applications for one vacancy on the civil service board for an unexpired term ending July 31st, 2028, created by the passing of Malcolm Mal Kelman. To obtain qualified candidates, a notice of vacancy was advertised through the following channels: the city's website, city council meeting announcements, all social media platforms managed by the city clerk's office, press releases sent to Burbank Leader and to my Burbank.com, notices posted on the city hall bulletin board, community groups and organizations, and Constant Contact email notifications. The deadline to submit applications to the city clerk's office was Monday, May 12th, 2025, at 5:00 PM. The city clerk's office received three applications for the board: Brandon S. Lingle Adams, Brady Griffin, and Narbe Hartunian. The applications are listed in the order in which they were received. Please note that applicant Narbe Hartunian has also applied for the police commission. If appointed to the civil service board, this applicant's name will be removed from consideration for the police commission appointment, which is tentatively scheduled to be presented to you at the July 15th, 2025 city council meeting. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions council might have.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We also have two comment cards for this report to council. Since there's two speakers, you will each get three minutes, and I will start with Narbe Hartunian, followed by Brandon Adams. Mr. Hartunian, you have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, honorable council members. I appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself, and I'm honored to even be considered for this commission. So thank you for your time, thanks to the staff. Serving on the civil service board is a unique opportunity to apply my over 20 years of experience across federal government, where I like to thank I've stood for justice, equity, and equitable outcomes for people across all the work I've done. I've held a range of positions and currently serve as the Assistant Special Agent in charge of investigations for the NASA Office of Inspector General, where I supervise investigators conducting criminal investigations in the southwestern United States that impact NASA. I have extensive experience navigating the federal merit service principles in order to ensure equitable and just outcomes in investigations. But I've also applied the skill set to crafting agency policies and regulations related to everything from recruitment to employee relations. I've served on a range of employee advisory committees. I was on the NASA OIG Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Accessibility Committee back before that was no longer permissible in the federal government. I received my bachelor's in political science from UCLA and a law degree from Loyola Law School. But I'm mostly excited for this possibility because it'll give me an opportunity to serve the city of Burbank. Although I'm a fairly new resident of Burbank, we only moved here a little bit over three years ago, I, I don't know how Burbankians will feel about this. I like to consider myself an honorary member. I grew up at the Media Center. I mean, that's where I spent a lot of my childhood, at the, like, whenever I did well in school, my treat was, you know, a night out at the AMC 6. When I got out of the Army, I lucked out. My very first civilian job in the federal government was as the explosive specialist back when it was the Bob Hope Airport, now the Hollywood Burbank Airport, where I served about six years, put myself through school then. And a couple days ago, I celebrated my ninth anniversary of meeting the love of my life at St. Joe's on a night where I had to rush to the emergency room. So Burbank has been an important part of my life, and I'm honored to live here now, and I'm happy to, you know, for this opportunity to give back to the community in any way I can. I also understand that my federal experience kind of makes me a wild card here, you know, but I, but I think that can be a, bring a unique perspective to the board. I think, especially in light of the lessons I'm learning from the changes the federal government is experiencing, I think I can bring a lot of, a lot of those lessons learned from those, from those experiences. And I also think that now more than ever, the merit principles that underpin our civil service system are essential. And the civil service board plays a vital role in safeguarding those principles and the due process afforded to civil servants. I'm passionate about, about this process, and I would be honored to contribute my experience to helping the city continue to uphold them. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Right on the money. And you are a Burbankian. Our next speaker is Brandon Adams. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Brandon Lingle Adams, and as the agenda implies, I'm here to express my interest in the civil service board. Although I am not native to Burbank myself, when moving to Los Angeles with my now husband, who's here with me tonight, I knew this is a place that I wanted to call home. I would say in many ways, Burbank reminded me of more rural towns that I grew up in the Midwest. I even have the pleasure of sometimes driving to work and getting stuck behind a horse in the Rancho, which is a nice reminder to slow down sometimes. I'm very proud to be expressing my interest on this day where we recognized Harvey Milk Day as a holiday in the city of Burbank because my journey in serving community started with an organization that you may be familiar with called the Trevor Project. It is the world's largest LGBTQ resource for young folks who are considering suicide. I spent a number of years on the phone lines having conversations with young people, and later transitioned to staff at the Trevor Project, working as their HR lead for the West Coast. Although my background may be less traditional since leaving the Trevor Project, I have taken my skills to help develop impactful hiring strategies and HR best practices with a complex-matrixed entertainment company here in Burbank. My trip through the Rancho may give you a clue. Ensuring that these efforts are equitable, representative of the time, and reflect our values. I hope that my unique experience in policy and people could provide a perspective not currently represented on the board, and I would be privileged to serve in this capacity. I appreciate you, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment, and thank you for applying. All right. Those are my two speakers, and now we will proceed to the vote. Yeah. The one thing I will say is, I want to note, it's the first time we've had all three speakers come forward in a long time, so thank you to all the applicants, because we have heard from all of you tonight. Vice Mayor.
Yes, and to that point, that's right along the lines of what I wanted to say, is that, you know, it's always hard. It's always hard to choose, but I feel like in this particular case, it's, we've got really three qualified candidates, so only one can be chosen. So for the two that do not get chosen, please continue to apply and be engaged and to see if you can get on a different commission. I'd love to have you. Thanks.
We will proceed to the vote. And I'll take a show of hands for our applicants. The first is Brandon Lingle Adams. Brady Griffin. Brady Griffin is appointed.
Looks like we had consensus on something tonight. And again, like the Vice Mayor shared, please, please, if you did not get appointed tonight, apply again, especially for the two of you who shared you're new to Burbank. That's amazing to hear. We want you to be a part of our community. Talk to us, meet us, meet up with us for coffee, reach out. We'd love to talk, connect, and then see how we can get you serving on a board commission or get you more involved with some of our community projects going on. So please do reach out. Thank you for applying, and please apply again. And if I can say one more thing about that, I'll say, I served on the library board. I did not get appointed my first time. I did not get a single vote. The second time, I got appointed. So it sometimes takes a few times, and I think that's been the case for some folks on here. Councilor Rosati.
We have a lot of vacancies coming up, so...
Yes, thank you.
We're still open to the end of the month.
We're accepting applications for a majority of our boards and commissions until May 31st. So please take a look at our website. Please reach out to our city clerk's office.
May 30th.
May 30th.
5:00 PM.
5:00 PM. Important distinction, 5:00 PM is important. Please talk to our city clerk's office if you have any questions about the boards or commissions, and any questions about how to go about applying, getting in touch with us, or what the process entails. Please do reach out. Thank you. Alrighty. We will now move on to our next report to council. The third report to council this evening is an approval of the funding allocations for the 2025 Pilot Community Events and Programs Grant. I now welcome Ms. Kylene Pecor, Community Assistance Coordinator, to please present the report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Tagahashi, and members of the city council. Kylene Pecor, Community Assistance Coordinator for the City Manager's Office. I'm here tonight to present a report to approve funding recommendations and allocations for the 2025 Community Events and Program Grant. The purpose of this program is to provide monetary grants to eligible nonprofit organizations for events and/or program initiatives that foster community engagement and benefit the Burbank community at large. The application submission period for the pilot year of the grant program opened on March 10th. Staff held two application workshops to review the grant guidelines and application process, as well as answer questions. Following the application deadline of April 4th, a total of 33 applications were deemed complete and eligible to proceed through the review process. An internal review committee comprised of representatives from the community development, city manager's office, financial services, and library services department reviewed and rated the applications based on the following criteria: organization capacity, event-program feasibility, community need and impact, and budget financial management. Following the committee's review, a total of 17 applications were recommended for funding, totaling $45,000. In general, applications were not recommended for funding due to one or more of the following reasons. The proposed event or program did not appear feasible based on the information that was provided. The proposal was more conceptual and lacked detail. The proposed event or program's direct impact to the Burbank community was limited or uncertain, and/or the budget information provided was unrealistic or incomplete, making it difficult to determine exactly what the funds would be used for, lacked contingency plans, or the organization was already receiving significant city funding or resources. Following council's approval of funding recommendations for this year, organizations will have the opportunity to meet with staff via 20-minute feedback sessions to discuss their application and receive feedback. A summary table of the eligible grant applications received has been included in Attachment 1. With $50,000 allocated to the grant program for this fiscal year, the council may choose to allocate the remaining $5,000 to any eligible applications or roll over these funds to next year's program. In addition, as this is the pilot year of the grant program, its administration will be evaluated to determine if any adjustments are needed prior to its implementation in fiscal year 2526. This concludes my report. I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pecor. We will now go on to public comment. I have three comment cards this evening, which means everybody gets three minutes. I have three comment cards this evening, which means everybody gets three minutes, and we will start with Edward Parker, followed by Cheryl Weaver. Welcome, Edward. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Edward Parker. I'm the Director for Bridge and Community Resources. I'm requesting the contribution to support our longstanding program services that support individuals with developmental disabilities. Since 1963, our program has been appealing to the community, evolving through several name changes, and always been remaining committed to empowering individuals through compassionate and personal centered support. Our services include life skills training, workforce development, and community inclusion activities. We also assist participants in accessing augmenative, nervous, sorry, and alternative communication devices to ensure that they have the voice and can effectively communicate their needs proficiently. This funding will help us continue to provide these vital services to ensure individuals with developmental disabilities have the resources and opportunities they need to thrive. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you so much for your comment. My next speaker is Cheryl Weaver. Before we go on, though, I know I said I had three comment cards. Mr. Bergen, I believe you've already spoken on this item during general public comment. We have your materials here, so per council policy, you can only speak on an item once, either during the general public comment or during the agenda item itself. So thank you. Your comments were noted. Sorry, Ms. Weaver, go on.
That's quite all right. Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, Councilwoman Rosati, and Councilperson, Councilperson Konstantin Anthony. I'm Cheryl Weaver, a local resident, homeowner, realtor, and have been working with Burbank Pride for the last three years to successfully put on some really wonderful events. I am humbled and grateful for the support that the council has given us in the past. I want to have you consider supporting us in the future for our next event. It has been an absolute wonderful situation for me to see the support not only from the gay, lesbian, trans, bisexual, inquisitive plus community, but our allies have been so fantastic. And it has been such a wonderful event every year for birth families or chosen families that support the LGBTQI community. And many of you have been very, very, very wonderful at coming and speaking and talking and being vocal about your support. So thank you again. I hope you support our event again this year. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, I have no further public comment cards, so first I'll ask if staff has any response to the comment?
We don't.
Okay. Thank you. Now we can go to council questions, and then we can deliberate. Who has questions? You all look inquisitive, but I don't see anybody reaching for the microphone. Councilwoman Anthony.
I talked to staff a little bit about this previously, but just for the public's consideration, we allocated $50,000. Currently, on the 17 approved requests totaling $45,000. So we're $5,000 under. It's up to our discretion at this point if we want to adjust some of these numbers.
Good evening, Catherine Lebrado, Assistant to the City Manager in the City Manager's Office. Thank you for the question. Yes, it is up to council if you'd like to allocate the additional $5,000. Should council decide not to do that tonight, you could also decide to roll over the funds to the following years, as this is a pilot grant program. We had $50,000 this year and $50,000 next year, but you could roll over the $5,000 to next year and have $55,000 for next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Rosati?
I'm just going to make a comment, Madam Mayor. I wasn't part of this conversation and this initiative when it was moved forward. I have served personally on over 30 boards and commissions, nonprofits. I've raised a lot of money for nonprofits, and all of do amazing work in our community. I know this was something that you brought forward, and I understand why, because I know your heart and where it is, but I personally don't think it's right that we're taking taxpayer money and giving it away. So I won't be supporting the giveaway. I would rather see the money go across the board to, like, rate decreases for electric or something like that, but not to give taxpayer dollars away to nonprofits. I think our residents have the choice to do that themselves rather than having council take the money and do it for them. So again, I respect the position and the initiative, and I, like I said, I know where your heart is. It's for the good. It's just fundamentally something I don't believe in.
I have a response to that. That comes from a more fiscally sound place than heart, but I did ask for questions, so I'll let the Vice Mayor continue with questions, and we'll go into discussion after that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of questions. So for the folks who are not chosen tonight, we'd love to choose everybody, but unfortunately we cannot. Is there a way that they can learn more about how to come back maybe next year? Because this is a yearly, yearly funding, so could come back next year to get some support to maybe make it work next time?
Yes, absolutely. So we are going to be available for organizations to schedule 20-minute feedback sessions with us. They're more than welcome to come. We can go through their application and give them some high-level feedback in terms of where maybe their application struggled or could have been a little bit stronger. In addition, with this being a pilot program, we have some lessons learned and things that we'd like to tweak to make sure that the process is super effective for next year. So we'll be doing the same thing next year when we administer the grant and offering some community workshops. And I think based on some of the things that we saw this year, we'll be able to provide some really nice feedback to organizations, even new ones who maybe didn't apply this year. But they're going to be able to come to our workshops next year and get some really nice guidance in terms of how they can make their application strong.
Okay, great. And then my second question is, after tonight, after we approve the funding for the programs, what's the next step? And how can we ensure that we are up to date on these programs that are being offered in the community and the results and all that?
So after tonight, once council approves the allocations, any of the organizations who did receive funding or are going to receive an email from us, they'll get a packet that will have a grant agreement as well as some additional paperwork that needs to be filled out. The grant agreement specifies exactly what the requirements are, so organizations do have to report back within about 60 days from their event or program to provide a summary of what took place. And there will also be some guidance for them in terms of what they should be doing for council. And that could be either providing a public comment at a council meeting or sending an email directly to council to let them know how the funds were used and what happened with their program.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those are my questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And then the only question I have, some of my questions were answered, but for transparent sake, not names, but who did the committee consist of? What was this committee comprised of? Who reviewed the?
The review committee was an internal staff committee that was made up of staff members from the city manager's office, the library department, the community development department, as well as our finance department.
Thank you. I just think it's important for folks to know out there, you know, we had a breadth of different folks from our various city departments who are well aware of the needs, the community, and what we can provide and what's going to be actually feasible in the city. So thank you for that.
And Mayor, if I could, they had a tough job. They had $271,000 worth of requests to try to narrow it down to 50 or less.
Definitely. And that brings me to opening the conversation, because I think it's important, and I appreciate Councilwoman Rosati bringing up that point about why the funding. So I'll give you the why from last year, and then I'll go into the history of this. So my first year on council, we, during our budget process, we received funding requests from Burbank Historical Society, from Pride, from random places, and it was the Wild West. It was an ask of, can I have this much money? Can I have this much money? And there was absolutely no organized process on how to provide these funds. And this is not unusual for cities. This is not new. Constantly, cities across our nation are giving money to organizations, the community, to hold community events. And like staff mentioned, we do need parameters on these community events because they should be events that benefit the general public, they should be events that are accessible, and they should be events, of course, that are happening in the community and for the benefit of the broader community. But the reason I brought up having a grant process was because I felt like it was very discombobulated to ask people, you know, who you knew. Oh, I know this council member, so I'm going to ask, and the council member will tell me, oh, ask for this much money. Or we have one org asking for 50K and another org asking for $200 for something, which is very, very disorganized. So I felt if we had a generic grant process that followed a structure, had rules, and had a place where folks could apply in a fair manner, then we would have something to really offer, and we would receive applications like what we did, which were substantial. And on top of that, folks who didn't get a funding award would be able to have an explanation as to why they were not eligible versus, well, I don't think council likes me, or I didn't talk to the right people, or I'm not friends with the right people. And so I think this is a fair way, if you're going to hand out money, which, again, most communities, if not all communities in the United States, give out some of their general funds to community projects and investments. They have different projects, different investments, but we all do this in some way, shape, or form, and Burbank has been doing it long before any of us were on this dais. This is just now the first time we're doing it in an organized manner. And to say, the one thing I will say is, because it is something that gets me, when folks say, oh, we could be using this for something else. A lot of times, the funds that are in our general fund are not things that can go to something else. So our BWP funds are very different than our general funds. A lot of times, we get questions from folks saying, well, you guys should fund the schools more. We don't fund the schools directly. So I think for the general public to understand, looking at the budget, and I'm glad we're talking about the budget right now, too, in a later discussion, it's important to look at where these funds go and where these funds come from. And in our last year, when I proposed this, we had a nice surplus. We had a much bigger, not much bigger surplus, but we had a much more robust surplus than we do now because we didn't have a lot of the economic uncertainty that's flying around. And so it felt like a good year to hand $50,000, which was not a large amount of money at the time, and when we didn't have thousands more projects in the pipeline, we didn't have a lot of other thoughts in the pipeline. Hand those $50,000 to these community projects so that folks could really utilize them in the community because they had been asking for them anyways, and they had been asking for them at different points of the year. It's really hard for us to also come back in, you know, August and say, oh, somebody just asked for money. We don't know what to do. Now we can say, hey, no, go through our process. And the last thing I will say for all this, for clarification for anybody who's watching at home and all of us up here, right now, we're in a hard economic state. I agree with you. I agree that we have to be really thoughtful about how we spend our funds this year. This grant is not being funded by anything in our budget this year. These funds were allocated entirely last year, and so we are not using any of our general budget this year. They are already allocated. They are already set aside. So, and that's for this year and next year, because it was a two-year pilot program. So that's all I'll say.
And I understand that, and I understand that this decision was made in a different economic time. I'm coming into it, looking at it in a different perspective, so, and I get it, and I understand, again, why you wanted to do it, and it's just something fundamentally I just don't think that we should do, but that doesn't, again, that doesn't make it wrong.
May I ask a question, Madam Mayor? Just ask?
Yeah.
Okay. Is this the only way that we provide, that the city provides funding and support for
No, this is definitely not the only way that the city provides support to nonprofits. There are some other avenues. The city also has an arts grant that provides funding, kind of a very similar application process, as well as CDBG funding that comes from community development department. In addition, there are different events and things that take place in programs that departments support that may not be in a monetary sense, but maybe with staffing or some other support.
Yeah. And, you know, when we have community events, like galas and nonprofits put on these events, they put on their displays, you know, sponsored by the city, you know, many sponsors, and one of them is the city of Burbank. How do we support those kinds of events? How are we sponsors for those things?
Can you clarify which events you're kind of talking about?
Yeah, so, you know, go to the Boys and Girls Club Gala, we go to Hala Gala, we go to these other galas that says sponsored by City of Burbank. How are we sponsoring them?
I mean, we sponsor tables, we sponsor ads. There's a variety of ways you go and support those groups, so, yeah, we do all that.
Yep. So there are other avenues that we provide funding for nonprofits to support them in other ways, right? So this is, compared to that, like financially, is this a significant portion, financially, a significant portion of how we financially fund nonprofits in general?
I wouldn't say it's a significant portion, but it is a policy call as far as whether you want to use $100,000 over this year and next year to have this type of program. So it is a pilot. What I would recommend is if you do proceed, you know, in that second year, after the second year, we need to reevaluate and decide whether or not we're going to use it, because we're just using currently one-time funding that was appropriated from last year. And after next year, we would re-up, and you would determine whether or not you want to continue with the program.
Yeah, fair enough. So I asked those questions to point out that this is not, this funding source is not a out-of-nowhere, this is the first time we've ever done this, this is not like a large chunk of funding comparative or other funds. This is, it's, you know, significant for these organizations, but it's still in line with a probably infinite history of our city of supporting in many ways. And so I understand the principle of not supporting nonprofits in general. However, if that's the stance that one takes, then one would have to look at many different avenues that we support nonprofits and look at those, and, which would be much more significant impact to our budget. So just saying that. And I think, too, that this, this list here, to me, just personally, I don't see it just as supporting and funding these events. I see this as the city partnering with ways to support and engage our community. So these are events that these, our community wants these events to happen, and some of these events will not happen if we don't partner with them. And I think, but this, one of the reasons why we talked about it when we talked about the council meeting was not just to make it more fair, so everybody's access to this kind of one-off funding was fairly distributed, but also we were talking about how it's just hard to produce an event in a city. There's just a lot of costs involved. And one of the ways that we can support our community having these events is to give a little financial support. There's other ways, too, but that's one way. So for me, I feel like even if one were to say that there's other ways to use this money, I think the benefit to the community for having these is well worth the money. It's well beyond $50,000 worth or $45,000 worth to see all of these things happen in our community that otherwise may not happen. So I understand your position, Councilmember Rosati, and I hear what you're saying. At the same time, I would also like to just reiterate that this is more than just doling out money. This is building a community. So I, in general, I support these kinds of endeavors as I support the other ways that we support nonprofits, and I love that we partner with our nonprofits, and, because nonprofits make our community what it is. So I just wanted to add that two cents to there.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Takahashi. And the only thing I would add to that, as I was thinking right now, we have a list of council goals, and we talk a lot about being in line with our council goals. One of our major goals on there is quality of life. This falls directly in line with quality of life, because, again, it is the things, the little bits. the little bit that we can do for our community to support events in our community. And ironically enough, one of the reasons I proposed this at the beginning, although it didn't work out for them to apply this year, was Burbank Con Parade.
Yeah.
Stay tuned. Councilmember Anthony?
Two things. One, I actually respect your position on this, Councilmember Rosati. If we lived in a truly equitable society, we wouldn't have to sit here and pick and choose who's needing X amount of dollars. So I actually, I actually respect your position on this. I would like to talk just a little bit about number four, the Bridging Community Resources Program. They've been around for a very long time. There's actually some nonprofits here that got more money who have been around a lot less time. They did this one-time event, the Let Them Have Their Voices Project, where they got these tablets and they gave them to kids who couldn't speak. BCR typically doesn't come to us often for money. When they do, we tend to support them. I know the last time they went to CDBG, they got like $12,000. But they've, just a little bit about their program, they went through a big rebranding, they went through a big changeover in their leadership, they had a name change, all of this. And I think they're just trying to get back on their feet. This one-time event kind of fell in their lap. If it's okay, I'd like to talk a little bit about taking that extra $5,000 that we have, that buffer, and we don't have to spend it, but I'd like to give a portion, or maybe all of it, to at least BCR because they have done such great work in the community, and this one-time project sort of just happened, and it was a chance for them to partner with another nonprofit to get these devices. And so for me, if it's all right, I'd like to talk a little bit about that and offer that up for discussion if we could allocate the last $5,000.
Just briefly a question, Councilmember Anthony, and I think this is a valuable conversation, just curious, other than on principle, what is the reasoning behind giving them more?
So obviously, it's personal to me. I watched them give out the, they're called Talkers during April, during the Autism Acceptance Month. It's twofold. I think it's them trying to get their programming back up to what it was from decades before, and I think there's an opportunity here to sort of, not reward, but sort of support that movement. And second, it is just a one-time thing. I see a lot of these on here, they're recurring, and they'll be back next year. And so for us to just say, okay, you did this one thing, the city does want to support you, I guess it's not just on principle, I think it's more about this specific nonprofit has, I felt, and this is just personal to me, that they've had a lot of stumbling blocks over the last recent years, and they're trying to get their footing, and they're doing all the right things, and they're doing all the right moves. It's just not, I guess, working out as well as I think it should. And so for me, when I look at the work that they're doing, when I talk to their board members, when I looked at their application, they've got all their ducks in the row, they're doing all the right stuff, and I think we have an opportunity to support them, just this one time.
Okay, I'll weigh in. The first thing I want to say is, I wanted to be careful not to mess with this too much because I do really take the recommendations of the committee seriously. They had good criteria to base things on, and then they went through the applications, and I went through each one of them with them asking why this yes, why this no directly. So I want to be mindful of that for starters. If we have the discussion, I also want to be mindful of how much, to the point of we want to be fiscally responsible. Those extra $5,000 may serve us next year when we have the, everybody who was not recommended, who sits down for those 20 minutes and then turns in a much more robust application next year, I'm sure we're going to want to be able to fund them, and it's going to be a much more difficult discussion for that committee to have. So I want to be mindful of that. But I think my question would be to staff right now, you can just very briefly tell us kind of the reasoning from the committee for that dollar amount in particular.
The specific dollar amount for the BCR organization? So I'll start by saying that with the $270,000 that the asks were, and $50,000 in general, it was difficult to provide any organization who asked for funding 100% of their asks. So I don't think we had anyone on here who received 100% of their ask. The committee went event by event and program by program to try to see if it was something that was feasible, how the funds could be applied in a way that might be meaningful for the organization. And it really came down to having very little funds to give out and a lot of asks potentially. So if the committee had decided to give more here, it would have been less for another organization. And sometimes there were specific items, the committee was very concerned about wanting to make sure that it was very clear where the funding was going. So each other application that received money, it was very specific so that the committee was making sure that we are very responsible with city funds, with taxpayer dollars that are going to nonprofit organizations. So really, the amount that they received was part of a whole big puzzle of making sure that each organization was receiving money that was meaningful, could have an impact, and it was very clear for the committee to see where the funds were being used.
Thank you. Any other questions or staff or thoughts?
Briefly, you know, as we're talking about this, I've been kind of thinking about your request, Councilmember Anthony, and I think we need to be careful, I think this kind of falls upon the mayor's point, we need to be careful not to advocate for our favorite, or, I mean, if I had to pick a favorite, I would pick them all, it would be hard, right? But clearly, there are organizations that I have volunteered for, that I have a closer tie to, and I think part of having this process is to kind of strip away any personal kind of bias or preference that the council members might have, to allow for a fair and equitable, equal process. Not to say that our affiliations and our involvement aren't important and that we shouldn't advocate, but more like the intent, I think, was to keep it fair and to remove any particular insinuation that if a organization was close to a council member, they could get more money. So I think that that, for me personally, I'd like to leave it to the committee's recommendation because they went through a process that did not include any of that information.
And I think that's a great point, Vice Mayor, and I want to add to that. It's, you know, I think it's no secret that all of us on this dais have some tie to at least one of these organizations. So it feels, again, in the sake of fairness and transparency, there are things, I'm glad I got funded, there are things I'm sad didn't get funded, but that's why I asked the committee's recommendation and wanted to get their exact reasoning, and it's why I also think it's good to have this community process because otherwise, maybe we are funding with our, you know, our biases versus their specific recommendation. So I think it would behoove us to perhaps save those $5,000, and then I would encourage BCR to talk to staff, use those 20 minutes, and see perhaps why they received the funding they didn't. And I didn't mean to put you all on the spot, I don't want to, you know, air out their application in front of everybody for the public, but it would be helpful for them to know as they apply in the future what could guarantee maybe more funds, or what is a realistic ask of the committee.
Okay. That's fair.
But I think it's a valid conversation, and I appreciate you asking. All right. Any other thoughts, comments, questions, concerns?
I can move to approve the funds as given, the $45,000?
I'll second. Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosati?
No.
Vice Mayor Tagahashi?
Very yes.
And Mayor Perez?
Yes. Thank you so much to the staff who worked very hard on this. I really appreciate both of you being very diligent about this. I appreciate you working with the committee to put this together and for being very responsible with our tax dollars so that they go to programs that need them and that will benefit our community. Thank you.
And Mayor, if I could add, you will be receiving updates, either via written form or verbal updates from the different groups that receive.
Oh, and believe me, we look forward to those project updates. Thank you, and congratulations to all the awardees in the room. If you're not awarded this time, apply again, and please, I encourage you to talk to staff. Thank you.
All righty. The final report to council is a continuation of the review of the proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. It is budget day two, everyone. I welcome Ms. Jennifer Becker, Financial Services Director, back to the podium to continue day two of your Super Bowl.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Jennifer Becker, Financial Services Director. Two weeks ago, we presented to you our entire operating budget for all of our city's funds. So what we have left to discuss tonight is our capital improvement program budget, and then to circle back at the end of that with the discussion papers. So right now, I'll go ahead and introduce Mr. Ken Berkman, our Public Works Director, to take us through our capital improvement program presentation, and then we'll come back and do some final decision-making and wrap up at the end. Thank you.
All right. Honorable Mayor, council members, third time's a charm. Pleasure to be before you again. So it's great to be in front of you to present to you and the public the next fiscal year's proposed CIP program. I'm also pleased to start this year by conveying the complete support and excitement for the program, as well as appreciation for all staff's efforts from the Infrastructure Oversight Board and the Chair, Linda Besson. We had another round of productive and engaging meetings in February and March as we developed this CIP program, and we are proud to present it to you tonight. I've always titled this presentation "Commitment to Infrastructure" because that is exactly what the City Council and the residents did with the creation and passage of Measure P. It was a very wise decision, made much more evident given the impacts of an unanticipated pandemic that occurred shortly thereafter. There are two relevant guiding policies for Measure P funds. We dedicate no less than 50% of Measure P revenue to infrastructure repairs, maintenance, and improvements, and we also dedicate a baseline general fund annual commitment of 4.7 million. I'd like to show our rolling five-year history of the funding, specifically the funding amounts recommended for the upcoming fiscal year to establish new projects or provide additional funding to ongoing or multi-year projects. You see, we have steadily grown the program funding, coming out of the pandemic, to a high fiscal year contribution of $37 million in '23-'24, and have remained at a steady level since then. For '25-'26, we have about $32 million of funding recommendations for our program, of which 14 million is from Measure P. So starting here with our new proposed projects, what we're seeing is our must-do annual projects to properly maintain the city's most critical infrastructure used by all residents, businesses, and visitors, our streets, our sidewalks, and our buildings. We continue to make excellent fiscally responsible progress on our citywide pavement condition to the point where we're actually skipping a year of our annual arterial paving rehabilitation project to allow the typical $1.2 million of Measure P funds to go towards other needed projects. I'll have more on our citywide pavement condition later. Two projects to highlight here are the Palm Avenue-Paseo upgrades and the Olive Recreation Center and Theater Building replacement projects. The Palm-Paseo project will improve this valued, high-trafficed outdoor area with new landscaping, art, and furniture to beautify the space and add amenities to be enjoyed by all. With program approval, design will commence in the summer, and the goal of the project completion is for end of 2026. There is an additional $60,000 of estimated maintenance that will be added to our citywide landscape maintenance contractor scope of work, for which staff is also talking to the downtown P bid for potential funding support. The Olive Recreation Center and Theater Building replacement project, you know, from the IZA Master Plan that was completed back in '21-'22, topographic survey and 3D renderings were brought before the council in December, and this is our first project from the Master Plan, a new recreation center, a new performing arts center, and also outdoor restrooms. With program approval, our architect will continue the design and environmental clearances, and a consultant project manager will be selected to assist staff with project delivery. Design is slated for spring completion '27, and with funding secured or approved, '27-'28 construction would commence with the goal completion date of spring 2030. Second one down, the Downtown Burbank Mobility Network Improvement Project is an effort to further implement the Complete Our Streets Plan and upcoming Safer Streets Burbank Plan to install quick-build-protected-or-buffered bike lanes and pedestrian safety enhancements in and around downtown, including Third Street, Angelino, Orange Grove, and Providencia. This is a SCAG-funded project. Design will commence this summer, and staff is looking to have the improvements in place by fall of '26. Another Complete Our Streets effort is the missing, the new missing sidewalk program. Residents have been asking for sidewalks in areas that don't have them from time to time, and this project seeks to design and construct them in a prioritized manner, such as locations adjacent to schools and parks and libraries, senior centers, and transit stops. Sidewalks would be designed and constructed as part of our annual sidewalk rehabilitation project and are expected to be funded with Measure M dollars. We also see several parks and recreations, annual projects to improve our ballfield lighting, park restrooms, as well as provide new shade structures. Looking at our ongoing multi-year portion of the program, we see seven of our facility improvement projects, and I'd like to highlight two of our major ones, the New Library and the Starlight Bowl. So a longtime existing project that was really picked up momentum with this council's support and direction back in November. The new Burbank Library and Civic Center project will replace the existing Central Library on Glen Oaks with a new 65,000-square-foot library, 50,000 square feet of functional open space, and 20,000 square feet of new city office space to replace Administrative Services Building. This will also support the Downtown Transit Oriented Development Specific Plans' vision to enhance the Civic Center block, which will allow potential housing on opportunity sites surrounding it, as you see on the screen. The $3.1 million for the coming fiscal year, which is the same amount we noted we would request at this time last year, will be used in addition to prior year's funding to bring a full-service consultant onboard to help us deliver this generational project via a progressive design-build-delivery method from start to finish. There's definitely a tremendous amount of interest in this project from the industry, and that's not just me saying it, architects, engineers, and contractors have told us that directly over the past year. And really, to that end, you can see, we had a, for our project manager consultant procurement, we had a pre-proposal meeting back on March 10th, attended by 50 firms. We had 14 proposals received on April 8th, and right now, we have our five top-ranked firms slated to be interviewed in early June and look to bring that council agreement award to you in July. Hope everything's okay.
Ken, I think someone likes your voice.
All right. Well, good. Somebody's paying attention, I appreciate it. So as the title says, a complete transformation of our amazing community amenity is coming with our Starlight Bowl Amphitheater Project. This year's funding would go towards completing the entitlements and environmental clearances, continuing preliminary design, and procuring a consultant project manager to assist staff with delivering this complex effort. This year's funding would go towards completing the entitlements and environmental clearances, continuing preliminary design, and procuring a consultant project manager to assist staff with delivering this this complex effort, completely replacing our performance areas, our seating, our restroom, our concessions. Staff, of course, very closely looking towards how we're going to deal with parking with ride-share and buses pick-up, drop, pick-up, and drop-off zones. So in full swing. Excited about that one. The I-5 arterial improvements also continues with this year's funding going towards reconstructing traffic signals at Victory and Elmwood and three intersections of Magnolia with Reese and Mariposa and Screenland. Construction is expected to start in the fall and be completed by the end of the fiscal year. Of interest downtown, San Fernando Boulevard reconfiguration. We know our Phase One pilot installation was completed in March twenty-four. The twelve-month update and formal recommendation on future of the project, potentially for making the temporary installation permanent with other improvements will be provided to council this coming summer. Several interesting projects on this slide. The former Boys and Girls Club at twenty-two forty-four Buena Vista will become a new corporate office for Home Again L.A. and also add four tiny homes. Construction is estimated to commence this fall and be completed in time for Home Again L.A. to move in August first, twenty-six. About two-point-eight million of the twenty-five, twenty-six funding you see is from a Home American Rescue Plan grant, which is still secured and available for use. Continuing on at the bottom, we're in the design phase for the new Homeless Solutions Center at the Old Piano Store property on Front Street. As you know from the consent report, the twenty-five, twenty-six funding is needed to complete the environmental documentation process and design with a redevelopment agency loan repayment reserve funding and Measure H, and Measure H Homeless Solutions Grant. The McCambridge Pool replacement will provide, will provide a new lap swim pool, activity pool, water slides, play features, a pool deck, new pool deck, locker room renovations, and staff offices. A consultant project manager will be hired to assist this delivery with design-build, and our current schedule estimate has us completing this project in mid-2028. So moving on into a financial overview, this pie chart delivers, demonstrates the diversity of the improvements within our thirty-two-million-dollar program for the coming year. About five million going towards our streets and sidewalks, thirteen-and-a-half or so into our facilities, over nine million for Parks and Recreation, and almost four million for traffic and transportation. Staff always seeks to acquire and apply grant funding, then use restricted dollars like Measures A or R or M, for example, and finally, put Measure P to work before considering any other general fund usage. As you see, this coming fiscal year's program is funded with forty percent of restricted dollars, a little less than half of unrestricted dollars. It also includes a significant amount of sixteen percent being funded by grants. There are ten restricted funds, bringing improvements to the city from the Burbank Athletic Federation, sixty-five thousand dollars that will help fund the Gross Park Ballfields One and Two Lighting Modernization Project, to the three-point-three million dollars of road maintenance and rehabilitation account dollars that always provide a significant contribution to our citywide roadway rehabilitation program. So it's important to understand that Fund Five Thirty-four helps us not only design and construct new infrastructure and upgrade that which exists, but also properly operate and maintain it. The six-point-five-million-dollar maintenance budget helps us take care of a wide variety of assets like our buildings' roofing, flooring, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and HVAC systems, streets and sidewalks, landscape and irrigation, and many others. It's like our proclamation that you read, Madam Mayor. In total, staffs are recommending approximately twenty million dollars of Measure P investment into our infrastructure this coming fiscal year. Finance Director Becker provides this annual slide, which shows how after coming out of the, after the coming fiscal year coming slightly lower revenue projection, our future revenue projections are anticipated to increase. Fund Five Thirty-four is comprised of the general fund infrastructure commitment that we talked about, the four-point-seven million dollars in green with Measure P in blue respectively, as well as the interest income from revenues at the top in yellow. The darker green and blue shades to the left are reflecting actual expenditures and revenues for twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four. So this year, I wanted to include a slide that can show council and the public what our total active program looks like. The past few years, we've been consistently adding about thirty-five million dollars and twenty new projects to the program. And our number of, our number of active projects for those years has been around sixty-seven to seventy-seven, and now seventy-three for this year. The total value has been about ninety million to one-hundred-and-eight million, and now, for this coming year, a total of a hundred million. So we can see by these numbers, there are tens of millions of dollars of projects being completed every fiscal year, and I believe it also shows that the departments are in a very consistent and productive delivery mode, and behind the scenes, we continue to seek improvements in our processes, procedures, and training to get even better. So now on to the fun. Let's take a look at some of this year's great work. The twenty-two, twenty-three Annual Sidewalk Rehabilitation Project was completed back in November. This gets ninety new ADA ramps, forty thousand square feet of sidewalks, fifteen thousand square feet of driveways, and four thousand linear feet of curb and gutter. We finished Phase Three of the Police Fire Department Headquarters Flooring. That is completely redone. It looks great. It's gonna last a long time. The Glen Oaks Boulevard and First Street Signal Project was a major project that was completed a few months ago, provided many roadway user and infrastructure improvements, including new traffic signal poles, LED lighting to enhance pedestrian visibility, left-turn hours, traffic cameras, high-visibility crosswalks, and setback stop lines, and also twenty-seven ADA ramps. The City Attorney's Office Space was reconfigured with the addition of two new offices, four new cubicle workstations, and replacement of three that were outdated and needed upgrades. And storage areas were repurposed, lobby was modernized to enhance safety and security, and a new door was installed to provide more direct access for staff to the storage vault. Beautiful pictures of our new McCambridge Recreation Center gym mural. Shade structures were added to three picnic areas at McCambridge Park. And Parks and Recreation consistently delivers great playground replacement projects for the kids of Burbank, and this year is no different. I always love these slides. To start, McCambridge received a vibrant, one-of-a-kind, under-the-sea-themed upgrade to its play area. This project also involved updating the surrounding landscape with native drought-tolerant plants to complement the theme. This playground is now named the Centennial Playground to celebrate a hundred years of Parks and Recreation. This is Maple Streets Replacement Project. And Brace Canyon Parks Project. This was inspired by mountainside scenery, and all three projects incorporated a variety of inclusive play features to the benefit of all visitors. Some of our smaller, yet still critical, infrastructure improvements are continuously delivered throughout the year, such as this project at Buena Vista Park. We removed an old, non-conforming electrical box that was not waterproof on a pole, as you see to the left, and converted that to a modern in-ground installation. So now, we know the lights at Buena Vista Park have a compliant, reliable power source. An old, unreliable HVAC unit was replaced at BV Library. And here, UPS is an uninterrupted power source, which are very important components of the power supply system at many of our buildings. Here, we see one that was replaced with a higher, a modern, higher-capacity UPS for the City Hall Media Room. I'm not an electrical IT expert, and I'm sure all those wires on the left mean something and have a purpose, but I just wanted to show how neat and tidy it looks now. So that's a big deal, really. Some projects under construction. The Dick Clark Dog Park is a top priority for Parks and Recreation. Earlier this month, LADWP notified the city that they are in support of Burbank's preferred design option. Our design consultant is revising the plans for resubmital and hopefully, final LADWP approval. Staff is concurrently working internally to ensure the project is ready to advertise for construction bids once approval is obtained, and staff were looking for starting construction by the end of the fiscal year, by the end of the calendar year. The Starfighter Jet Rehabilitation Spirit of Burbank was donated by the U.S. Air Force and installed in eighty-four as a tribute to IZA, a veteran employee of the department, and also honored the Lockheed Aircraft Company, who produced the fighter jet we all know so well. Its restoration is well underway. This arterial roadway project provided improvements to Victory Boulevard. It's gonna be completed in, by June. Victory Boulevard Verdugo to the Southern City Limit Alameda Avenue from Lima to California, and First Street from Olive to Verdugo. Twenty-eight new ADA ramps, twelve thousand square feet of sidewalks, and about one center-line mile of repaving. Our next annual residential pavement rehab project is currently out the bid and expected to commence in the fall. It'll provide over twelve center-line miles of new rubberized asphalt roadway surface, new striping and pavement markings, high-visibility crosswalks, and continuing our efforts to rehabilitate our alleys, another ten alley segments. And our complete overhaul and restoration of the City Hall Fountain to provide operations with recycled water, as mandated by the state, is under construction, with construction expected to be completed in July. There'll be new hydraulics, new mechanical, electrical lighting systems, restoration of the fountain waterproofing system, repair and restoration of damaged tile, plaster, and other decorative historic elements. All right, so our last couple of slides, Commitment to Our Streets and Our Sidewalks. We're especially proud of the progress we have made with our Streets and Sidewalks Rehabilitation Program. The twenty-three, twenty-four residential project that is advertising for bids is shown in blue, twenty-twenty-five at the top, and our next annual project sections, which will be a combination of this current fiscal year's and next year's budget and project areas, as you see in the green and orange, twenty-twenty-six. They're the last annual effort of our current cycle. So starting in twenty-twenty-seven, we will have a new five-year program to implement. So my surprise is a little spoiled because you guys have hard copies, but this last slide, Our Commitment to Our Streets. When Measure P was first introduced in twenty-eighteen, a pavement condition index of seventy or higher, which is defined as good in our industry, was a lofty aspiration because our citywide PCI, including the alleys, was fifty-seven. When I got here in twenty-twenty, knowing the potential impact Measure P funding could have, we set a PCI of seventy-three as the sweet spot for Burbank to maintain our roadway system in an optimal balance of maintenance with rehabilitation projects by twenty-thirty. In my twenty-twenty-three presentation, I noted we made great strides, and we're at a PCI of sixty-eight without the alleys and sixty-five citywide with them. Frame of reference, basically, sixty-five is like the statewide average of all cities and jurisdictions' pavement. So now, it is with great pride and appreciation to the street maintenance and the engineering teams, many of whom are here, that I let council and the public know that our new current citywide PCI for all of our roadways and our alleys is seventy-three. Good job, guys. So we did it, and that's five years early. So we are ecstatic to let you guys know that. And with that, I think I'll bring it back to Jennifer, and we'll be here to answer questions later.
Thank you, Mr. Berkman, and rarely, I think, very rarely in government do you hear, "That is five years ahead of schedule."
Yeah, so.
So thank you for that. Thank you for the presentation, and yes, my baby very much enjoyed that. I don't know. Hopefully, I have a future engineer or something.
Very good. Good luck.
Thank you. Welcome back, Ms. Becker.
Thank you. We are almost at the end, so just gonna move on. We have a few more slides tonight. We're gonna wrap up our discussion paper discussion. And so, but before we started with that, I just wanted to set the stage a little bit, to take a look at our five-year forecast chart. This is what we presented two weeks ago. It's part of our general fund budget presentation. And like I mentioned previously, we're projecting a million-dollar recurring balance, which will turn into a projected deficit in fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, and throughout the remaining years of our forecast. It's important to keep in mind that these are razor-thin margins we're looking at in comparison to the overall budget. But fortunately, as shown at the bottom of that chart, our general fund cash position remains very strong throughout the next five years, with a projected twenty-five, twenty-six-year-end balance of twenty-one million dollars, dropping to just under eighteen million after five years. So this gives us a nice financial cushion to insulate us from any unforeseen events that could impact our forecast over the next few years. So here's a list of the eleven discussion papers and follow-up items provided to the City Council in advance of tonight's meeting, along with their applicable recurring or one-time budget impact. I won't list them all right now because we're gonna come back at the end and have a discussion of those, but I just wanted to put those up there on the screen. I should note that two of the rental-related items won't be discussed tonight, as we await that ruling from the FPPC on potential conflicts of interest. And of course, we have staff available from each department here to answer questions about any of these items. But really quick, I wanted to point out that should the council elect to approve all of the items that have a fiscal impact on our discussion paper list tonight, the general fund budget balance for twenty-five, twenty-six would drop from a million in recurring to five-hundred-thousand in recurring, and our projected year-end cash would go from twenty-one million to eighteen-point-six million. We would still adopt a budget that is balanced for the coming year, though we would be facing a deficit of nearly three million dollars in year two, about a year from now, and continuing into the future. So fortunately, we still have that healthy amount of cash to help us implement solutions to address those future recurring deficits. And so, given that context, we'll move on to our next slide here, and I just wanted to conclude our budget presentations. We've covered a lot of grounds. Our plan, once we get direction from you on the discussion papers this evening, is to package up all of that into our budget package that would we bring back at the June third public hearing and adoption of the citywide budget. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or take feedback at this time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Becker. We're gonna now go to public comment. We have actually three public comment cards, and then we'll go on to our council questions on both of those presentations. So having three comment cards, everybody gets three minutes. I'm gonna start with Evie Golon, followed by Alma Morales, and please correct me if I misstate your name. Oh, sorry.
I believe.
Evie Golon, I see this now, wanted to just opine not to speak and is in favor of low-cost senior housing. Thank you. And then I'll go to Alma Morales, followed by Cheryl Lever.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alma Morales. I am working with SEIU Local Twenty-Fifteen. That is a union labor for in-home support service. They live around, more than four thousand members live in this area. They, sometimes, they take care to somebody who, for life, they are sick, and they work in twenty-four hours, seven days a week. And right now, in the L.A. County, they have only eighteen-fifty dollars the hours. Sometimes, they receive only the pay for three or four hours every day. But that, the reason that we are here is because we want to talk with you about this eighteen, number nineteen, and how you support that and support all the in-home support service, but all the professional in the healthcare to increase the minimum wage. I know it's the twenty to, to twenty plus five dollars more for the healthcare providers or professional health cares. That is the reason that we are, we are here, and we're waiting until this moment because we want your vote for. your vote for and to support this part of the budget. How I mentioned, sometimes the providers needs to take a decision, pay my rent, pay my bills, or eat. That is the reason that we need to increase that five dollars this more for them is very, very good for them. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next comment is Cheryl Weaver. Hi, Cheryl. You have three minutes.
Back again. Thank you all for staying so late, and I have to tell you, I appreciate all your hard work. While this was a fantastic budget, and there is so much in there, and I was absolutely thrilled to see so many items, there is one item that you've decided not to talk about that I really have to, I have to address, and that is the rental registry. This council has been very, very one-sided in supporting tenants and not fairly supporting also our housing providers. You voted for non-harassment rights for tenants. You've voted in favor of additional support for relocation costs for tenants. You've put out these multiple clinics, and while, yes, you say the landlords or housing providers can go to them, literally it says tenant-right clinics. It doesn't say, "Come speak to us about your issues, about your legal problems, get more information from us." It says tenants-rights clinics. What you have put out there is a proposal for housing providers to pay for a new rental registry, which just is more government-funding regulations that go to the housing providers. Where's the fairness in this? More oversight from the government? I really don't think that that's a good spending of our money. There is no crisis. There's no rampant misuse. In five years, there were two-hundred-and-forty-seven cases brought to the Burbank landlord tenant commission. There's twenty-six thousand units, and we had, in five years, two-hundred-and-forty-seven cases? I don't see the rampant problem of abuse by housing providers against tenants. Spending this amount of money for a non-issue, in my opinion, is ridiculous and ludicrous. And it really hurts mom-and-pop landlords much more than the corporate ones. And mom-and-pops are just supplementing their retirement. They're just trying to get by. They don't raise the rents tremendously. They raise it what they need. Treating our housing providers as part of our community, I think, is very important. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Alrighty. Now, we will go on to council questions of either the presentations from, well, let's do this in order. Does anybody have questions about the presentation from Mr. Berkman, the capital improvement projects presentation? Let's start there. Councilmember Anthony and Vice Mayor Takahashi.
What's, are we, what's the number you're shooting for, for the next five years? What kind of speculation have we got on that?
Yeah, the pavement condition index through the mayor. Thanks for the question. We just finished, the reason we have that seventy-three, which is actually technically We have that. We just finished our pavement management master plan with our consultant. So, this coming year is the last year of the five-year plan we were executing. Now, staff, we're going through, what are we going to do for the next five years after this current fiscal year that hopefully is approved tonight, that we do this coming fiscal year? And then we're going to lay out that next five-year plan. I really think sticking to seventy-three is the right way to go. It's the right balance of, first of all, it's very visually noticeable for the public. We've got plenty of compliments about that. But the right amount of, there's going to be more of a maintenance effort, which, for example, you might have heard of maybe like slurry ceiling. There are less costly methods to preserve pavement rather than when we do that typical two-inch remove and replace it. So, we're looking to get into more maintenance and more value. And with that, like, for example, the arterial project at one-point-two-million, if we do lighter, more maintenance mode, we can bring that monies to other projects, and we have plenty of other projects to do. So, seeing what we could do for keeping that around seventy, seventy-three, and also bringing up our alley PCIs, we want to keep hitting those alleys because those are important as well.
And so, I guess my follow-up is, when we're talking about just the physics of maintaining a road versus the cost, do you see a diminishing return when you try to get that higher number well above what it would cost to even maintain it? So, like, shooting for eighty or eighty-five, is that just so far expensive?
Astute question. It's exactly the reason why that seventy-three, your slow seventies, is kind of the right amount, because it is diminishing. You can get beautiful, brand-new pavement all the time at a score of like ninety-five to one-hundred, but that's not worth the investment, you know? So, that's kind of what we're trying to say is, what's the right balance to keep us? And we all know deferred maintenance costs never go down, and you want to hit those in a proper manner because they get exponentially more expensive the longer you let deferred maintenance go. So, we're trying to find that spot, and overall, the low seventies is a good place to be.
And then the last thing I would ask is, Measure P is based on a sales tax return, so that number, the money we get back, that'll change regardless of, not regardless, but based on inflation as people spend more or any costs, tariffs, or supply chain issues. If those costs are borne out in the purchase price of items in the city, we still get the same percentage return. So, I guess what I'm saying is, five years down the line, ten years down the line, we're pretty good at projecting those numbers because we kind of know that there's a baseline of what Measure P is going to bring us back. Is that correct?
I'm happy to take that one. Measure P is a sales-based revenue, so we do our best to forecast. We bring in consultants to help us forecast with that. But no, there's not a hundred percent guarantee that it's going to go up every year, especially with, you know, pending issues with the economy. The one thing we never do is appropriate a hundred percent of what we think we're going to bring in in revenues, particularly for the infrastructure fund. One, because we want that cushion in case our revenues come in a little bit lower. And two, because it's always possible that costs come in higher, right? And so, if we have a project that we go out to bid and needs extra funds, we don't want to spend a hundred percent of our capacity and then realize we've sort of hit that wall with our projects. So, we're pretty careful and we're pretty conservative with the way we project those dollars. And of course, Mr. Berkman and his team do a good job of managing those projects, too. So, we will typically see savings in some of our projects where we don't use contingency funds. So, that helps us sort of cover overages in some areas. But so far, the revenues have been relatively strong and relatively consistent for Measure P, and, you know, I'd like to keep our fingers crossed that we will. Because it's destination-based, it's not necessarily, when it comes to online spending, and I don't want to go too far into the weeds on this, but it's based more on economic activity within Burbank because when you order online, it's based on the address that the items are delivered to, as opposed to going to the county pool when it comes to this revenue. So, it's actually been a little bit more stable than what we've seen in our traditional Bradley Burn sales tax. So, that's good news for Burbank. So, we ask our residents to keep shopping as much as they can.
Thank you.
For our, so do it for our streets.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. Vice Mayor Takahashi.
Great, thank you. Seventy-three. Oh, my gosh. The amount of conversations we had on the IOB about the PCI and learning about it and everything, just wonderful news. And we can also tell we're at seventy-three at the very, very few, if any, emails we get about the quality of the streets, right, and the alleys. So, that is a visible impact, not only on the driving, but also on the experience of the community, because they're just not letting us know. They're happy, so they're not saying anything, right? So, great job. So, for the rotation of the streets, wrapping it up in twenty-twenty-six, there's four zones that are being done in one year. Am I reading that map right? In twenty-twenty-six, you've got four different pavement zones that are all going to be done at the same time? Seems like a lot.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Takahashi. We do have four zones. We're combining this current fiscal year's budget with this coming fiscal year's budget to do all those sections, and that would complete our, I'm trying to get to that page.
It's the last, it's thirty-nine.
Yeah, so, when combining these, we're addressing the poor and very poor streets and some alleys, if you could, in the exhibit, Zones Three and Four and Thirteen and Fourteen, and also picking up streets in Zones One, Two, Nineteen, and Twenty. So, we have twenty zones in the city. So, we looked at where we are and the amount of work that has to be done, and we said, this is a project that we could gain the economy of scale to combine these four, because a couple of the sections are in relatively pretty good shape, so there's not that many streets. So, we could bring those two sections into this major, other two sections, and that's what we plan on doing.
Okay. And these are residential streets and alleys, not the main?
Correct.
Not the main, what do you call it?
It's our annual residential rehabilitation project, right?
Okay. And then the most important question is, the purple area, when will that happen next?
The one that was done, the one that was done in twenty-twenty-three? So, in general, the way to answer that is overlays, the removal and replacement of those two inches, they're typically looking at a minimum of ten years of service life. With good maintenance, you know, fifteen. So, ten to fifteen years, we're looking at that cycle. So, in this next five-year cycle that we were talking about, that's how we're going to plan all of our zones for the next five years, make sure we're hitting them in a proper, efficient manner.
Okay, great.
So, I'll let you know.
Okay, yeah. Actually, my street's pretty good, so I was just saying that kind of facetiously, but all right. And then kind of a general question, or a general comment question, I guess. So, overall, the CIP is, the projects on here are what the community wants. I mean, the Starlight Bowl and the Little Theater and, you know, the community wants. I also noticed, and I appreciate, that after the CIP list proposal, you have all the, you've included all of the projects' explanation and long-term funding for each individual project. So, I really appreciate that, to be able to look for folks in the community and for us to look if we want more detail about each project, that we can go into that each page. And then I also noticed that all of them also have little boxes as O and M, operations and maintenance.
Right.
And only a few are filled out. So, I'm just curious how operations and maintenance might have come into play when you were looking at the different, you know, priorities.
Right. So, as Ms. Becker was saying, the planners, the engineers, folks in Parks and Rec, we always look at, when we scope out a project, especially new ones, what is the operation and maintenance impact? What could it be? Maybe it could be less, there could be a benefit to it also. So, it's really something that we can detail at a certain point, kind of in the late planning stage. So, some of them are ready to say, we know, for example, that the San Fernando Boulevard reconfiguration, if we do this, that's a lot of new stuff that is no longer a pilot temporary installation. Now, we have it permanently, and we're also looking at other amenities or things to add to the more permanent installation. So, we try and estimate, they are ballparking, but we won't present them to council and the public unless we really know. So, sometimes it's a point in time where it takes a long time to really define the project and say, this is going to have a maintenance impact, that we're going to have to come to you in the entire budget and say, we need more money for this. But a lot of our projects for capital improvement programs are either net zero or positive. So, if you think of our paving, it's reducing, it's a capital expense, but it's reducing our maintenance for that period of time. So, there are a lot of projects like that. Even the playground equipment, for example, we know we have to maintain that, just for safety purposes, brand-new installations now. Well, now, we pay attention to them, but we don't have to have our staff hitting them all the time and making sure this bolt is tightened, like, for example. So, a lot of zero or benefits that aren't shown.
Okay. Okay, so, if it's blank, though, it doesn't necessarily mean it's zero. It's just information is either not available or it's?
It's either not able to be defined for this consideration in the project sheet, or we know it is a zero, and maybe we should put a zero in there if we know it's zero.
Yeah, that might, yeah, just to make it clear.
That's a good point.
And then a couple just very specific. So, first of all, thank you for showing both the previously finished project, which is always exciting to see what we've done, and then the ones that are in progress or about to be done. The City Hall Fountain. And I mean, I just wanted to highlight it again because I know how much work has been put into that fountain and how much the community wants it, and how, you know, using recycled water is important in all those aspects. So, including it here, thank you so much. And when is that ribbon cutting going to be again?
We are looking in July. You might recall, we, staff expedited the project kind of with the contractor because we have a vault that we kind of custom ordered, not through the contractor. So, that's being fabricated right now. That vault, when we get that confirmation of its delivery, and then when we start digging, and hopefully the digging area is as clear as we think it is, that's still keeping us on schedule for July. So, we will keep you posted.
Okay, okay. And then the dog park, that one, too, is another community looking forward to that one. So, and that's maybe, I don't know if that's.
Yes, Ms. Garcia.
But thank you for including that. Do we have any ballpark of when? I mean, I know that hasn't broken ground yet, so do we have any ballpark of when that's going to be?
I see, Ms. Garcia, coming up.
Available for us to participate and bring our puppies to?
Good evening, Mayor Perez, councilmembers, Marissa Garcia, Parks and Recreation Director. So, our hope is to have the ribbon cutting, the dedication for the dog park in early twenty-twenty-six. So, our, I'm, we're on track, we hope, knock on wood, to do, to start construction before the end of this calendar year. The project, I believe, is about a hundred-and-twenty days total for the construction, and so, we're certainly looking to hopefully have that done, maybe less than that, but no more than the hundred-and-twenty days.
Great. Thank you for the update. Yeah, you know, both of those projects are eagerly anticipated by the community, so I appreciate.
By all of us. We share in that.
Great, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to ask questions, Madam Mayor. I'm done.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any questions?
I just have one on the Homeless Solutions Center. Where are we at with the cost and the budget on that?
Well, they have Simone McFarland come up, if she's available.
I think Simone just walked out briefly.
If I could pull up the project sheet, or Mr. Prescott?
Welcome back, Mr. Prescott.
Hi, I'm going to try, Madam Mayor, members of the city council.
Sir?
Councilmember, what's the question, please?
Homeless Solutions Center?
Yes, it's an expensive project that we do not have the money for.
We don't have the money for it.
But what we're trying to do is get it to design and environmental clearance, and then we got to find the money to get it built. It's about six-and-a-half million short for the full project right now. So, so what we're proposing to do is maybe, we're going to look at it. We're going to bring it back to you when we come for, to get it fully entitled. We might propose a scaled-down version or a phased version project of that, where we do like the safe parking or something. But the, one of the challenges we have with Measure A, for instance, is it's, they're not willing to pay for some of the things that we're used to getting money for for Measure H, like these services. So, it's still something we need to hash out and bring back to you, so.
I can speak a little bit to that, too. So, the Measure A funding, we just had a presentation on that at the Burbank Glendale-Pacino Regional Housing Trust, and they are still figuring out how they are going to fund. So, it's very unclear for staff what funding sources will be available. The county is looking at a whole restructure of their, of LASSA, the entity that funds a lot of things like this. So, I think it's very. So I think it's very much, unfortunately, like some of the other things that we get grants for, that we get development funds for, it's a wait-and-see game.
Yes.
Yeah, it's just such an important piece of property, just sitting there. And just, we're over budget, six million, because we, is it, costs have gone up? It's all those things.
Yes, all those things. And the location requires certain, between the tracks and the freeway noise and air quality, the desire to have privacy in the individual units with toilets and sinks for each individual unit, that affects the cost, the utility cost. We are working with a former council direction on this. And so we look forward soon to bring it back to you for consideration and entitlement. And then we can have this conversation about what can we do, right? What can we actually get done with the money we've got? And what are some funding options? Maybe have a clearer idea at that time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? No? Thank you, Mr. Berkman.
Thanks, everybody.
All right. Shifting gears within the same topic, we're now going to move on to the discussion papers. All right, I'm going to say we do this in a similar fashion to how we did it last year, which seemed to work, go in in order. So how does council feel about starting with the most recent ones from May 6? We just have three papers to discuss there and go in in order, one, two, three. And just getting questions out and thoughts. Okay, so we would start with Paper One, which is the Green Cities Budget Request Ask from the Vice Mayor. Well, I guess we can, do we need a presentation or?
We are not looking to do presentations for each of them. I will tell you, from a staff recommendation, we are looking to delay this one while we staff up in order to make sure that we do it right. And, you know, we're currently raising the rates, and this is a big value add. So we'd like to wait until the next budget cycle to be able to then actually look at the program and do it in a cost-effective way.
Okay, so what I'll do for each budget paper is I'll look to the city manager for that quick little summary, then we'll go to questions, and then we'll go to discussion. So now that we've gotten our little summary, questions on this paper? Councilmember Anthony?
Yes. The implementation of this, I know you said you wanted to staff up. Does it have to be all or nothing? Are there portions that we can look at, small scales, so that we're not maybe ready to pull the trigger on the whole thing, but sort of scale it up?
So I think this was step one of just researching it. And then we, our sustainability team, which is one person right now, he does follow this quite closely, but it is, it is going to take a lot of time. So I really would recommend that when we do our next fiscal year, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, that we add it into that budget, and that way we could do it appropriately. It's just, there's a lot of nuances here, right? There's a lot of research, and research has already been done. But the next step is like calling each city, how did it work? What did you do, all those steps? So it's not as easy as it would sound, and we only really have one staff person there.
Okay, that gives me a follow-up question. If we don't approve it now, technically, we're not giving you any staff direction. So is there a way we could put something on paper saying, we want to do it next year? And then that way, there's at least some movement?
And that's what, that's what it has in there. So right here, it has it for our next budget cycle, so twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we would put this in the budget cycle. Then by that time, we'll also have a second staff person, that'll be sustainability analyst, that's still under recruitment, still being classified. The position is still out there, so it probably won't happen for two years.
Okay, so that, that was confusing to me because I, okay. So I thought you meant by delaying it, we weren't doing anything until next year. But what you're asking is?
Delay the appropriation.
Yeah, yeah.
So let us get staffed up. We'll come back to you at the next budget cycle, and then we'll be able to, then you'll be able to consider whether or not you want to do it. At that point, we'll be capable of doing it.
And just for clarification for everybody, we can do this with any of the budget papers. Our options are not just yes or no, our options are yes, no, hey, maybe not now, we can delay, maybe at half the cost. We have, you know, really direction to give, and that's what staff is looking for right now, direction on these asks. So that's a great question for.
All right, thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Do you have questions? Nobody can? Okay, I have one question. It's not so much about the item itself, it's about one point that's in here because I've gotten questions about this. Can you provide a brief explanation about why the, I'll get you the exact name, why the Business Bucks Program was briefly paused?
Oh, so that's something separate that was actually through Southern California Public Power Authority. So we're still going through an RFP to select a vendor. Once we do that, it'll recontinue. So they're actually looking at the RFPs and selecting a vendor right now. So probably in a couple of months, that'll be recontinued.
Thank you for that. I've just gotten some questions from some of our businesses and then seeing it here in the presentation, they're like, is it coming back, is it not? So it's good to know that even though, if we choose not to go this route, we have these other options that are sturdy and coming back. Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, I could go home, thank you.
All right, deliberation from council thoughts, comments, questions? I'm going to let the Vice Mayor start since it's her paper.
Thank you, thank you, yeah. And first, I want to express my appreciation to the staff for pulling this together so quickly because I did kind of put this in last minute because I had gotten the information so close to when we started budgets. So I do appreciate that. You know, right now, we are in a situation where we, so the businesses are struggling, we're all struggling, and the businesses are really stressing about not just their normal operations, but also the uncertainty and the tariffs and the people spending less. And then we're asking them also, on top of all that, to be more sustainable and to, you know, be, to be willing to shift to these more sustainable approaches. So I just, when I saw this program, I thought this was an opportunity to really give them a chance to be highlighted and appreciate them and thank them for doing that, and give them a boost so that the community would know what they're doing. So but looking at the staff report, it does look much more complicated than simply signing up and then asking for stickers. It's a little bit more than that. So I appreciate the research that was done, and I, you know, I'm fine with pushing it to next year. If possible, I would love to have a way that during this year, some informal or some way that we can thank the businesses, though, for the efforts that they've done, it'd be really great, even if it's just a simple recognition would be great. But this formal process, you know, later would, will be great, too, but just to recognize that they are working hard.
Mr. City Manager, so I reach for the button.
I mean, I could suggest that maybe that's something the Sustainable Commission could maybe agendize and look into, something low maintenance that they could provide some guidance to.
Yeah, thank you for that. This is one of the reasons why I also brought it up, because they have agendized it and tried to talk to bring it up, but it's just something that they don't have the bandwidth for. And it's, it's something that's like more than, like they just don't have that ability to do it with all the other things they're doing, and also the standing committee thing and a bunch of other stuff. So but yeah, I agree that if we support them in that, I think that there'll be a good partnership.
I mean, it's really your direction if you want them to tackle that.
That'd be great if they could tackle that.
I mean, so I'm trying to refresh my memory because this was months ago, but they did have a conversation about doing, like highlighting a green business in the same way that they highlight, they already do this, the greenhouse. So they pick a house that's very sustainable, and they're, they highlight them, they bring them forward. I don't know that it would cost us more to highlight a green business or two and provide certificate. I think the cost would be the cost of a physical sticker?
Yeah, the cost was, I mean, they did the process. They had some businesses, I think, that they highlighted as green businesses. But then they have to go through and choose and have them apply and do that. I would love to see any business that is being proactive as a way to just acknowledge them with like a little poster or an email or thank you or something like that. I don't know if that's sustainability.
Could this be direction that we?
Well, can I ask, under what criteria? Because the paper is written for an existing program, and the city has to pay a fee to join the program and then administer the program to our tens of thousands of businesses, which, as we know from our plastics, reusable plastics effort, takes a tremendous amount of outreach. I think we spent probably the better part of a year on that. So it's significant commitment of staff. So if we were going to have sustainability come up, I mean, they would have to come up with criteria, you're still talking about substantial staff work. And I think that was the prerequisite, is they don't have the staff yet, so.
Yeah, and one of the things I think, too, that, I've been thinking about this, is how much the plastics and the composting outreach our staff has done, and during that time, has recognized during that process, the businesses that have done the work. And so if they had a way to say, thank you, that'd be great.
Might this just be a question of speaking with the staff, working on that, and asking if they have businesses they'd like to highlight? Could that be possible? Mr. Berkman, welcome back.
Yeah, Honorable Mayor, that was kind of an aside conversation. But, you know, the two new positions that we got this year have been filled, and they're really, really focused on the plastics ordinance and getting around with our consultants, which also was an ad last year, to get out to, what is it, like almost six hundred restaurants and try and get this program going. It's all education, no enforcement close yet, and it's going well. You know, to add that kind of burden right now, that's something we'd have to take a look at.
Can I ask, how often does Sustainability give out an award to a house?
They do, I think I've seen them do two houses every year.
Maybe we offer them the opportunity to do one house and one business each year?
And I believe they've done it in the past. That's why I'm saying, I'm going to be very real and blunt here, y'all, because it's a 10:42. I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel here, I'm just saying from the existing, because I have heard Amber bring up, oh, this business did a wonderful job. Maybe it's just highlighting that business in that way for now, before we're able to do anything of this sort.
Yeah, I know you guys are very anxious to do something. I do not want to place an additional burden on staff. So if they could up it from two to five or something, that's reasonable within staffs.
And quite frankly, from what they have, from what they already know, I don't want to send them out to look again. They've been doing this work, they have the knowledge, they have, they know which businesses are.
The bottom line is, we're not appropriating any additional money. So we're going to do it with what we can do. So if that's one more, we'll try to do one more. But we'll try to bring back that expectation once we discuss.
Well, who's paying for the stickers?
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for your generous donation of stickers for our community businesses.
I don't know what they would look like, so.
Thank you, Mr. Berkman. Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Would you like to move this to next year as a discussion? Okay, for next year.
So are we, we're approving staff's recommendation, is that what we're saying?
We're giving directions on these.
Okay, great.
Yeah, for next year. Okay, Paper Two. So I will be quick, this was my item. I just wanted you all to have in front of you the ways we could be impacted by the federal funding and grants and the proposals that are going on from the federal government. So if anybody has any questions about what Ms. Becker put together for us, I just really appreciate it. Do you have the list in front of you? So all I asked for was, from the list of the federal grants by department that we utilize that could be, you know, at risk, it's not an ask for any funding. It was just something that I wanted council to see, and I'm glad I got included in here because the public can also see it. And then I guess my only other thing is, does anybody have questions on this? Just thank you, a big thank you. It's, I think it's just good information to have in the back of our minds, good information to remember as we go deciding what else we are going to fund, that there's money on the table also that could potentially be lost.
And as the federal budget situation changes, too, we can bring back updates as needed when we do our quarterly reports to the council.
Thank you, that'd be incredibly helpful. All right, and thank you for this, Ms. Becker, I really appreciate it. All right, moving on to Paper Number Three from May 6. So that is the Jobs Connect Plus Program.
Madam Mayor, yes, so we did provide you three options. We were losing the grant of roughly eighty-seven thousand dollars. So the one that we're recommending, we don't want to give up on the grant, and the library is going to be looking for a grant. But what we'd like to do is use one-time funding to fund that eighty-seven thousand for this year. I think it's Option Three, use that eighty-seven thousand. But between now and next year, try to get grant money to offset that because it's going to be one-time general fund money. Hopefully, we could get a grant that continues. But if not, then at next year's budget, we could determine what we want to do as far as permanently using general fund. Maybe we get a grant for half, we could split that up. But I wanted to kind of still have some incentive to go after the grant and buy us a year's worth of time.
Does anybody have any questions about this one? My only question, Mr. City Manager, because I know this is one of those things that is so in flux. If we were to appropriate hypothetically, let's say we go for the eighty-seven thousand, and then library staff is so good at their job that tomorrow they find a grant for ninety K, can we make that change post-grantee?
Absolutely. Maybe they get ninety-five K, I don't know. So what would happen is just that money, whatever we put in, the eighty-seven, would just fall back into fund balance. So you'd see that ultimately as one time somewhere, yeah, in the unfunded ending balance.
Great, all right. Council discussions, who would like to share thoughts, words? Okay, I hear Vice Mayor is in support of which option? The third, Option Three? Option Three, Councilor Rosati?
I'm going to abstain from the conversation.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm also in support of Option Three. Look, if we have eighty-seven thousand to put, I'd rather appropriate that. And I think it's fiscally responsible that we're going for the one time, and we will find another way in incoming years. Fingers crossed. And it is something that we've received countless emails about, countless asks from our community. And I think we talked about this earlier, and that's the theme of tonight. This is an investment in the folks who go through the program. So please bring it back on June 3rd with Option Three. All right. Now let's move on to the larger set of white papers. Let's start with Number One, which is the citywide outdoor dining and private parking lots.
Okay, so this one, if you're, if you recall, we have an interim ordinance that goes out to the end of 2026. One of the things that we want to do is provide more certainty to businesses, and we want to expedite this. So we're looking to hire a consultant to be able to finish this within nine to twelve months. So if approved, we would like to get this done sooner than later than waiting till the very end of 2026. This just helps existing businesses, so they know, hopefully, we'll get this done within the year. They're able to make that investment. We also have other businesses that are trying to, okay, this is interim, you know, should I make that investment to outdoor dining? So we just need to come back. What we'd like to do is use that one-time monies to expedite this and be able to finish it soon. So restaurants are able to now kind of know the rules of the game, so to speak, when it comes to outdoor dining in parking space, in parking lots.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Questions? Council, I want to go Councilor Rosati and then Councilwoman Anthony.
So are we going away from the CUP process? Is this going to be a blanket thing? Is our, is our current code seven spaces per, ten spaces per thousand for a restaurant? Are we going away from that?
I'll let our city planner give you the thorough answer.
Mayor, members of the council, Fred Ramirez, Assistant Director and Planning, City Planner. Councilmember Rosati, we want to look at all those standards and see what is best suited for the request that's being made, which is to replace parking with outdoor dining. And part of the analysis would allow us to look at what is an appropriate standard to apply for that type of development, and also look at what the impacts would be for neighboring properties if we remove parking and put outdoor dining in its place. So that's what the level of effort that the city manager proposed would look at.
Okay, my only concern is just.
Okay, my, my only concern is just every restaurant, depending on where it is, is different. So it's, you really can't apply like a, that's why we have a CUP process.
Well, there are, there are other options. There's also an administrative use permit process. That's not as expensive as a city, as a conditional use permit. So what we would look at is what options are best suited to allow two things to happen. One, to understand what the impacts of the proposed development are with outdoor dining, but then also to allow us to notify property owners of neighboring properties that this use may be converting into an outdoor dining, so that we can also assess any impacts to neighboring property owners.
And why do you think, like, I, I know that a lot of these restaurants want this. Why do you think that they haven't engaged the process to do it?
Well, first of all, to the point that the city manager noted, it, it's not quite as known an option. I know we have these eight businesses, one of which is actually a brewery. And then there's quite a few that are on a couple of corridors that we're looking at. But beyond that, to the point you, you mentioned is, some people have made the upfront investment and committed to certain improvements, but they're interim, they're temporary in nature. And I think for anybody that's going to do that and make that type of investment, they want greater surety. And right now, the code doesn't explicitly allow it. So we've kind of in essence been, you know, not enforcing the requirements. And I think a lot of people want to see, is the city going to look at kind of a long-term approach for this level of effort? It has implications. If we allow a corridor to convert into outdoor dining, there could be potential spillover effects to neighboring properties. And I know the council is very cognizant of what that could mean to the neighborhoods.
Right. I, I just don't, I'm not understanding though, if somebody really, you know, I've heard the complaint, we really want this, we really, go through the CUP profit or AUP, what, why not, why, why are they waiting? Why don't they just go through the process?
It's a very expensive process, that's discretionary, could be appealed. The criterion that would apply really doesn't exist right now for the outdoor dining. And so that's something that the standards would look at, is what is going to be the level of criteria that are going to be applied to an outdoor use.
It could be denied too. I mean, they run that risk as well.
Well, let me, let me say to, more to Mr. Ramirez's last point. Our ordinance does not specify how to do outdoor dining. Our ordinance provides that the city will not enforce parking standards. And we don't approve the dining configuration, because currently, some of those dining configurations occupy code-required parking and may also be adjacent to alleys where cars are. And we didn't have standards, like, we haven't, staff hasn't had the opportunity to consider what it means to put dining in areas that are typically used for vehicle traffic. So the standards don't exist, the ordinance simply suspends enforcement.
And the reason we're in this boat to begin with is the COVID-19 pandemic. So that's why we're in this very awkward situation.
Can, let me ask sort of a, a, a very leading question. In essence, if someone wanted to do a CUP or even an AUP, you're basically saying that the individual business would have to construct a proposal of why it would work without any framework in our current code and pitch that to whatever either administrative or conditional use permit and hope that they wrote it in a way that we could approve it and it not get appealed?
I, I would say, I would go one step back. And to say that to the point that the city attorney is mentioning, is currently, we don't have standards for outdoor dining. And so what we've done is not enforce the requirements that they have parking where they're currently using that facility for outdoor dining. What we want to do is do it kind of the Burbank way, and that is be very strategic, evaluate what their needs are, and in essence, determine what those trade-offs are so that we can present that to you through a code amendment process. Because the one thing we don't want to do, and we've always been told this, if this has changed, please let me know, as, as the city planner, is protect and preserve the neighborhoods, but also balance that with facilitating the long-term sustainability of the businesses. This approach would allow us to balance both, both of those scenarios. Is one, we have opportunities to facilitate what makes these businesses be sustainable. One of the members of the public, one of the businesses in question came up and said, this is helping. And so now we want to determine is if we allow this to proceed and others want to take advantage of it, what is a very prescribed process for them to do so? And also provide that opportunity for the public that has some questions or concerns, especially neighboring properties, because a lot of these are on the corridors, which are basically within 150 feet of residential, that they're also able to evaluate what's being proposed and what the potential concerns are, so that we can then establish conditions upon which you all think it's satisfactory to allow that use to be introduced.
Could I ask one follow-up to something that Councilor Rosati said?
Sure.
Every restaurant, every restaurant is different. Is, if we approve this tonight, is one of the goals to reduce the need for an AUP or a CUP by putting objective guidelines and standards so that people can find what's in the code and go for that?
That's something that we would bring back to you for your consideration. I don't want to take that away from you. You would determine whether this is prescribed by right, an administrative use permit, or we go as far as a conditional use permit.
And again, we're, we're, this is the appropriation to get this back to you sooner than later, so you have time to discuss it and determine whether you want to, whatever the recommendations are, whether or not you want to pursue those.
So again, pulling the curtain, I think pulling the zoom out a little bit. This is just appropriating funds so that we can have that conversation, the questions that we're asking Mr. Ramirez back sooner. We can have those, um, those options back to us sooner. And the reason we would want those sooner, if I'm correct, is because the urgency ordinance expires in December of 2026. And if, well, and if, according to staff's report, this is something that could be completed earliest summer of '26.
That is correct.
So that would leave us with a very small window to answer the question to these businesses that have been waiting for, since COVID, for an answer on, do they get to keep their outdoor dining? Do they have to go through an application process? What does that look like? So we would just need to answer that. I, I guess my question for all of you would just be, let's say worst-case scenario hypothetically, we, we say it's going to take about nine to 12 months, puts us a summer of '26, but we don't reach that date and we hit the end of the expiration of the interim ordinance. What happens then?
Well, ultimately, it's going to be a question of the council if you want to continue to not enforce the requirement while we complete that effort. That's if you decide to proceed down this road. But I, I think with the amount of time that you're proposing, or that we're having you consider with the funding, I think we, we can have something that would go through that process of review before the planning commission and yourselves. Part of what takes long enough, and I, I know you guys are all experienced with this, is we don't want to short-change public outreach and effort. And we just heard it tonight, when it, when it's done well, people applaud the outcome. And we did that quite successfully with firearms and with the drive-through. And so we want to maintain that level of outreach that you all want the community to be a part of and balance the business needs with the community needs. So this approach under the, what's being presented would give you that option.
Thank you. All right, any other questions, comments, thoughts? Okay. Ready for comments or direction?
I'm good. Move forward.
Me too, I'm good. Just really quick, I want to make sure that when we're, not a question, just to, to include. I'm sure they will include it, but just to keep in mind that some of the parking lots are shared. And, or they're not owned, they don't own the parking lots, they rent the spots. So that can add some level of complication, just to make sure that that's included in the study. But otherwise, I, I think this is a great idea, this is the best way forward to, to iron this out and get it figured out.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm confident that with this appropriation, they will leave no stone unturned and look at every option and, and scenario that could happen. And I'm also in full support of this. Councilor Anthony?
Yeah?
Great. Bring it back on June 3rd. All right. Item two, which is a budget discussion paper on the Economic Impact Report on Increasing Minimum Wage and Establishing an Enforcement Unit.
Madam Mayor, I, I am told it's 11 o'clock, so, uh, yeah, so I, I need to let you guys know, we're running late. Uh, so, but this is our last item, so I'd like to, you know, whatever we could do to get this moving would be appreciated. So I, I think we could finish this up, and I will do my best, staff and, and myself will do our best to keep it moving.
Great, so in conferring with the city manager, I would say we continue and just keep in mind the hour in, in our comments and just share our thoughts, because again, we're not voting on anything tonight, we're going on to June 3rd.
Okay, so with that, number two, so, uh, so this is a, to do a economic impact report on looking at a local minimum wage for the city. So for $100,000, so this would be a report. So we did provide a staff report. We are a bit hesitant about this as far as doing this now, just because some of the things that you have talked about as far as the uncertainty in the economy, what, you know, you look at the forecast and look at potential recession and things like that. So, uh, we would look, one of the things that I think, I don't know if it's the mayor, or last week I got asked, was how we could provide a, uh, to make our businesses more resilient. So kind of putting this, I don't want to say cloud, but kind of a cloud over this, I don't think would bode well right now. So staff would recommend that we kind of defer this and maybe re-up a, a next budget cycle to see if this is something that may be more palatable at that point.
Thank you. And now we're going to go to questions. Do we have questions? Councilor Anthony?
I asked this earlier. It seems like a thousand, $100,000 is pretty high. If, if we were to narrow the focus of what the independent contractor would do, would that bring that budget ask down?
Possibly. I mean, then, you know, you sacrifice kind of some of the quality and some of the meat for, you know, depending on what you would, you know, what the focus is, so there's a balance there.
Okay.
I'm going to ask a quick follow-up to that, just because I got questions about this from the public. So if, and indulge me here with our giant budget binder. In, in the white paper, it says 100K. But in our budget, we have a section called, let me see, contracts list, contracts and like appropriations list. And that has an estimated 400K for a minimum wage study. Can we address that, answer that discrepancy?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I think that line item was placed in the budget, early in the budget process, before we had specific direction about how to tailor the discussion paper. And I think we just inadvertently did not adjust the amount in the contract on that PSA list or on the contract list when we completed the discussion paper. So it was just a timing issue. But the appropriation that you're considering right now is what gives us the spending authority on that item? So we would only be able to spend up to what actually goes in the budget, even if the dollar amount in the contracts list was different.
Okay, thank you. I, I did get that question from a very eagle-eyed member of the public who found that, believe it or not.
Madam Mayor, if I could give council a reference point. Last year, staff was instructed to do focused outreach, and we were given only 90 days to do focused outreach on tenant protection strategies. That effort from July to September costs over $300,000. So $100,000 may just be black words on a white piece of paper. It may not include engagement or a lot of interaction with the businesses. So when you try to do a lot really fast, it costs a lot of money. And when you try to do a lot of outreach, it costs a lot of money. And, and it really depends upon, you know, what the target is and how much time we have. But last year, doing tenant protection strategies in three months was three times this number.
That, that was my second follow-up, you read my mind, I was like, do we have, are we confident that 100K would pay for like the level of robustness that this, this requires?
I, I mean, it comes down to what you want us to do if you decide to pursue this. Again, we, we say defer to the next budget cycle.
Okay.
I would only ask, I would only ask for 100,000, uh, just to even see, because I mean, it's, it's simple stuff of like, well, what's everybody else doing? I don't even, for me, like to even start to look at our businesses and ask them, how would this impact you? And all that seems much more outreach than the simple data that I, I would, I would request. We know that, you know, L.A. City and L.A. County and West Hollywood and Pasadena, they've all got an ordinance. So like, to me, it would just be, how did they get that ordinance? Is it 25 and more employees? Is it $20, you know?
Right, so from our perspective, from my perspective, you would then ask us to draft a law. And going from a survey to drafting law requires the outreach, or we have a line going down the stairs, out on the 3rd Street and down the corner.
And I'm, and I am comfortable having a middle point, where yes, we just get the quick survey. That's information to us, it's under, I believe would be far under 100,000. And then at that point, we can say, okay, let's do some outreach, and then if we want to allocate the money at that point. So I'm, I mean, for me, it's just more than two, three pages is all I'm asking, but not to do a full thing, I don't know.
I'm, I'm going to, we're getting into a little bit of discussion, so I'm going to kick it to the Vice Mayor for questions, and then Councilor Rosati, questions?
Okay. Okay, yeah, so I guess my question is that if we're looking for simple comps and some data, why do we need a full contracted-out impact report? And why is this not a standard staff report request to get information back?
Actually, that's not a bad idea.
I mean, I don't know what exactly you're looking for, but I mean, if we're not, if you're just looking for simple data, that seems to me as a different, a little bit different process.
Well, the data's in there, so we, we do have a survey on page two of the local ordinances, so.
If you want something beyond that, what, I guess I'm a little bit confused on what exactly the output would be. And if, knowing that output ask, that I think would be helpful to then determine how much effort needs to be done in order to get that. Because I think part of what I'm hearing though is that maybe a mismatch on what expectations are, what a impacts report would, would look like, and what it, I'm hearing, it does include outreach, it doesn't include outreach, so I'm not really sure.
How, I guess my question to staff then would be, if we, if we wanted to see which businesses would be impacted, how robust of a outreach is that? Do we contact every single business and ask them for their data? Is that already listed somewhere?
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Patrick Prescott, Community Development Director. The, the memo that was presented to you is, is of $100,000 for an economic impact analysis for a city of Burbank minimum wage law. The results of that, should you choose to move forward, and we're recommending that we not at this time, the results of that would then inform your direction on whether or not to proceed. It does, that doesn't include an ordinance development, that doesn't include outreach. This is just, what is the impact to Burbank businesses? And if you look at page three, is that the last one?
Page, page three, I think.
The top of page three will list those, those items that, that we would be examining.
So essentially analyzing the potential effects of a minimum wage increase on the local economy, businesses and employees, examining the economic impact of similar wage increases in comparable cities, assessing how businesses of different sizes and sectors might respond to the increase, including impacts on labor costs and potential job gains or losses, and evaluating the costs associated with establishing an enforcement unit.
Yes.
I mean, that's kind of what I was asking for, and I, honestly, I, I can't imagine that would go over 100,000, because we're not doing, it's not like we're doing the full outreach of, hey, this is, we went to your input and we want you to weigh in on this stuff. It's basically just collecting data.
Yeah, Councilmember, the, the full outreach would be, as Mr. McDougal pointed out three times, that cost, right? Uh, but you're getting, you're just getting that, the analysis that we're listing there.
Honestly, this is all that I wanted, just this stuff that's listed here. So I'm, I'm, I'm happy with it, I think it'll come in under 100,000, that's all I'm saying.
Here, here's my concern. As, as Mr. Hess mentioned, the, the uncertainty, economic uncertainty, our small businesses, et cetera, we would prefer to defer this and not have the cloud of minimum wage increase hanging over the heads of everyone in the community for a year while we do the, the analysis, until we're actually think we're ready to pursue something like that, till we know a little more clearly. Do you know what I mean? Like people, um, people, there's just, it increases the sense of uncertainty. So that would, our recommendation is to kind of punt a little, maybe a year till next budget season.
Do you have any more questions? Just questions?
Yeah, I don't know. I guess my only question is, do we know that? I guess my only question is, do we know that there's going to be less economic uncertainty next year?
God, I hope so.
You can't answer that.
Yeah, we can always recommend to punt it again, if you want.
It, it's uncertain.
We, we would hope so. One would hope. So, do you have any more questions? No more questions. Okay. I, I have a couple questions of, of staff. If you all don't have any questions, okay. The enforcement unit specifically, did we find if any of the other cities had an enforcement unit? Is that a common theme? Is that not common? I have no idea, just would want to know. Welcome, Ms. McFarland.
Thank you. Simone McFarland, with the CDD. We did just a cursory look to see what other cities were doing. We found four right off the bat, San Francisco, L.A., San Diego, and Oakland. All of those have really robust programs. They, they do programs based on, they've set up enforcement programs and in different offices. So it's basically a whole office that does this. In San Francisco, it's the Labor Standards of Enforcement. In L.A., it's called the Workplace and Employment Standards. What they do basically is, they have complaint-based systems where somebody can complain, obviously, and then they follow up. San Francisco does audits and they do investigations. There are admin penalties and fines to consider when you put something like that in place, the right of private action, so private suing, us not enforcing that, but the right for them to take them to civil court. The community partnerships, doing the outreach and education, and then record-keeping, and then follow-up. L.A. does, basically, they focus on outreach and education. San Francisco has six staff that do this. Obviously, they're a lot bigger than us, and it's sixteen million dollars that they put in here. L.A. has a million dollars that they allocate towards outreach. And Oakland, I didn't have any information right off the bat. So there is enforcement that is done when we do this, and you're looking at more cost than just putting something into place.
Okay. And, and so then, what you're saying is also the city of, let's say, Malibu, West Hollywood, Mountain View, that would be more comparable to us, let's say, in, in size and in budget?
And I, I think that that's one of the things that you would ask whoever we hire to look into. So that's part of the analysis, right? Is looking at, what do other cities do? And how do they implement it? What's the enforcement look like? So it's not just analyzing it, it's talking, you know, what would be the economic impacts, but it's like, how do you set it all up? And how to have other cities do it? And I think at, at this point, it's really a hard thing to do when our businesses are still, they're still recovering from COVID, unfortunately. They're still picking up, you know, they've had so many different things that have hit them, the fires, and it just like continues. There's a big role. So with the economy, putting this off for another year, I think would be helpful.
And, and so that, that's, that's a deep economic impact we'd have to consider. And in that same vein of considering economic impacts, I don't think this is a question for, for you, but a question for, for maybe, I think she's here, but maybe Mr. City Manager, in the report, it briefly mentions that a staff, thank you, Simone, that staff would also need to consider us as an employer. How are we impacted?
Yes, absolutely. I don't know, is Betsy here? Or no?
That's what I was looking for.
Would impact us. It would impact some of our positions that we'd have to change, depending on whatever the amount was.
Okay. So that's something else.
There would be a cost to the city.
That's something else we would have to consider. Okay. Those are my only questions. I would love to hear thoughts, comments from the council. Councilor Anthony, I'll start with you, because it's your item.
Well, so I'm, I'm confident we can keep it under a hundred thousand, because it doesn't include all of the outreach that we would do if we were asking for input. We're just collecting data. So I think at that point, a hundred thousand dollars to get all this information, and then at that point, for us to look at it and go, oh, yeah, this is something we can't do, or this is something that would have a benefit, because at this point, we're all speculating. And the reason why I even delayed this, the first time I mentioned it more than six months ago, eight months ago, was because there was something on the ballot in November of last year for a statewide proposition, and that narrowly got defeated. And that was pretty much closer to what our neighbors are doing. I mean, L.A. is higher than the state wage. All the unincorporated areas north of us are higher. You've got Pasadena, you've got West Hollywood, you've got Santa Monica, they're all at least a dollar or two. See, West Hollywood is almost three dollars more. To just do the study, I don't think sends a message to the entire business community that we're actually going to do it. I think the average business is not scrolling through our eleven P.M. discussions and going, oh, they're going to screw me up. I mean, we're just doing a study. And then we can do the outreach, because at that point, they can give their input and say, you know what? Thank you for doing this study, but this is going to impact me. I don't want it. And, and I think that, that study, the hundred thousand dollars that we're asking for, in a time where we actually have the one-time funds to do it, because we may not have the money next year, or the year after, I, I don't know, to just, to just look at it now. And I don't know, it seems, it seems like a simple ask, it's one of the cheapest ones we're asking for.
Hey, no, don't, don't sleep on jobs connect. Okay, thank you for sharing your reasoning for, for, for why you're asking for that, and then what you're looking to, to get out of it. I'm going to go to this side to see thoughts, comments.
Let's just wait for sunny or days. I mean, we all know the economic environment that we're in. We all shop at stores and, and small businesses, and we all know what's happening in, in our economy with Ms. Becker's report. Let's save the hundred grand and do something else with it. I think, you know, I, I do think it does send a message. When you do a study on rent control, what happens? It costs tenants thousands of dollars, because landlords start tensing up and start raising rent. I, I think, you know, business owners will start looking at this going, oh, maybe I won't hire someone, or maybe I won't buy this, or maybe I won't, you know, plan for the future. So I, I do think it sends a wrong message. You know, it, it, again, I think there, there's a better economic climate to do this in than right now.
Councilor, or Vice Mayor Takahashi, dang, it was like sixty days without an incident.
No worries. Yeah, so I think this is a much bigger ask than just simply getting data. I think, and two things kind of were highlighted for me that I'm concerned about. One is about the enforcement and reporting, which I hadn't thought through, to be honest, because the state and the state level doing a minimum wage, they already have a natural way that wage is reported through their tax system, right? So businesses have to report their wages through their taxes. And so they have a natural system that, that would be enforced, that you'd have to do minimum wage. Because we don't have that natural system already where wage is reported, we would have to create one. We have to create a system where wage is reported, and that's required, whatever we do, something has to be where wage is reported. And so that, that's just an infrastructure that regardless of what the impact would be, that would require that kind of infrastructure. So that's concerning for me. And then also, even if all we were doing was asking questions and looking into it and had our, this, doing a contract with somebody to look into it, to ask questions, those questions themselves would have to be asked of our businesses. And the businesses then would have anxiety from being asked the questions, just to have to think about it. When we are asked, so what would you do if there is a major disaster right now? Think through it. I mean, it's going to make us have anxiety, because we're looking through, thinking about disasters, right? So I think that while it may be true that just asking questions is not actually committing to something, it does put folks' mind in that direction, which would cause a lot of anxiety. And you mentioned earlier that folks do not watch the meeting until eleven thirty. Have you met our community? They do watch us. And also, the business community's tight. So even if we asked a handful of them, they would talk to each other, and they would all know that they're being asked. So I think that once a study like this would be done, it would be signaling that that's the intention, is to later on do this, or to have at least a possibility. So if we're ready to rock and roll with that, it means we're ready to rock and roll with possibility of minimum wage, and I don't know if we're there yet. So I feel like it's just a little bit, the timing is a little off, the, the, it's kind of getting the cart in front of the horse, in the sense that we're not even established yet that we're, as a body, are interested in seeing if that's a, you are definitely interested as an individual council member, but as a body, I don't hear the message that we are interested, in the same way that we are with the outdoor dining. It's clear that everybody on council is interested in the outdoor dining, it's like having to try to make it work. This is more of like.
We've been talking about that much longer, so.
Exactly, right? I think I would be more apt to be willing to put effort into this if I heard that the entire council's interested in possibly administering, having a minimum wage, and this is how we do it. So I think it's a little bit putting the cart in front of the horse at this point. But I'm always open to listen to new thoughts on it, but that's where I'm at right now. So I think I would go with staff recommendation at this point.
Councilor Zondi?
And I do think you have to take comfort in that this was a ballot measure and it didn't pass. So the public did get a chance to weigh in.
Oh, statewide?
Yeah.
And then, well, no more comments here. I, I do want to also note, because she's not here, but we, we don't want to forget her. She did share, last week, Councilor Mullins, that she felt that she was not in support of, this is the one paper that she mentioned she was not in support of. So hearing the voice of all my colleagues, hearing where we're headed, it sounds like now's not the time, just hearing from everybody else. And I'll, I'll add my two cents as well. I, I appreciate your valiant efforts. Minimum wage is a topic that I think a lot of us who have experienced minimum wage and who are allies of working-class communities talk about a lot. It's, it's a very, very difficult topic, because where, where's the line? There's different fields. What is the state doing? What is the county doing? Why is it so disparate? Just this, this chart here alone gives me heartburn. If you're asking me, I wish it was, it was across the board. It's confusing for the average worker, it's confusing for the average business. It's, it's not a fun game. And what I will say about this whole thing is this, we've been talking about economic uncertainty. That is the theme of this entire budget process. And again, not by any, anything that Burbank has done, I think we've been actually incredibly fiscally responsible in my entire lifetime in this city, including to today. But we were the kid that did our homework in the group project, and some other folks didn't, stayed in the feds. And so the reality is, we're impacted by that. And what I would say is, not thinking about, because I, I don't want to think about how it makes people feel, let's say, I don't want to think about the anxiety that we're causing businesses by doing this, or the anxiety that we're causing workers by not doing this, that, that's not our job, our job is to think about policy. And to the business owners, I would say that this economic uncertainty just creates the possibility of another expense. That's not a, a fake anxiety, that's a very real thing. This could be another expense that could tank their business, because running a restaurant is a very risky thing. Most people think that folks that own businesses are wealthier than the rest of us, and really, those profit margins are small. They are probably earning as much as somebody working a nine-to-five, quite frankly. Now, if you're a worker, or if you're representing workers, your concern on, in the same thing should be that, given the economic downturn, given the uncertainty, staff will be conducting this study, let's be honest, during a recession. So the data that you're going to get back is most likely recession numbers, which is also not good for a worker, because that does not reflect the longevity of our financial future as a city. If I were to tell you, let's look at Burbank and our financial stability, this is not the year I would pick to take a look at Burbank and our financial stability, and to say like, this is the minimum wage that we're setting for years to come, I think that's also detrimental to workers. Because what if we get a report that comes back and says, hey, Burbank, actually, the minimum wage at the state is super high. You should be paying people twelve dollars an hour, given your economic uncertainty right now. That's not something I want to see. That's not something that I think is accurate to the next twenty, thirty years for this city. That's not something that I think is, is tenable, and it's not fair to businesses, not fair to workers. So for that, that's all to say, and I think there are smarter people, financial experts in this room, that have said, delay, right? And, and I think that's to their point as well. So just looking at the facts, I think it's not beneficial to our business community, and I don't think it's beneficial to our workers to do it right now, because we're not going to get accurate results that, that reflect the needs of workers or the needs of businesses. We're going to get recession and fear-based results. That, that, who knows, you know? Maybe the reality in a different economy, in a different time, when we're not all in panic mode, to the Vice Mayor's point, if I, if I took a survey right now about who's afraid about a wildfire, I would get a much higher number than in December of twenty twenty-four, right? So I would like to get an accurate number, that is sound, that reflects what the minimum wage in this city should actually be in comparison to our neighbors, and that gives us something that we, we can actually study and take back. And, and to your point, Councilmember, I, I also appreciate the valiant effort in including specifically twenty dollars per hour, five dollars over, all of that. I, I want to see across the board, I want them to come back and tell us, here's what we think, without giving them parameters. I would love to see that one day, in an economy that is, that is stable, an economy that isn't going to, because quite frankly, right now, if you ask me, it, it's going to be a number that actually hurts workers, what they're going to come back with, if they did a study, because you're doing a study in a recession. So my suggestion would be, and it's hard, table it again, because man, you were hit by COVID when you first started this, you were hit by an election, now you're being hit by a recession. So I understand some of the negativity, and let's see if we have money next year, but I think we will.
I, I will say this, there was public comment earlier, and there were folks who've outreach to me about it. If this does come back, I am open to the idea of having an exemption for tipped workers, which I think would also be a good discussion point, so.
And I think when it does come back, if we're tabling this for, for next year to talk about it again, I would love to see all the broad options, because I think we're also going to be looking at a different landscape. Let's say the state throws us all a curveball and says, actually, this is the new minimum wage, guys, have fun, right? So I think we should be open to every possibility in the future, when we're not dealing with, and I know we're tired of hearing this, economic uncertainty.
Okay, I'm okay bringing it back.
Okay, so we will defer till next budget cycle, so you'll see another discussion white paper.
Yeah, hopefully we won't be hit by a giant meteor next time. All right, thank you for that, and thank you to staff for, for the thoughtful feedback on that.
Okay, so number three, we are, we're skipping. Number four, I'm going to have our Community Development Director just give the, the two-sentence summary, since he could do it way better than I can, so. So, so this is the Soft Story retrofit program, so half a million and another grant we're, we're losing.
Yeah. Well, hello again, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. We, we went and, we found, we thought, grant money for Soft Story sizing retrofit, and the money was pulled back. Not, but, but, there's still the potential for, for the money. One of the issues with, with the city having a grant program of our own is that, in the future, when that, that grant money is restored, they would have to deduct the amount the city gave them from the grant, right? So we're, we would be creating an administrative issue with administering a five-hundred, five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant program, where people could, could already get that money from, from the other organization. I may, I may defer to Mario in a moment when you start asking questions, he's our resident expert, Mario Asuna, a building official. But we're recommending continue with, to collaborate with the California Residential Mitigation Program, and monitor progress in the program to bring the funding opportunity to Burbank's building owners. The program could offer a valuable opportunity for property owners, twenty-eight thousand to forty-nine thousand, fifty thousand or so, depending on the scope of the work required. So that's our recommendation. It's, it's kind of a wait-and-see again. What we'd like to do is maybe report back to What we'd like to do is maybe report back to council when that funding becomes available, so you know, and then we can let the community know.
Man, speaking of economic uncertainty-
Yes.
Okay, well, does anybody have any questions? Councilor Anthony?
You said, if we create our own grant program and we give money to somebody who gets a size and retrofit, that individual building owner, if they go to another grant to get money, that program would say, hey, you already got money from us, you can't get the full grant?
If they get, if they were to get the grant through the earthquake multi-unit retrofit program from the California Residential Mitigation Program, they would deduct whatever amount the city gave them from the grant that they provide.
Oh, that's specific to that grant?
Yes.
Oh, I see. Why did they do that? Did they not want us giving them money? Is that what the deal is? Like, that's weird. I don't know, you maybe don't know.
Yeah, no, no, they, they, I guess they assume, well, you're already getting this money, we can apply it to somewhere else.
And again, the whole point of this is, we passed our soft story retrofit ordinance, we want to incentivize people to get these things done sooner than later, because we know that there will be an earthquake at some point, and we really want to mitigate a lot of that damage, or the potential damage. So we're trying to get, just like we've done with the wood shake roofs, that takes a while, we want to do our best to incentivize and get these things taken care of.
Other questions? No?
And by the way, Madam Mayor, we're already seeing progress on the soft story size retrofit, so people are-
That's a nice silver lining, that's some good news tonight.
People are getting it done. They know, they know they should be doing it, so.
Thoughts? What are, what are folks' thoughts on this? Thank you, Mr. Prescott.
So we're not putting up the money, we're just trying to get specifically the CRMP money first.
That's right, yes.
Okay.
I asked for questions, you said no.
That was my thoughts, my thoughts were, what's happening?
Thoughts were a question.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Well, I was-
Thoughts?
Before he had explained that they lose the money, I was comfortable putting the money up and then getting the grant money afterwards, but that's not how that's working.
No.
So.
And this is the only grant program that staff would find in this, in this vein. Thoughts?
I agree with staff, let's keep looking for money.
Great. Thoughts, great. I, my only thought would be, let's keep looking for money, and let's see how we're doing a year from now, if this is something worth talking about again, if we need to do a city incentive.
We'll provide a report-
Thank you.
-twelve months from now, and hopefully we'll have some success.
This is another wait and see. Economic uncertainty is fun. All right, thank you.
Okay, and then five, where that's held in abeyance right now, and then six, I'm going to have Mr. Prescott also do that one as far as-
Welcome back, Mr. Prescott.
-our homeless funding.
Hello, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, I, we are recommending we not hold this one off till later. This is a request for funding for homeless services that have been impacted by the, I'm sorry, I thought City Manager was speaking, loss of some funds, funding grants that we had. So the total costs for Salvation Army Homeless Navigation Center, Home Again LA Motel, Hotel Motel Voucher Program, Home Again LA Case Manager, .2 full-time equivalent, Flex Funds for Rent Utility Assistant, Rents Utility Furniture Assistance for Section 8 Tenants, for $507,000. So that's our recommendation, to use the one-time funds to get us to a place where maybe we know more about Measure A and other grant funding possibilities. It's just to sustain our current services.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott, and this is due to the, of course, economic uncertainty, but also the bigger uncertainty that we're seeing in the county right now with Measure A, loss of, again, of that rate.
Yes, we lost, so there's a, there's a grant we got from Providence St. Joe that's not, that they're no longer offering. We used to get rental income from Front Street that went to homeless services, and there are no tenants there, or maybe one left, but, so we lost the funding for that, so we're just coming for the one-time funding while we can have more certainty.
Thank you. Councilor Anthony?
Now, this one, if we get grants, we can pay back.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, we would just offset, right?
Right, right.
Yeah.
And then that's, I would say, the goal for staff, this is really like bridge funding to get us from, from point A to point B, but if we get some direction on Measure A in the time being, and we can use it for this, great. If we get a grant from somewhere else, great.
We would really, I mean, the, you know, Measure H turned into Measure A, we really want, and that's doubled now, we really, we want some of that money back, I mean, we provide a lot to the county, we would highly recommend all, the whole council, really, when you're talking to your fellow electeds, especially at the county level, we want some of that back, because I think we could do really good things with it.
We're working on it. Okay, so comments now. Councilor Rosati.
You know, we've made, it's a lot of money, but we've made tremendous strides in this effort, and I just don't want to see us go back. So I think it's, it's a good investment.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Takahashi.
I agree with staff's recommendation.
Councilor Anthony?
Yeah, there's no, we won't get any penalties for having spent this money. If anything, it may show a good faith effort on our part, and people are more likely to get us the grants, so.
Burbank has an incredibly robust response to homelessness, let's keep it that way, we're doing a good job, and I would hate to lose that momentum, so. Thank you, staff, for asking for the one-time funding, thank you for being fiscally thoughtful and asking for just one-time funding, and Godspeed on looking for those grants. So yes, bring this back, please, June 3rd. All right.
Okay, almost done, and these two are already in the budget, so they should be a little bit easier, so they're already included. So the first one is number seven, the, from FIRE, consideration of the expanded FIRE department staffing models. So we are looking at kind of transitioning the pilot program that we just did right now, as far as 48, 40-hour additional ambulance to 24/7, that additional ambulance. So it is, it is a bit costly, but we are, it has been a wonderful program that really has served the community well. So the chief, the fire chief, has worked with his staff, with labor, we're in a really good place as far as wanting to move this forward. We are looking at doing one-time funds, because it is a pilot program, but if successful, we hope to integrate that into the, permanently into the budget. So we'll see how this goes over the next 12 months, but we're very hopeful, as the 40-hour model worked well, going to that 24/7, even it's going to provide better service to the community and, you know, just help in overall FIRE staffing, so, and that is already included as part of your proposed budget.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Okay, keeping in mind that it's already included as part of the proposed budget, any questions? Seeing none, any comments? Are we all in favor of this? I assume so, thank you. Thank you, Fire Chief.
Okay, and our last one for tonight is the, our ERP, our Enterprise Resource Planning Project, that we are ramping up. Our Finance Director, Becker, is way better at explaining how we're ramping this up and what this is all about, so I'm going to have her do the two-sentence summary.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. So an ERP is sort of a transformational technology project that an organization our size only does once every so often. Our, our current ERP that we're utilizing for the city was implemented in preparation for Y2K, so that was a little while back now. We are probably at least a decade overdue in bringing a more modern system to the city of Burbank that will really transform the way we do finance, the way we do human resources, the way we do just about everything in terms of technology, help us eliminate some of the paper processes that we currently have in place.
Does it read the date in four digits?
Yes, it goes past the year 2000 now, so that's excellent. We're hoping it does more than that. This is a multi-year effort, it's a transformational project, we're estimating the total project cost to be between $11 and $12 million, and what we're looking to do, rather than trying to budget this all in one year and coming to you with this big ask, is to sort of, this is like our down payment, when we have a major project like this, we'll do a ramp up, where we, you know, slowly add funds, incorporate funds over multiple years, so that we can get started with this project. So Phase 1 for us will be doing a needs assessment for all the city's departments' needs, and then coming back and doing a full-blown RFP. Once that's done, we would come back to the City Council with a recommendation to enter into a contract for licensing and consulting services. So you'll be hearing a lot more about this project in the years to come, this is just sort of our starting point.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. Any questions? No? Others, then, does it go past the year 2000? Comments? No? Are we good? I'm seeing head nods, thank you. And wow, Y2K, that was, this has been a minute. All right, so that is all our budget papers, do you have sufficient direction, Mr. City Manager?
I believe we have sufficient direction, and we will see you June 3rd for the final budget adoption.
Great, looking for that final stretch of this, this season. Thank you. And thank you, everybody who is in the audience tonight, thank you to our amazing staff, we know this is meeting number two, that you have all sat through this, see your faces, I feel you, thank you for being here, we really appreciate it, and thank you for answering all our questions, and I hope you all have a lovely night. Now, we will hear council comments in, okay, so I thought there was a question, now we will hear council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments, attendance at conferences, regional meetings, and community events. Will the winner of last times, who is the fastest at saying this, start us off? Councilmember Rosati?
Yes, I'd be happy to start. On May 8th, I took the tour of the airport, and then that evening, I went to Chuck E. Cheese with you, and had a lot of fun with the kids at their remodel. And then I went to Police Fire Day, and then we had the ribbon-cutting ceremony at Block LLP, met with the BTA on Monday, the 12th, and went to the Police Chief's swearing-in May 13th, attended Remembrance Day with Constantine Anthony, council member, I thought that was a really great event, I was glad to be there. And then went to Leadership Burbank the following day, on the 14th. And then on the 15th, the mayor and I were at Handel's Ice Cream, we didn't get any ice cream, but we did cut the ribbon. And then went to World Empanadas and did the same thing to celebrate 10 years for them. And then I met with a community member for the Cultural Arts Commission, I had a Veterans' Appreciation Night on Saturday, the 17th, and on Sunday, May 18th, I went to the Leadership Burbank Ceremony with Vice Mayor for the Adaptive Sports Equipment, and I was, couldn't have been more proud of my community and our city, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosati, who is still holding the record. All right, who would like to go next? Councilor Anthony?
I attended the RISE graduation ceremony, the mayor gave some wonderful speech, speech words, talking. Congratulations to Chief Quintero for his swearing-in ceremony, it was a great program, and the family got up there and everything. Attended the Days of Remembrance, they talked a little bit about that Survivor's Play, I learned that Councilmember Rosati's first novel that he read was Diary of Anne Frank. Cover to cover, that's cool. I went to Leadership Burbank graduation ceremony, I attended the 10th Anniversary Ribbon Cutting of World Empanadas, and that was their 10th anniversary at that location, they had been in Burbank at a previous location for about three years, so I did, I found that out that day. Yeah, so I'm learning stuff all the time, great.
Thank you, Councilor Anthony. Vice Mayor Takahashi.
Yes, on Wednesday, May 7th, I attended the San Fernando Valley COG Olympic Ad hoc Committee, where we are working together as a region for getting prepped for the Olympics. The, May 8th, I attended the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission as a liaison, and then that evening, also attended the opening of the remodeled Chuck E. Cheese, hadn't been there in many years, spent many, many hours there with the kids, and to see it again was kind of a throwback. May 10th, went to the Fire and Police Service Day, and then popped over to the ribbon-cutting for Block LLP, which is a landlord-tenant, they do landlord-tenant law, so welcome them to the community and thank them for being here. On the 14th, I did a tour of the Ike system in West Hollywood, so I got to see an actual prototype of that, that's a, I don't know, a Wayfinder giant iPhone thing for, oh, have you even done Ike, I-K-E? I'm surprised I haven't reached out to you yet, it's super cool, so if you haven't done it yet, do it. Yes, it was pretty cool. And then, da-da-da-da-da, that evening, I went to the Leadership Burbank graduation at Woodbury. And then on the 18th, went to the Leadership Burbank Ribbon Cutting for the Adaptive Sports Equipment, and that was amazing. It was on a Sunday morning, and it was a packed house, people were there. And then the 19th, that, yeah, last night, I went to the Sustainable Burbank Commission, so I'm sorry for that. And then earlier today, I was on a call with the National League of Cities, I'm on the Human Development Advocacy Committee, and it was an important discussion around our federal budget and some of the items on that, and we talked about nationwide city advocacy for healthcare funding, protecting low-income seniors, disabled veterans, and young adults, make sure they have their healthcare, protecting hospitals, ERs and clinics, and medications and treatment, and behavioral services. So we talked about how to do that advocacy together as cities all over the country.
Thank you. And I want to say, the winner of the fastest report back this week is Councilwoman Mullins, congratulations.
Yay!
Careful, she's watching, she's watching, she heard that. Alrighty, this week, on Wednesday, May 7th, I was at the Burbank Glendale Pasadena Regional Housing Trust, I have updates for that, Mr. City Manager, we talked all about Measure A, so we'll be talking about that soon. Then I went to the RISE graduation, where I shared, what was it, speaking words?
Speaking words, very good.
Very, very big congratulations to the graduates, they're wonderful, very much invested in this city, and I hope to see them serving our city more closely in the future. On Thursday, May 8th, I attended the grand opening event for the new Burbank Chuck E. Cheese with Councilmember Rosati, we had a blast, and Vice Mayor Takahashi. And then Councilmember Rosati and I, there's a lovely picture of both of us hearing the words, "We now have dip and dots for all of you," and we both like, we're so excited. So we'll definitely send that along, yeah, we, we have the biggest face of excitement for ice cream, so. We had two ice cream-related events this week. And then on Friday, May 9th, I had a Zoom interview with the Providence High School students, Beau and Joshua, who, like Councilwoman Mullins did a few weeks back, they asked interview questions about what it's like to serve on the City Council, had questions about local government, and were very kind, and it was great to meet with them. On Monday, May 12th, I had an office visit with the Fernandino Totavium Band of Mission Indians. If you haven't had a chance to go, their office is in San, the city of San Fernando, but it's a great time to learn about what their territory covers, where the tribe has been, why, the history, and really all of that, and I really look forward to having a much, you know, much stronger relationship with the tribe moving forward, so. Yeah, and then finally, on May 13th, I attended the Chief's swearing-in ceremony as well, it was a wonderful event, heard nothing but compliments for our new Chief Q, and if you didn't get a chance to look, there was a latte with his face on it. All right, and then on Thursday, May 15th, I was also at the Handel's Ice Cream Grand Opening here in Burbank, the owner is also expecting a little one, so that was very fun for me. And I actually did eat ice cream, oh yeah, I had a giant ice cream, I had ice cream for two. If you haven't tried it, it's delicious. And then I also, right after, attended the Chamber Monthly Board Meeting and shared some of our updates from the city, and had a great time there with the city manager. And then on Saturday, May 17th, I had the- And then on Saturday, May 17th, I had the privilege of speaking at the California Federation of Business and Professional Women's Annual Conference. Got to share, they had it here in Burbank. So I got to share a lot of the wonderful things we're doing in our city. Got to answer some questions, got to hear some feedback about traffic. And they were a wonderful group. They really support women going into the workforce. So it was great to speak with them. And I attended with, was it just me? It was just me. The Home Again LA Gala and I represented the council. And then on Monday, May 19th, I met with Chief Q and we talked about some of the happenings in Burbank, really looking forward to working with him, really excited about the energy he's bringing to the department. Then finally, this morning, APPA Policymakers Council on Zoom. Great conversation, economic uncertainty, all the things. All right, that is everything I did this week. Now is the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Do members of the council have anything to introduce? Councilor Rosati?
Kind of, I bumped into Assembly Member Schultz several times in the last two weeks. He mentioned he was doing a car seat install event with the CHP and he was looking for a location. And I said, how about in Burbank? Let's do it in Burbank. And I asked if maybe we could partner with him if you guys would like to do that. And maybe we get JJ involved and do kind of a public service announcement. So if we're amenable to do that, can we reach out to staff and maybe set up something where we can do an event in a parking lot or our parking lot or somewhere?
Yeah, so the direction is to contact the assembly members.
Staff.
Staff to find out about whether or not we could partner on this event.
He said he'd like to partner with us if we were amenable to it.
Okay, if there is, if it's a lot of work direction, I'll come back. But if not, we'll see if we could just do it and we'll report back to you.
Yeah, he mentioned sometime in September is the date.
Okay.
With the CHP.
Yeah.
Great.
I think that's, if, yeah, that's fine.
I just want to make it easy.
Okay, any other?
You know, for me, I was just trying to follow proper work direction. So if there's no objection, I'm just going to go forward. And if there is significant work direction, we'll bring that back.
Just clarification, per our new rules, would this come back June 3rd for a short discussion?
This one's a little bit different because it's not an agenda item. You know, it's not like we're coming back with a report, so.
Can we just come back June 3rd with an update? Like, by the way, this is what we're, we learned. It's going to involve more or it's going to, okay.
Yeah, well, we'll get you an update before June 3rd.
Oh, look at that. All right, any other introduction of agenda items? No? No. You've tired us out too. The city attorney is amazed. All right, we now adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025, for a joint City Council meeting in the Council Chamber, 275 East Olive Avenue, second floor. Thank you, Burbank, and I'm happy to say, have a good night.